Okay, we're ready to go. Thank you, everyone, for coming to City Council Meeting in Spanish Fork, March 19th, 2024. We appreciate everyone in attendance here personally, virtually, digitally, audio. Probably just listen to us audio some, yeah, I don't know what that. But thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight with the sun shining. Boy, there's a lot of good places to be when it's beautiful weather out there. So, thank you for taking the time to be with us tonight and conduct the city's business. We appreciate it. We'll start off like we always do in Spanish Fork with a prayer and the pledge, and Councilman Cardon has the prayer tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, and I have asked Lana Hiskey to come and do that for us. If you can come on up, Lana.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're so grateful for this opportunity that we have in this free land to be able to come to City Council and be able to have our voice heard and such great leaders in this community, leaders that do listen and that are inspired and have vision for our city. We're so grateful for the blessings of a free country and a wonderful city. We pray that they will continue to be with all those involved and be able to bring civility and peace and a friendliness that we can resolve conflict through kind words. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I wasn't sure about this since I didn't know anything about how you conduct, but what a privilege to be able to come and give a little inspirational message. You know, I've always heard that leaders, through their actions, inspire others to dream more, to learn more, to do more, and to be better. And I think each of you do that. I think we have true leaders in the room. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Lana.
Councilman Took has the pledge.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get to item four of our recognitions tonight, I want to bring Lana Hiskey back up, if you can. We're going to take advantage while we got you here, Lana. But long history in, I'm going to ask you a question. So, a long history in Nebo School District as an information officer, getting that out to the public for a long time, a career there that just retired last year, just this year?
July.
July last year. So, we appreciate your service there and your kind words here tonight. But tell us, maybe give us some insight through the decades of service in the public sector of an important place in our communities, all of our communities. The Nebo School District is broader than just our city. But tell us, what kind of principles, I guess, drove you through interacting with the public, sometimes on tough issues? Not, nobody envied your job on days you were in the news?
And I didn't even envy it last week when I got phone calls from reporters. I was glad to turn that over. Yeah, I think it's really important that we're able to work through things civilly because there are things that come up when we have disagreements and things that don't maybe go correctly. And we're all human. We make mistakes. And so, I think it's really important that we realize that and that we work with each other and even try to expect the best in each other. I think sometimes, especially in social media, people expect the worst and they're spouting off because they're not actually in front of someone. I think it's really important to be civil. And you know, as I look at this audience, I know many of you in here, and that's awesome. You know, we have a great community and even taught some of you in high school. And I think that's really important to keep those relationships like you have done. You're very open. Our city leaders, as well as our city council, have all been very receptive and listen, and I think that's really important. And I think mainly relationship building. And if there is a conflict, talk it through. I think that's the important thing because we will run across conflict. That's inevitable. We don't all think the same. We don't all do the same. And it's really important to be able to have good civil dialogue. I don't know if that's what you're looking for.
I appreciate that. I feel like the next items of recognitions, it would, it's a good opportunity to have someone here like you that served our communities well over the years to recognize you, even though I don't have a fancy certificate for you tonight. It'll be shortcoming, but thank you, Lana, for your years of service, not only to our city, but the district as a whole. You've done a great job.
And thank you for all your support with our youth, with our students. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Tyler Jacobson, our Assistant City Manager, will take us off to the next recognitions in the city tonight.
Yeah, we have a process where our employees are able to nominate other employees for the Employee of the Quarter Award. And tonight, we're blessed to be able to recognize a couple of very deserving employees for this award. And we'll actually have their supervisors come up and introduce them. But the two that we'll be recognizing tonight, and if we could have them come up in this order, we'll have Scott Alet, who's our library director, come up and introduce Kirsten Merrill, who is over our children's programming. So, usually, she's used to seeing, not in this room, but across the hall in the Heritage Room, a lot of children in seats, probably actually even more than people in here. But we're grateful for Kirsten, what she's done for Spanish Fork and the library and bringing children a lot of joy in that. And then, we also are grateful to have Rafael Mendez, who's our Assistant Golf Superintendent up at the course, and Dallin Naulu, his supervisor, will come up and introduce him right after. So.
Perfect. Scott brought a helper?
I brought a helper, and not just any helper, a helper who loves Kirsa. Every time we go to the library, "Dad, is Kirsa here today?" So, Kirsa, you can come up here with us. So, he was excited to be able to come and help give Kirsa her trophy, is what I told him. So, Kirsa is phenomenal, and we hired her away from Springville, and she has just revolutionized the way that we do children's programming here at the library. It's not to say that we haven't done well in the past, but she took us to the next level. And I think, one thing that I think about with Kirsa that's been great is she has developed a team of awesome programmers. Some of them are here tonight to help recognize her, to the point where historically, we've heard from a lot of residents and patrons say, "Well, your storytimes are great, but we go to Springville because their storytimes are awesome." And now, we're hearing, "We go to Spanish Fork and not Springville because Spanish Fork's programs are awesome." And we've hired a bunch of people away from Springville, and we just continue to grow and develop and have the best programs here in the south part of the county. Couple other just brief things that I think really show the great value that Kirsa has added. She's, we've increased our program offerings by 40% and not had to increase staff because she's duplicated programs and offered them on multiple days, which is awesome. She's offered new variety of programs, a Century Storytime, Ukulele Play Along, bilingual storytime, and a yoga storytime, so providing some new variety to what we do. She got a $10,000 competitive grant that there were, what, maybe 100 different applicants, 30 finalists. We were one of 10 that received this $10,000 grant to create a new maker space and robotics lab that will be able to go around and do assemblies and different things in the community. So, that's just a snippet of the great things that she's done, but she's really just created a great team to the point where Spanish Fork Library and the Children's Department is kind of the example, especially in South Utah County, for how children's departments are done and how programs bring community together. And a lot of that comes back to Kirsa. So, congrats to Kirsa. I'll let Kirsa tout her own horn here for a little bit.
I am so grateful to be here today. I personally think that I have the best job in the world. It's my job to bring children and families together, to have meaningful experiences together, whether that's enjoying a puppet show at a storytime or sitting together to read or play in our children's section. And like Scott said, this would not have been possible without the amazing staff that we have here. We are so lucky to be in this brand-new building that turns a year old next month. And we have worked so hard over the past year to make this a space that is safe, that is free, that is fun for all members of our community. So, thank you so much for recognizing the work that we've done over the last year, and I'm so excited to see what's coming in future years.
Thank you, Kirsten. We have something for you, Kirsa, before you. Let's usually start with, usually start with the chief and shake his hand, and then make your way around here.
Thank you. This is yours.
Yeah, this is good library staff here, absolutely.
While they're coming up, do we dare ask Timmy what his favorite story has been so far?
Timmy, what's your favorite storytime? Timmy's just one of the 120 people that show up every story.
There we go. Everybody's smiling. That's the most straight I've seen you all stand before.
Very good. Great, great comments about how much it means to, not yourself only, but you can tell you're a good public servant. Would it take it, take it up the cause for the kids? Good work, very good work. Mr. Naulu. Wish you could, the sun was shining Saturday. I wish you could have shut the wind off. It blew all day Saturday.
You're not the only one to request me to shut the wind off.
Of my bad score.
I'm thrilled to be here to talk about Rafael. He's not one to draw any attention to himself or any of his accomplishments, so I'm happy to do it for him. He's one of the hardest-working individuals that I have ever met. He's constantly looking at ways that we can improve at the golf course and with the Festival of Lights. He's in charge of setting up and taking down the Festival of Lights, and year after year, has just figured out better, more efficient ways to do it. And this last year was the smoothest setup and takedown is gone in my 10 to 13 years doing it, and in large part due to his leadership and his ideas and his work ethic. And then, on the golf course side, I don't know how we got anything done before he got here. It just feels like he has the output of two to five guys. In fact, I put all my high school guys with him and just say, "If you can keep up with him, you can keep up with anybody." And, you know, I'm, he doesn't ever want this type of stuff, right? And so, I'm glad we're here in front of all of you and get to share some of the accomplishments that he's done. And he's a, he's a good friend and a solid coworker and a solid leader and deserves to be recognized for his efforts. So, I told him he didn't have to say anything, so I don't know if you're going to get any remarks out of it. I'll leave that up to you guys. So, thank you.
Want to say thanks to all of you. Thanks, Dallin and Ryan, for being great bosses. Well, we're going to embarrass you while you're up here a little bit, Rafael. But how long have you, how long you been up at the golf course?
Almost seven years.
Seven years?
So, just over six, yeah, going on seven into September.
Yeah. And I know not everybody in the city plays golf, but the golf course, a credit, we're always talking to Ryan, to Dallin, and the other members of the staff, how lucky we are to have a municipal golf course that is in the shape that it's in, but also is attracting people from all over to come play. It's not very easy to get a tee time there, and that means that it's in demand, not just the game of golf, but to golf at the Oaks. And so, that certainly is a credit to you. To, I know the hard work. I know, I know kids don't keep up with you. I've heard that. But in reality, as one who grew up next to the golf course and has played there for going on 30 years now, it's, it is obvious that the care of that facility is just second to none. So, good work. It's just in good shape. It's not easy. Sometimes I wish it were easier. Sometimes I wonder where you guys are cutting holes on greens, like, yeah, why they're cutting holes? My putts are going off the green. That's not, you know?
It happens.
It happens, yeah. It's not the golfer. It's certainly, but no, in all reality, thank you. Thank you for that, that hard work. It doesn't, it doesn't go unnoticed to those who partake in that. And it's just cool to have a municipal golf course that is in the black. And the reason why it's in the black is because of the hard work that goes into it. And so, that's late nights, early mornings, and thank you for that. It makes a big difference.
Well, thank you, guys.
Hey, you keep embarrassing people. They're not going to come.
No, they'll keep coming back.
Is it a couple hundred bucks?
This is, it might not be working.
I would have passed on a couple hundred bucks to have this.
Well, heck yeah. Not now.
Looking good. Here we go.
Thank you.
Ms. Mendez.
Yes, Senator.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
No.
Okay, thank you. That's always a great part of City Council Meetings. We'll go to another recognition that is on our agenda tonight, the Police Department Recognition. Is that, what's that? Oh, okay.
Director Shoup will make that presentation, Mayor.
Perfect. There he is, in the back corner. Please, Mr. Shoup, come, come on up to the microphone so the millions of viewers of City Council Meeting in Spanish Fork can hear what you have to say.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to present to you and the council and be here on behalf of the Spanish Fork Police Department. I represent the Utah Chiefs of Police Association as their executive director, and we are here tonight to honor your police department for their continued reaccreditation that they have with the state. The accreditation program, there are 109 chiefs in this state, and Chief Johnson is one of the stalwarts in our organization. And he's very forward-thinking. He knows how important it is to have his department up to speed on policies and standards and procedures. And having said that, to give you just a small background of how the accreditation program works, there are 169 standards that they are required to meet, and those include federal law, state law, city ordinances, policies. And they have to, they are assessed by our association with assessors who come in and make sure that they are up to standard. They have to provide a yearly report that shows that they are maintaining those standards for a full five years, and then they have to re-accredit. So, having said that, you know that your department is accredited now, and they were one of the first ones that was, that did so. There are 29 agencies in the state that are accredited with the Utah Chiefs of Police Association. We are also a member of the AccredNet, which is a national organization, which has, there are 38 states that are involved in the accreditation process. We go through and review standards every year after the legislature has completed their process, make sure that we are up to date on all laws that have come out from the state and any federal laws that are handed down, that they, and they must meet those standards. And having said that, it is our pleasure tonight to be here to present the reaccreditation plaque to the City of Spanish Fork and the Police Department. Chief, if you'd come up, and I'll read this. "Spanish Fork Police Department approved and accredited in recognition for the completion of the standards for certification and accreditation as prescribed and mandated by the Utah Chiefs of Police Association, January of 2024."
I just want to express my appreciation to Director Shoup for being here this evening. He drove down from Ogden, and so, I do appreciate the leadership he gives the association as well, and the guidance that he provides, and the time that he puts into our association. I also want to thank my staff, as well as Sergeant Nielsen, that spearheaded this project. This is a very time-consuming project, very tedious, and there's lots of details that go into this accreditation. So, I just want to give a big shout-out to Sergeant Nielsen and thank him publicly for the time that he put into this. Once again, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Chief.
There we go. Thank you.
Director Shoup, thank you.
Thank you, Director.
Mayor, yeah, just to maybe tag on to what Director Shoup was saying, and this was a big deal to our police department when it was first started. And I'm really pleased at the efforts, number one, of the association to put this accreditation out there. It only started, I think, five years ago, like you said. And before that, we didn't have something like that. There was, there were other states that had certifications, and to have our own was a really good standard for us to be able to shoot for. And under the leadership of Chief Adams and then continued by Chief Johnson, we were, we were quick adopters. And I think it's an important standard for us. We're grateful that you provide the standard that we can, that we can strive for. And I think it's a great, it's a great measuring stick for us to always have as an, as an agency. And hopefully, the example that our officers show out there is a good one for other agencies. To hear the number, I think you said 29 are accredited, that's too low, you know? And we, hopefully, there's, there's some, some efforts now. Our neighbors can see, not only we've done it once, we've done it twice. And Matt, Chief Johnson's a great emissary for that, and hopefully, we can, we can see that grow. It's a good thing for law enforcement to have this, and they provide a great service, and these standards just provide an excellent, excellent bar for all of us to strive for. So, thank you, Director, for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Good. Well, yeah, that touches on employees that are from different departments of golf course and library, things that are in our, in our city that we're lucky to have, and then the things that are obviously the necessity of keeping the public safe. And we appreciate our force and Chief Johnson leading that and doing that because that's some super important stuff, and being accredited is a big thing. So, I appreciate that and adding on to it, Seth. Takes us, if nobody has anything else, it'll take us to number five on our agenda, the public comments section. This is the public comments section for something that, anything that's not on the agenda. There is a public hearing section of the agenda. So, if you're here for something of A, B, C, and D in the public hearing section, that'll be coming up shortly. But if you're here for the public comment section that would like to just address the general mayor and council, please do so. Our timer is having a little bit trouble tonight with the beep at the end. So, the three minutes, when it gets close to zero, I'll raise my hand. I'll make a big deal. I'll chuck something. We've got more squishy balls. Just kidding, we won't use that. But please be considerate, if you can, of trying to be close to that three minutes. And if anybody from the public would like to come up and share a public comment, please do so. This is your time now. I was looking at you, Councilman Argyle. Please give your name to Tara so she can get it in a minute.
Emily Peterson. So, as I said, my name's Emily Peterson. You guys mostly know that. Since I'm here, I thought I'd give a plug for people in the audience that may not know for the Spanish Fork 101. It's a great opportunity to learn so much about the city, how it's run, how many dedicated employees we have here, and they're so passionate about their jobs, and they get so excited explaining it to people and including you in the things they do. And how many wonderful volunteers that we have here in the city. I think that contributes to helping us get more Bing for our buck in the budget. We have volunteers here like no other I've ever seen. So many people volunteer in the city for so many great events. And one of those great things that volunteers did is they, as far as I know, they built the current senior center entirely on volunteer labor and donated land, as far as I know. I worry a little bit about, because since working and volunteering there, I've seen the budget getting cut, and so, I wonder, I worry that as it gets absorbed into the new rec center, I wonder if it's going to be as purposeful to the seniors if the budget is cut too deeply. And I would also love to see some of that, some of the people who have volunteered that are still going to the senior center, that they helped build, who are so proud of putting the roof on or putting electrical in, and they have their blood, sweat, and tears in that building. And I would love to see somehow, maybe they could put that, some volunteer effort into the new senior center area.
You're all right.
Possible, I have a couple possible solutions. I know the city has talked about, well, Parks and Rec Department also, maybe needing help for budget for the golf course, which is, we had the sled place, which I didn't, I don't love. And possibly to help subsidize, I think Shane had spoken about, some kids aren't going to be able to afford to go to the rec center or maybe utilize other recreation services in the city. And so, I think maybe an opportunity to like, maybe fill in some budget gaps. And I floated this idea around a little bit, is to use the Adventure Heights Park a little more. I think it would be fun to have, I mean, it's a great, unique space where it's enclosed, and you could have possibly paid events, which hopefully would just be a minimal paid fee, but you could have something like Adventure Frights, and you could have like a Halloween slash fall walk-through, walkabout, maybe in a cave, you could have some smoke effect coming out, or just some lights, something to, or sounds to make it a little spooky, have some lights around. People could even serve apple cider, hot chocolate, donuts. Maybe other people in the community might have their elementary school or high school chorus programs come in scene. And hey, all the parents would probably want to come and support that and bring money to that. After doing a Halloween kind of a thing, maybe they could do a Dia de los Muertos program, and the Hispanic community could put on event possibly to showcase some of their culture. And possibly also, and I understand, it might, it might not be feasible, but possibly something to look into, also doing a Christmas-type thing there. There's so many ideas that could be utilized as far as having a Grinch theme, having the nativity possibly in the bottom part of the cave area. You could do a Charles Dickens-themed village. There are so many wonderful ideas that I think could be incorporated there. I know there's areas that probably can't be. I know there's areas that probably can't be walked on due to the surface area, but that would be a great place to rope off and possibly put some lights or something. Anyways, there's, there are just some possible solutions, I think. Thanks.
Thanks, Emily. Thanks for the ideas, and thanks for your volunteerism at the senior center. Anyone else for public comment? Once, twice? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go out of public comment. Before I go to council comments, we have some people from UDOT here. Shane doesn't know anything about UDOT, so don't ask him anything about UDOT, he didn't have a career with them, but the Utah Department of Transportation is a great partner with us in Spanish Fork City, especially at a time where we are trying to, to figure out things of how to get people around efficiently and safely, and we sure appreciate your partnership and, and being here tonight with us.
Well, thank you. Glad to be here again, Mayor, Council. For those of you who haven't been to one of these presentations before, my name's Darren Bunker. I'm a project manager at the Utah Department of Transportation, and we've been doing these little presentations revolving around a potential new interchange in Spanish Fork, and that, the first process of getting an interchange on a interstate is to go through an environmental study, and so we've presented a couple things in the past. In back in November, we, we presented what we call the purpose and need of the project, and during that time, we talked about three different purposes and, and needs for a new interchange on I-15, and those included improving the regional mobility. Basically, that's improving access to I-15. The second item was to provide safe and efficient access across I-15 to an intermodal or a multimodal facility. There's a subsequent study going on for South Valley Transit, so a new light rail station in the same area. And then the third and final objective was to improve local mobility by taking traffic off of Main Street. And so those, that, those is what we defined as our purpose and need, and since then, what we did is we went and, and based on that purpose and need, we went out and, and developed some different concepts, some potential options that we have of getting a interchange in the area. Let's see here, I think I may have lost my summer fingers. And so basically, what we did is with these alternative concepts, we, there's two levels of screening that we went through for the concepts that we came up with. First, we start with several preliminary concepts that could potentially meet the purpose and need, and then we screen them down one by one to one or more alternatives that we evaluate in more detail before making a decision. At the top of this funnel, what you see is we look at the concepts related and how they relate to the purpose and need that I just described. If they don't meet that purpose and need, then we eliminate those concepts. Then we do a level-two screening, and we look at a high-level analysis of how the remaining options could meet the project's purpose, and we look at the results of additional impacts to key resources in this, in this level. Concepts that pass through both these levels of screening are then developed so that we can evaluate the benefits and impacts in more detail. So this was the result of the level-one screening. As you can see here, we evaluated five different locations for an interchange. One at 400 North, one at Center Street, one at 100 South, 900 South, and then we had a unique concept where we actually would split the interchange into two structures, which is what we call the split interchange. And so that, in that case, we would have a structure at Center Street, and also another structure at 1500 West. Okay? And so those are the, those are the locations. And so this table shows the results. The colors on this table represent the options that performed worst among all the options, and those are highlighted in red, and then those options that performed best, and those options are, are shown in green. We measured how well, for example, over on the left-hand side under regional mobility, we measured how well a particular concept would get vehicles to the, to the, off of the Main Street interchange and the Benjamin interchange. So that's what we're talking about when we talk about regional mobility. Okay? As you can see here, the 400 North interchange performed the worst. In other words, it did, it didn't attract enough vehicles to the new interchange. We can see that the splitter interchange in this case performed the best. Okay? And we've got the data there that shows how that breaks out. For multimodal facilities, we evaluated how well the particular option would get people across I-15 to the planned improvements and, and the requirements for the new light rail that is planned to come in. In this case, you can see that interchanges at 400 North and 900 South are not consistent with the approved plans, because they are farther away from Center Street, which is where the proposed location is for the front-runner station, and the interchange at Center Street or 100 South would be the best locations to provide access to, to that front-runner station. Moving on to local mobility, we measured how well the concept would improve local mobility by the number of vehicles that it would remove from Main Street. An interchange at 900 South, it performed the poorest in that case, in that it would only take about 8.2% of the traffic off of Main Street, whereas you can see the split interchange would remove 19% of the traffic off of Main Street. So, based on level-one screening, which is this table here, we, we eliminated the options of 400 North and 900 South. We eliminated 400 North because it did not attract enough vehicles from adjacent interchanges to support regional mobility, and it did not provide good connectivity across I-15 to the planned transit station. We eliminated 900 South because it did not attract enough vehicles off Main Street to support local mobility, and so it did not provide good connectivity across I-15 either. In summary, three of these interchange concepts passed the level-one screening, and that would be the Center Street interchange, the 100 South interchange, and the split interchange.
Hey, Darren. Can I interrupt you real quick?
Sure.
These are 2050 numbers?
These, these numbers are based on 2050 traffic, yeah?
On the local mobility one, the 49,000 is an additional, what is the, what does 49,000 mean?
The 29,000?
Forty-nine.
Oh, the forty-nine.
The no action.
Oh, the no action? So, so that means that in, in 2050, there will be 49,000 more vehicles going down Main Street.
Okay, so we do nothing, there'll be almost 50,000 more cars on our Main Street. If one of these other alternatives were implemented, there'd be 19% less than that.
Correct.
I'll read that, okay. Thank you.
So these next slides we're going to go over, we're going to go over the level-two screening process for the remaining three options. Okay? This is, and hopefully you guys can, can see this and kind of visualize, maybe even in 3D, what this, what we're talking about here, but this is the 100 South concept, meaning an interchange at 100 South. Okay? So in this case, we would be building a, a, an elevated structure over I-15, so we would have to lower I-15, build an overpass over I-15. That overpass would also go over the railroad track, we would move the railroad track to the west, so that we could accommodate the interchange and the new station, and then as part of this concept, we would also have to improve the 100 South corridor, and I'll get into the impacts of that in a little bit, but this particular concept or option had the most impacts to property. This, and so this concept was eliminated because of those high impacts to, to, to properties, both residential and commercial. Okay? So this one did not move forward. This is the split interchange, what we call split interchange here. As you can see, as I explained before, there's two, actually two structures here, one structure at Center Street and another structure at 1550 West. So if you're heading north on I-15, you'd actually get off at 1550 West, off that exit, and you would travel on a one-way frontage road on the east side of I-15 up till you got to Center Street, and then that's where the entrance ramp would be to get back onto I-15. So there's kind of a gap in between those two structures, where you have these one, one-way roads that take traffic from one structure to the next structure. Okay? This particular interchange had more impacts to the environment, to what we call 4F properties, which are federally protected resources, and so because of the significant amount of impact, this concept was also eliminated. Which leaves us with the Center Street concept. Center Street concept is what Spanish Fork has actually been working on for several years, and we're grateful for the, as I mentioned before, the work that has been done prior to this environmental study kicking off by Spanish Fork staff, but there's a little variance in, in what we came up with versus what was in this original scoping report. That is that we looked at lower, again, lowering I-15 and, and taking 100 South over I-15. Currently, if you go on 100 South, it goes under I-15. Okay? I'm, I'm sorry, Center Street. Well, actually, Center Street doesn't go across, but in this area, 100 South, I-15 goes over 100 South. So with this concept, we would have to lower I-15, okay? And then in our concept study, we actually looked at closing 100 South across I-15, and I'll get to a little bit of that in, a little bit later. In this case, the rail line would also have to be shifted to the west, and this concept did pass the screening, level-two screening, it did meet the purpose and need from level-one, and it also met the level-two screening because it had the fewest impacts and the lowest cost. So this is the concept, we're going to move forward into the next phase of the study, which is to get into a detailed analysis of this particular option. Okay? And so in summary, for level-two screening, this is what it looks like. For aquatic resources, which include rivers and ditches and canals, those types of things, and for Section 4F, which is historic home sites, sometimes they can be historic canals as well. The split interchange, although it performed the best in terms of moving traffic off of Main Street, the regional mobility issues, it performed the worst in terms of meeting the, the other criteria that we have to, have to look at, aquatic resources and so forth. And so because of this, the split interchange was eliminated, and also when you look at 100 South, when you look at the property impacts, that's why we eliminated that particular option, because we're looking at 33 relocations in that case.
Along, along?
Along the Center Street corridor.
Up south.
Because right now, that Center Street, I'm, I'm sorry, the 100 South corridor, 100 South corridor is currently only two lanes, whereas the Center Street corridor is already kind of built out, so there's a lot fewer impacts. And so that's why we're going to move forward with this Center Street interchange. And so now, our next step is to take this Center Street interchange concept and get in and refine the design, and as part of that refinement, we are also, we're looking at an option where we don't have to close 100 South. If you remember, I said during the screening process, we assumed 100 South would be closed with this option. Now that we're into the refinement part of the process, we're going to look and see if we can't keep 100 South open, potentially using 100 South as a, as a multi-use pathway across I-15. We're, we're trying to avoid having the multi-use traffic go across the, a spooey, right? You, you can imagine wheelchairs, bicycles, joggers trying to get across a spooey interchange. So we're looking at the possibility of using the 100 South corridor as a way for, to accommodate multimodal use. Okay? So this is where we are. Our current phase is the alternative evaluation. As I said, we're going to refine the alternatives, and through this process, we'll come up with a preferred alternative. So the preferred alternative will either be a, an interchange at Center Street or no action, meaning we wouldn't do a project. And I think you could kind of imagine from a few previous slides, the question that Shane asked, in terms of the traffic on Main Street, getting people across I-15, the, the interchange option has a pretty high likelihood of, of outperforming the no action. And so this shows us your schedule. We, we plan on having this part of the phase done here in about May, and in that time, we will produce a document that describes our preferred alternative, and then we'll open up our decision to a public comment period, a 30-day public comment period, after which that closes, we'll address all the public comments that we get from that process, and then finally, we'll respond to those, and plan on putting out a final decision in the November timeframe on, on this, and at that point, the study will be complete. So anyway, that's our update for today. Again, this is how you can contact us. These are on, on multiple places, on the Spanish Fork website, on UDOT's website. Feel free to give us a call whenever you want, and I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you, Darren. We've got Mr. Bunker here from UDOT. Any questions from the council?
Why are y'all looking at me?
I just, you lead off.
You knew I was going to go, right? I would just say, I don't know if it's a question as much as a supportive comment to looking at 100 South as a multi-use pedestrian corridor. Getting people out of those spooys is really important, not a place to walk, not a place to bike, so I would be super supportive of moving in that direction. I think it's a great, great option, even if it was just a trail over I-15, even if you took the traffic off of it, I still think it'd be a better solution than
Right.
than putting people through the spooey. So I like that idea a lot.
Maybe give an example to the public of what a spooey is?
The University Parkway on I-15.
400, 400 South in Springville?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's closer.
Yeah.
That one there.
My question on that is, you, you're changing the elevation, so you'd no longer go under on 100 South, you'd go, you'd go over the freeway?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, the, the, the current design through the, the concept phase was that we would be at grade, the same grade as the railroad track, which would mean we'd have to close the 100 South crossing. Now, through this refinement process, we're looking at actually being at grade at Center Street, and then elevating by the time we get to 100.
So you're still going to?
We would still go over 100.
You'd go over 100, but the issue with us crossing at 100 South is there's a railroad still there.
Right, and I, and I forgot to mention that we're looking at keeping 100 South open. However, you do have the UTA project, the, the front-runner station, they could come back in their study and say, no, we need to close that crossing. Crossings around a multimodal facility like a, a transit station is, is not the ideal situation. Right? And so anytime that those types of projects can close an at-grade crossing, that's what they prefer. And so although we may, we may come out with a concept that keeps it open, they could come back and say, we need to close it, so no guarantees.
Breaks up with it.
Yeah.
I thought crossings were easy. Jared Johnson said crossings are easy to get across.
Darren, if you, if you do, if you keep the crossing for trails and whatnot, would you, you'd go under with the trail, but it doesn't have the same height clearances as vehicular, vehicular traffic?
So in case of the multimodal trail part of that equation, we would go under I-15, and then we would, we would turn and go back towards Center Street between the railroad track and the freeway.
Right.
And we would climb back up to the level of where the spooey would be, and provide a nice access across the railroad, and then back down into the transit station.
Seems like a great. Seems like a great, a good option to study. Thanks for being thoughtful there.
So one thing that came up when we started this study is timelines, right? We talked about timeline for this part of it. Can you just give a rough estimate how after this part of the study is done, when the next actions would take place? Because people get, want to know, like, when would they see action on that? I know it's a little while is out there, but.
So that will all depend on, on how the funding is achieved. And there are several ways that the project can get funded. The most typical way is through a, through what we call a STIP process. So the project goes on a, like a prioritization list, and it gets funded through regular monies. Other avenues are through legislative action. And those are, that's a particular item that UDOT doesn't get involved in. That's typically done through a political route. And so I don't have an answer to that question because I'm not privy to the discussions that are happening in that realm.
Perfect, thank you. Realistically, in the fall, you've got details and pictures that says this is what we're going for.
Yeah, this is, this is what we're, we're thinking would serve the community the best. That would, that would fulfill the purpose and need and get the, get the mobility that you're looking for.
And a financial attachment to it.
There would be a, yeah, there will be a financial attachment to it. Right? And that financial attachment will look at, for example, the 100 South crossing. It'll look at potentially having to build a new structure on 100 South to either accommodate vehicle traffic and, and multi-use trail, or just a multi-use trail, depending on what happens out of the UTA study. But it'll include a budget for all of that, yep.
And maybe just putting a pin in that, those dollars are typically much larger than just a city coming up with the dollars for that. These are projects that are statewide.
Typically, there's help needed in that regard, yep.
So Darren, just big picture, you mentioned two ways of funding. The first one was the normal UDOT process. Isn't it, it seems like UDOT's funded currently out to about 2030 at this point. So there's no room between now and 2030, at the very least, in the normal process. It would be post 2030 at best.
Correct. So, so part of the STIP process, if you go out to the Mountainland Association of Governments website, they do have the long-range plan out there, and they've broken it out into three phases, right? Phase 1 goes from 2023 to 2033, I think now. They just updated it. And then Phase 2 goes from 2033 to 2043. So they're broken, broken out in 10-year segments. I believe that this interchange is on their Phase 1 program. And so they have allocated some money, but typically, these types of projects are large enough that there's additional monies that are needed to complete it.
That's good to know.
But it is, it is, it is an anticipated project on the STIP.
Darren, you're over our region. That's a much broader area than, than just us, even though we feel we're the most important. But we appreciate you doing this for, for many cities and the broad area that it is and your working relationship with us. Anything that you want the citizens of Spanish Fork to know, besides scan the QR code and continue the process?
The US 6 project from I-15 to the mouth of Spanish Fork Canyon is kicking off. You've probably seen the construction starting out there. Phase 1 of the Springville-Spanish Fork interchange has also started to kick off. And then we just let Phase 2 of that project, which is, which is basically the majority of the interchange, we're letting that out to bid at the end of the month. And so you'll see some significant activity regarding that interchange happening by, by the end of the year as well. So a lot of, a lot of roadway work going on in your community that will significantly impact how your community gets around, so.
Well, this is great feedback, because I know our residents' primary concern in Spanish Fork right now is traffic. So you being here and giving us all this feedback is so helpful, because it's, none of this is in our hands up here. It's in your hands, so.
We're happy to do it. Anytime you want us to give you an update, we're happy to come and share.
Thank you.
Just doing some rough numbers in my head, those, those projects, citizens, I think Councilwoman Beck touched on it, we hear you. Traffic is a pain for all of us. It's a pain for any growing community. It's a pain for us. We live, we live next to you, so we get it as well. But the result of that is listening and partnering with projects like this. We're well into the hundreds of millions of projects that are under construction in our area that will directly affect your life once they're complete, as far as traffic going. I mean, I think half a billion is not, not a stretch by any means when you, when you can't in that Springville exit and our Highway 6 project. It's a lot of money. And, and so your council's advocating for you during the legislative session and beyond, and UDOT is a great partner to have there. So thank you so much, Darren.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of housekeeping things before we go into council comments. Number one, Councilman Euler is not here. He's in meetings with our city attorney. Maybe I'll just let that float out there, and you guys can wonder what, why he'd be there.
Let's not.
Oh, okay. They're at a water conference, and water is, if you've ever heard, I got a dad that had a career in water, and he said whiskey's for drinking, water's for fighting. Water is a big deal in the state of Utah, and water in our city is a big deal too. Kevin sits, Councilman Euler sits on our NEBO agency and is over some of the water issues with Spanish Fork, and him and our attorney. And I believe that's where Chris is too, right? Chris Thompson? Or to a water law conference with the other water leaders in the state of Utah. So he's excused tonight from, from this council meeting. Councilman Marshall's going to try to leave us, but we probably might be done before you have to.
We're crossed.
Okay, get, get out of here. So anyway, thank you, Councilman Euler. You're probably, you're probably watching now that you're maybe done with some meetings down there, but thank you for your help with this, with that conference down there. We'll start with council comments here, and we'll go to the new end. Is that all right? Councilman Took, you ready? Councilman Took, and then we'll go this way to Councilman Marshall.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The Spanish Fork and Salem Chamber of Commerce is amazing, and I absolutely love working with them. I have some, some comments to make about things that have been happening and that are upcoming, but I will start off by turning the time over to our president of the Chamber of Commerce, Kathleen Levitt, to share the majority of all the good stuff.
Thank you, Landon. Councilman Took, I appreciate it. So some exciting things happening with the Chamber of Commerce, first thing. I want to let you guys know that our magazine is printed, so residents should be able to expect to see the magazine in their mailboxes sometime this week. It's, it's a good-looking magazine. We're super excited with the way that Bennett Communications printed it for us. We have Parks and Rec guides in their trail guides, a calendar of events here, as well as a pull-out calendar, so that's a standalone. Put on your fridge for all the calendar events that are coming up. Something that I was excited about this year that we printed, if people have business ideas, that they don't know how to start implementing them. I worked with Kim Brennerman to go over the proper ways to start a business, how to get it licensed and the proper procedure for how to do that. So if anyone has some business ideas rolling around in their heads and they want to get those into reality, there's an article in there that can help with that. So that's an exciting thing. Also, the Easter egg hunt is coming up on March 30th this year, so we are just about a week and a half away. We're excited for that. That'll be at 9:00 AM. We're all geared up for about 1,200 kids. So something new that we're doing there is we have business-sponsored activity booths. So we have about 20 booths right now that are business-sponsored and business-organized. Each one will have an interactive factor for the kids, so face painting, balloon animals, bag tosses, all kinds of fun things for the kids to do. So there'll be the egg hunt, but then those booths will be going on throughout the day from 8:30 AM until 10:00 AM, so.
So nine, nine o'clock sharp?
Nine o'clock sharp is when the egg hunt, yeah, 9:01 usually. So, yeah, don't be late.
Don't be late.
To that, because, and also get, come a little bit early. Like I said, the activity booths will be up and running by 8:30, so you can get there a little bit early. There will be things to do. You won't just have to just stand in line. But yeah, so 8:30 to 10:00 AM, and the hunt starts right at 9:00 and is over by 9:01. So if you're late, you won't get to hunt, you can still play though. We have noon networking this month. It is this Thursday, March 21st, March 21st at Hampton Inn. Serve Pro will be presenting and sponsoring that, and Mountain Mike's Pizza's going to be providing lunch for us. A couple of dates that I would just like for you to put on your calendars, we have a couple ribbon cuttings in April that are already scheduled. We're going to be cutting the ribbon for MVP Sports' new location on April 5th, and then on April 24th, we'll be cutting the ribbon for Larson CPA. Also, some exciting news, I was able to receive a grant from the Governor's Office of Economic Development for $70,000 for us to be able to help with employee acquisition and retention in Spanish Fork and Salem areas. So what we're going to be doing with those funds is we're going to put on a job fair in Spanish Fork/Salem on April 30th. So on 4:30, we'll have a job fair. It's actually hosted at the Advanced Learning Center. We've got space for about 40 small businesses to come and represent their businesses, and I'm working with the Department of Workforce Services, NEBO School District, and the ALC to be able to get students and people needing jobs and interested in the different types of opportunities that we have here in Spanish Fork and Salem, to be able to hopefully fill some of those job openings that we have. And then the other part of the grant is going to be to elevate our business summit on October 10th, be able to get some speakers to come in that can really teach on employee retention and some of those specialties that we need, so that our businesses can keep them once they acquire them. So those are some cool things we have going on. Also, going into May a little bit, we have the golf tournament with the Rotary Club is on May 8th, so mark that on your calendars. And, and we are also doing a new activity this year. We've partnered with the American Fork Chamber of Commerce to do a Battle of the Forks Pickleball Tournament. So on May 11th, Spanish Fork will play Spanish Fork, and American Fork will play American Fork and American Fork. The winners of those tournaments will play head-to-head in Spanish Fork on May 18th. So that one will be the official Battle of the Forks tournament. So I'll be reaching out to the different city offices once we get all of the registration links done. Hopefully, we can get some teams together from the different city departments to play in a spectator round. Hopefully, some of you guys are interested in playing pickleball as well, to be able to defend Spanish Fork against American Fork. So that's what we've got going on in the chamber.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thanks, Kathleen.
Well, thank you, Kathleen. Amazing job running the Chamber of Commerce, and congrats again on the $70,000 grant. Super exciting. So I would just add to that, as far as Chamber of Commerce goes, my experience, I was able to attend a variety of events this past month for the chamber. One of them was the Business of the Month, Brassmills and Jewellers. That was an exciting event to be part of. Also ribbon cutting for, it was on March 1st for the new Sippin'. If you haven't checked it out yet, you need to. It's amazing. I got to take a tour. I got to see their bakery, where they're going to start making all their treats in-house. They have an assembly line of where they make their drinks, and it's just so, it's a well-oiled machine. And it was exciting. The energy was, was really great. So love that. Also, and I hope it's okay I announce this, but I, I've caught wind from our, our chamber leadership meeting this last week, that on May 20th, we'll be ribbon cutting in open house for the new Spanish Fork High School, just down the street. So that's exciting. More details to come, but that'll be 6 o'clock again on May 20th. Just a couple of final items here. On, well, let's see, last week, we had a swearing-in. Councilman Cardon talked about it too, if you'd like, but it was a swearing of new EMS and firefighters for the city, and that was Station 22. And for me, that was a very special opportunity to work with them and to, to serve with them. I loved being able to do that. And last thing I have is in regards to the Miss Spanish Fork program. We, a variety of us have been, in fact, let's see, Councilman Euler was there, Councilman Cardon, the mayor. Anyway, we, we've been helping prepare these girls for the pageant. It will be on March 30th, so the same day as the Easter egg hunt. So you've got the Easter egg hunt in the morning, and then Miss Spanish Fork, Maple Mountain High School in the evening. And please come support these young women. There's 10 of them competing. It is really scary and intimidating to do, and it takes a lot of investment. And so, oh, thank you, Nick, you found it. And so this is the flyer for that with the details. And if you have any questions, please reach out to me as well, but we'd love to have your support from the city for this. We have an amazing program, Miss Spanish Fork, long-running, and the city supports this program, and, and we, so many amazing young women participate in this and grow and develop in amazing ways because of it. So that's, that's all I've got, Mayor.
Perfect.
Thank you, Councilman Cardon, or Councilman Took, Councilman Cardon.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been almost a month since we met because of caucus meetings, and so there's been a lot of things that happened. So Nick, if you'll just start pulling up some pictures, I'll just kind of go with what you have, if that's okay. Let you fly. So the Arts Council, so they have a choir concert, the Spanish Fork Corral has a choir concert this, coming up next week, I guess it is, March 29th at 7:00 PM. They had to move it to the Provo at 350 North, 900 East, just because of size and some different things. And there will be, combined with a couple other choirs, but, you know, an awesome event that, again, our, part of our Arts Council does that, so a good way for your Easter holiday that way. Yesterday, I was able to deliver Mills on Wheels with MAG. What a great program to help those, there are a lot of them that are homebound or different, in different scenarios. I can't recall her name right off the bat, but she was talking to me about a lot of different things. She's lived here for a really long time, but she loves the city and loves her road. She lives up, up on 300 East, and so had some questions about some of the projects that are going on around there. And it was really good to get to know her, but also the volunteers that help with the MAG Mills on Wheels program. If you haven't had a chance, or if you have some extra time during lunchtime, they are always looking for volunteers. They have people on waitlist because they just don't have enough volunteers to help really do some of those things. So if you can, please help out with that. Go to the next one. So last week, I was invited to Park Elementary to their Leadership Assembly, where they talked, I want to say it was eight habits. I should have wrote down how many habits it was, but every grade talked about a habit of leadership, and such an amazing thing that our elementaries do to prepare our kids for the future, to whatever avenue they go in life. But we have a great, a great future with our, with our children, with the leadership that they're, they're putting in from, from the elementary schools, junior highs, middle schools, high schools, and, and there's a lot of educators in here right now. So thank you for what you do to help lead that, that cause. Another board that I get to serve on, or group I get to serve on, is, my pictures are great, thanks, Nick, for zooming in and making them look better, is the Youth City Council. And last week, Representative Doug Welton, who represents the citizens just south of us, spoke to the kids there, and he talked a lot about the legislative session that we just got out of. They were talking about a bill. They do a mock bill every month, and this month's was to get rid of the Electoral College. So that was a fun debate to hear those in high school talk about that and to talk about what that would look like, and bright questions, bright answers. And the Easter egg hunt coming up, they'll be helping very heavily with that, and they do a lot of service in our community. So if you see youth at an event, a lot of times it's our Youth City Council. And to put a plug in for them right now, signups are happening for those going 9th to 12th grade next year. They can sign up online. If you just go to our SpanishFork.org website, you can sign up there. And it's a really cool organization that they put in a lot of work. And thank you to our volunteers that helped with that, too. Again, a lot of volunteer service, like Emily started the meeting off talking about today. So again, with the Arts Council, one of the new events that they're working on is the mini masterpiece show. It is been over, it is over at this point, but they had, I can't remember the exact number of entries. It was over 400 entries for the first year that they did this, and this was partnered with some businesses, funded by some RAP tax money, but also gave everybody, it was like a two-by-two little canvas where they were able to create whatever. And so here's just two items, and if you want to see more, there's more on the Spanish Fork Arts Council Facebook page. But just an awesome little thing to both partner with our, with our Arts Council, but also those within our community, some businesses. I think there were six businesses that partnered with our Arts Council to make that happen. Okay, one last thing up here is, last week, we were able to attend the Utah Recreation and Parks Association Awards, or I guess it was their conference, but one of the awards that was received was for Wings and Wheels and for the, the production that that is. That Emily Herriman kind of leads that up and works with our art, our Airport Board, which I get to serve on. Such an awesome event and cool to be represented there. And thank you to our Recreation Department that helps make that event stay less chaotic, we'll say. It's a, it's a wild one, but it's, it's an awesome, awesome event that happens every year. Other than that, just one last thing that I wanted to, just on the Rotary Golf, Rotary and Chamber Golf Tournament on May 8th. The funds for that go to scholarships that are given out to our students in the high schools here in the area. I know that lots of people, you know, Councilman Took has talked about that, helping him to get to college a lot. All the funds go to that. All the funds go to scholarships. So if you're looking for something to do on May 8th... So if you're looking for something to do on May 8th, or even if you're looking for a way to highlight your business, such a good opportunity to give to these students that are working hard to get grades. There's an application process and it'd be awesome if we could give it to all of them. I think last year, I'm looking at Lana because she knows number, I think it's 14. All of them got it last year. Yeah, this year, I think we said 14? Or is it 12? 14 is what they're looking to, but the more people that we have participate in that golf tournament helps it to, those scholarships happen. So that's all I have, Mayor. There's a few things.
Awesome. Thank you, Councilman Cardon. Will Lana be there taking our pictures at the golf tournament still? Okay, you're not retired from that. Perfect. Okay. Councilwoman Beck.
My daughter benefited from that Rotary Scholarship about nine years ago. So if you have seniors in high school, you can also apply at your local high school for a scholarship opportunity if you could use funds for college. And I don't have any council comments, but if I can address Emily Peterson when she came up and thank her for just sharing her positive feedback of Spanish Fork University. It's been a really fun, engaging process for so many of our residents. The spring session has already started, but if you are interested in diving in behind the scenes of Spanish Fork University, there will be another opportunity in the fall, and you can reach out to any one of us, and we will give you more details about that. And then Emily, I did want to address, because I know you had suggested your ideas to me, I think last winter, about the Ollabilities Park programs. I think they are a great idea. I actually went to talk to Emily Harriman, who is our Events Coordinator. And they start setting up in October for the Winter Light, the Festival of Lights. So their whole team is doing that, and they don't have the staff to do any Halloween or winter projects. So I just wanted to kind of return and report because I never had with you. We also approved a budget for 2024 for Emily to get an assistant, which this year, she's there to help her. But like Wings and Wheels and Harvest Moon Hurrah are both in September, so big events. And then they turn right around in, in October and start getting all those lights up for the Festival of Lights. So I just kind of wanted to report on those couple of things. And that's all I have.
Maybe some 101 folks or something, get some volunteers and see if it can be filled out that way or something.
Putting up the lights?
Well, no. No, no, not putting up the lights. No, just the additional stuff, if there's additional stuff.
Gotcha, gotcha. Like the Dickens Festival or something. Gotcha. Yes, that would be a good idea.
Thank you. Thank you for looking into that. Councilman Marshall?
Yep, a couple of things. I had forgotten we'd been a month since we met. So last, on the 5th, I think, of the month, we had an opportunity to meet with the 8th graders of Spanish Fork Junior High. For those of you who have 8th graders and they came home, I apologize. We gave them a lot of information. Hopefully, they took down their 10 facts and they learned some stuff. It's a, it's a good time. They love to challenge us with really tough questions at times. It's pretty interesting. They ask more harder questions at times than, than some of the adults do. So it was, it was a lot of fun. I think we all had a chance to give at least one class some, some words of advice. I too got to go to the Parks and Rec Conference this last week. It's, it's interesting, like I've been to, I don't know, hundreds of conferences before in my life. And to go to a different, non-engineering conference is really refreshing. Like there's people walking around in shorts and it's, it's a great place to go for a conference. But what I find the best is, to Emily's point, and I think we all mentioned what Emily had to say today, I appreciate your comments tonight. We have some of the most dedicated employees in the entire state. And to get a chance to sit down with them for a couple hours and talk about what they did and what they're doing next year is really important to me. There's a reason why people want to live in Spanish Fork, and a big chunk of that is because of who we employ and the dedication they have. So I want to thank all the Parks and Rec staff that went down and had a chance to give us their side of things. So passionate about some of the simpler things that we can take advantage of, and it's just, it's amazing. So thank you, Dale. Thank you, staff, Bronco, everyone down there. It was a great time. So that's all I had.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilman Marshall. I'll round up with just a couple of comments. Echo the Parks and Rec Conference. It's always a good, good conference to be at for the reasons stated already. But I'm telling you, you're down there with other cities across the state of Utah, and they have no reason to really pat us on the back. They're somewhat in competition with us for what their, what their programs are and what they're trying to do. But to a person, I think if you attend the Parks and Rec Conference, they will come up and say, "You're doing it right in Spanish Fork." And sometimes they're asking the elected officials, like, "Well, how do you do this?" And we're like, "Let me get Dale. Let me get Bronco. Let me get Emily. You know, let me get Verna Jo." Whoever it is that is the dedicated people that serve us in Spanish Fork are professionals. And it's just fun to, to hear your colleagues give you those accolades because it's deserving. And it is, it's a huge region why, why people like it here. It's also a huge reason. We hear a lot, "How do we keep the small-town feel of your city?" You do it by having parks and recreation programs that are active, that get people out of their homes and together, recreating together in spaces. You will have a hard time not feeling like you're a small town if you get out and, and come down to the ballpark for a few hours, or pickleball courts, or all the other many places we have. So.
Mike, can I just add to that real quick? Take any more of your time. But one of the biggest challenges that several of them mentioned, which I was shocked, and I'm not sure I was shocked, was that they run adult leagues, they run youth leagues, they run a bunch of different sporting events throughout our community. And all of them, without a doubt, said the number one challenge is sportsmanship. So it's, it's a good reminder to talk to your kids, probably talk to the mayor about being a good sport at those, those youth events. It's just a sport. They're just trying to have fun. And to, you know, get all over an umpire or a supervisor at night, it's just, it's just not worth it. We are, we were brainstorming about how we could, how we could make a point that sportsmanship is important. And, and we're really going to start thinking about how do we do those things? And, and again, continue to push sportsmanship. So look for something, I think, to help our employees, you know, be successful down there, and parents, and, and the kids, that just all be better sports. It's just, it's just fun, right? It's just, it's out for fun, trying to get some exercise, so just take it easy a little bit.
Glad you mentioned that because I'd forgot it, but I'm telling you, we're sitting down there in a roundtable discussion with some of your, your, your people that are tasked with being down at the ballpark or being at the basketball courts. And the stories from just this last year that I didn't know embarrassed us for ourselves, right? I didn't know, I didn't know, you know, we see it, you can scroll through YouTube, you can scroll through Instagram, you can scroll through your favorite social media site and see some people losing it on umpires or referees. You do not want to be part of that video. And, and I'm, I'm sorry that we told Dale's staff, some of them, that, sorry, they had to deal with some of that from Spanish Fork people this last year. So you're going to see an intentional focus on it, especially as we roll into spring and, and do these different sports. Your kids are watching, our kids are watching, and, and the Jazz are not calling. And neither are the Angels. Nobody's, nobody's calling you up to the next level. So, so, so have fun doing it and, and get that exercise. Couple of pitchers to lead on that. Maybe lead with the little bike, my dude on the bike first. Did I switch that up on you? This, this was my dream as a kid. I grew up out in the fields of Palmyra and then grew up at the other side of town, but all my friends lived downtown. So me and Jagger, on the first day that, it was not warm enough for shorts, but Jagger was determined that shorts were going to be that day, riding our bikes down to, to the gas station and getting a treat. Just again, that warning of, oh, man, I looked at this all the time and I, when I'd come uptown with my, my friends and be like, "What would it be if I could just ride my bike downtown?" Because when you're out in the fields, it's, you know, it's not a block, it's two acres to get to the next house sometimes. So anyway, Jagger had a great time. It was fun. The reminder is simply, as we need to make sure sportsmanship coming up, you, you got to get out of winter driving mode now, which is being mad in the snow and the rain and everything. And there's going to be little dudes and, and, and other kids and adults out on their bikes, out walking. So just be careful. That's, I'm sure that's one of the worst things that Chief and, and Chief Ailes and everybody has to go on. So let's just ramp up the safety, slow it down, check twice. There's going to be little kids on bikes now that have not been on bikes for months and months. So there's my cautionary warning there. The other one, Saturday, was the Men's Association Open. I was trying, Raz and Ryan and, and Allen and everybody a little bit. This is a picture of, of my foursome that I was in Saturday morning. It looks a lot warmer than it was. That wind didn't stop blowing down the canyon. We call that a gentle breeze, but it wasn't that day. It's cold, so we were bundled up. Commissioner Gordon and I. This, the picture just in the background of the Gateway Parks that wrapped up their last day that day. If you happen to be able to get up there with your family, awesome. But it was pretty, it's pretty cool to golf right next to a tubing hill where there were kids yelling and screaming and having a great time. And, and half of them were just up there on their snowboards and skis to get the last bit of that into, which was free the whole time up there. You could, in Spanish Fork in 2024, you could ski and snowboard for free up at, up at the golf course. The tubing aspect costs a little bit, but the skiing and snowboarding were free and could roll up the, the, the automatic, what do they call it, the magic carpet up the side and continue to do it. And, and those kids were having a great time on Saturday. It's spread out now. It's closed, and it'll be gone in just just a few days with, with the heat warming up. But we'll have more about that. I know Dale's going to report in a future, future council meeting about the details of how that went the first, the first go-around this year. But it was sure fun to, to be up there Saturday and see a couple of things going on at the same time. So there's my council comments. It moves us now to item number seven, Spanish Fork 101. We have the General Plan Survey Results, which I know a lot of us have participated in. And we appreciate the good work of Dave Anderson and his department and the folks that, that we hired to do this study. And so Dave can give us an update here.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I think I have a full agenda. So I'm going to be succinct and invite you guys to ask whatever questions you might have, prod me along, do whatever. But really, as much as anything tonight, I have an invitation for anybody that's interested, maybe to start with, to go to the city's website to get more information about the project that we're working on. They can review everything that I'm going to briefly touch on tonight in as much detail as they would like. And to, among other things, see more about what next steps in the project look like and that sort of a thing. So for starters, I hope we get some visuals back here. There we go. We have this page. This is accessible via the Community Development webpage. Everything worked great at 5:45 night. It was smooth, perfect.
We should have had you go then.
Absolutely, right? So anyway, go to the Community Development webpage. From there, like I started to mention, you can access a lot of information about what we're doing, which really is just creating a framework to help Spanish Fork grow in the best possible ways. So here's a more detailed description about the project and what we're doing. Again, I'll let people read that at their leisure. We've created these four goals to try to come up with a fairly succinct, potentially a little bit memorable set of items that we plan to accomplish with this project. It's really about the community's vision for the future of Spanish Fork. And that's accomplished by updating a document that we have today that hasn't been updated in quite a while, more than 10 years. And that document is used to make land use decisions. The Planning Commission uses it as they make recommendations to you. And we know that on a very regular basis, you do the same thing as you're deciding on things like zone changes and other land use-related decisions. Another part of this project pertains to an opportunity that Spanish Fork City has been pursuing for a very long time. And it's the idea of having access to transit in the community, specifically commuter rail. If we go just to the north of us, on Center Street, just next to where Mr. Bunker talked tonight about there potentially being a new interchange on I-15, plans are being studied right now for the prospect of having a commuter rail stop there along with in Springville and Payson to the south of us, if Front Runner is extended south from Provo. We think we'll know more information about that from UTA later this year. But again, this is something that Spanish Fork City has been pursuing for, for decades. It's a big deal and preparatory to having a commuter rail stop in the community. We have opportunities to do some land use planning around where that stop would be. And that's really what this point here, prepare a station area plan is all about. So along with looking at future land use throughout the city, we're looking at that specific area in more detail to try to make sure that the land uses that we plan for make the most sense for properties that are in close proximity to hopefully both an interchange and a commuter rail stop. We are on schedule. So this is a project schedule. I realize some of the text there is a little bit small to read. But right now, the consultant team that's been hired, they're working on some different scenarios for Spanish Fork City's future growth. So by way of the next things that'll be shared on this project that I think are going to be just riveting and entirely exciting, it's really about the different opportunities that Spanish Fork has now to make decisions about what it's going to become in 10, 20, 30, 40 years and that sort of a thing. We'll be tuning back in, we think, in early May, at the latest, early June, with some of those different options. We'll be touching base not only with the city council, but also with some other groups that we've already met with. And we will be looking for additional input on how, again, the community should change over time. That being said, I was specifically asked tonight to comment on the results of some survey work that we did. And in addition to that survey work, back in January, the consultant folks, company that they work for is Design Workshop. They were in town and had some small focus group meetings. So I'm going to touch on feedback that we received, both via community-wide survey that was, that was very, very well responded to, had an outstanding response from the community. I'll talk about that briefly, but also from some specific groups that zeroed in on very particular parts of how Spanish Fork can grow. For starters, there's a word mix. Some of the predominant themes that came through, the different outreach efforts that we did back in January. Opportunities for Spanish Fork, you can read those off to the left. And I apologize, the text is a little bit small here, but we heard a lot about the sense of community. We heard a lot about incorporating more density in particular areas in the community. Talk more about that in a second as well. We talked about the need for affordable housing. Having appropriate infill development, like in the area of the community that we're in right now, downtown, kind of the originally plotted parts of the community. Increased connections to transit. Heard a lot about preserving open space, in particular the river bottoms. That was a constant theme that came through. And some of the other things that the community values, rodeo grounds, iconic buildings, Sugar Beet Factory, different things like that. Perceived threats, balancing growth and new development while trying to preserve open space. Incorporating more density into the community without destroying the community's character. Traffic. A little bit about who responded to the survey. First of all, almost 3,200 responses for a city that, I guess, has probably just under 12,000 households today. That's about as good as anyone could ever dream of. So we had an excellent response, like I said earlier. This says a lot just about our demographics and who we are. That holds very true with, with simply who the majority of Spanish Fork residents are. You can see that heat map there as well. Representation from throughout the community. This didn't just come from one particular part of Spanish Fork, those 3,200 responses. Most valued characteristics. Some of this in all candor is going to be really hard to translate into land use planning. Some of this in Alcander is going to be really hard to translate into land use planning. But we know people like the views of the mountains, they like open space, they like the sense of community. We could maybe interpret some things from that. They like maybe the small town feel and different things like that. You can read other things that they like by way of the percentage of respondents that rake those, assuming that ranked those different things, uh, high as part of their, their response to the survey. Biggest challenges in Spanish Fork today, again, traffic, growth and change. Balancing historic preservation with growth. That is, that's not something that I would have expected, historic preservation by way of, uh, kind of making the cut. Lack of affordable housing, lack of transportation options, different things like that as well were noted there. Continuing on, community, that's the theme. That came through in a number of different questions that were asked about how people both would describe Spanish Fork today and how they want Spanish Fork to be in the future. Again, a heat map relative to where respondents feel growth is appropriate. Pretty well dispersed, also well dispersed simply, uh, in most areas that have land open for development. But also, um, and we'll talk more about this in, in future steps. Apparently the prospect of redevelopment. Uh, absent here is the river bottoms. Maybe not a surprise, given some of the other responses. This is by way of a wish list, development priorities in the next five to 10 years. Affordable, attainable housing, mixed use development. You can see the others there. Uh, much of that is not a surprise. Um, and we start to get into then some things that we see a lot of times when projects like this are conducted and input from Utahns is solicited relative to growth and what people feel like their communities need. Um, I will talk more about a resident survey that was recently conducted. And we have the results of that, along with this effort that, you know, they kind of corresponded a little bit relative to timeframe. Uh, we get contradictory messages, and this is where the land use plan and accounting for very diverse, um, and I'll say it again, contradictory messages are loud and clear. Um, we heard through this process that Spanish Fork residents want more single-family homes on larger lots. And Spanish Fork residents want more affordable housing. Um, Spanish Fork residents want open space and ag lands preserved. Um, Spanish Fork residents want less density. Uh, in various ways, those things even contradict one another as you think about how to use land efficiently, how to preserve space, different things of that nature. I could spend hours talking about that, but instead I'll just say for now that, you know, those really are some of the challenges that, that we will take a hold of and run with. As like I mentioned earlier, scenarios are developed and we start to talk about the community uh, by way of maybe how they would prioritize some of those different things that we heard that they would like to see in Spanish Fork City's future. Couple of things in a wrap up, back to the idea that, uh, also as part of this project, we're focusing on an area around roughly Center Street and I-15. Um, I actually think this is very insightful and, uh, can't agree more with it. But by way of challenges for having a commuter rail stop on the other side of I-15 at Center Street and I-15. The lack of connections to residential areas. There are no connections to any residential areas today, right? So makes perfect sense. Concerns about parking, it's, is there going to be enough parking? Um, and again, lack of connections, um, also noted as lack of connections to commercial areas. The idea that an interchange in the vicinity of where the commuter rail stop might be is critical. I think is evident by just the intuition and the savvy that we receive through this survey process. I think people understand that without the, uh, direct access to I-15 and better access to everything that's on the east side of I-15 where the commuter rail stop might be, there are going to be some real challenges to, to make that kind of facility work. Uh, but we have priorities. Uh, I'll just go top of the list. Safe and comfortable access to transit makes perfect sense. Uh, beyond that, you can see that several of these responses just simply have to do with creating a development that I would say is recognizable, that's a destination, some kind of a place that people want to be. Um, this is pretty high level stuff, not getting into a lot of the weeds that will come with the next round. But by way of what the ultimate plan should look like, the input that was received during this first part of the public engagement for the general plan, it absolutely should be reflected on the backend. So this will be discussed as the scenarios are developed. This will be discussed as different aspects of those scenarios are prioritized. And as we move forward, we'll revisit them with you again in the future. That's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but again, just invite people to get more familiar with this and to keep track of where we're at on the project as we move forward.
Um, Dave, so as we move into the next phase of this project, how can the public stay engaged? Cause obviously go and look at this, see the results. Some have done the survey, some have been a part of groups. How can they stay engaged in the next part?
Um, we will make a very overt and direct effort to keep them apprised via, you know, using Mr. Porter's expertise, um, continuing to message the community about things like, uh, survey number two, other opportunities to provide input, um, different collateral that's developed as we move forward. Um, there will be meetings that people can attend where input will be collected in person. Um, there will be other meetings with the planning commission and the city council about the project. Um, all preparatory eventually do a very formal part of the process that will involve things like public hearings. Um, I think as much as anything, I'd say though, they can look to us to message them on, on the, the key aspects of, of how to stay engaged.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Any questions for Dave?
Thanks, Dave.
I'll just reiterate that that's a pretty quick, uh, uh, delivery of, of months and months of, of work, hundreds of thousands of dollars, taxpayer dollars that goes into studies like this. So please, if you want to find out why things are being discussed like they're being discussed up here in future meetings, the presentations that are going to happen, spanishfork.org, find that land use general plan update. You're going to see all that detail come, come into there. Um, I know it's not probably the most exciting thing that will happen in your springtime life or summer life, but when, when you get some downtime, just, just hit that website and see it'll, it'll bring you up to speed of, of a lot better of what we're talking about up here every couple of weeks. And, and we want you to stay engaged. I appreciate that, Councilman Carden, stay engaged. This, this is your general plan. It's how your community is going to grow and, and look like in the next 10, 20 years. So very important stuff. Okay, before I, I go to consent items, uh, I will make a pretty exciting announcement uh, that, uh, that Jared, maybe you're going to speak to Seth, maybe you're going to speak to, okay, Jared's going to speak to it a little bit, uh, but this has to do with, uh, you've heard a little bit about the railroads already today in different areas of our city, but this is a fantastic update of approval of a quiet zone in our city, which is quite a bit of work that takes to get to that point. So take it away, Mr. Johnson.
But they got to hear you. Sorry. This railroad's been approved as a no horn zone or no blow zone. So when it passes through, it doesn't blow the horn. Um, it just got approved last week. We don't know anymore to say on that, so.
Tell everybody where that is.
Oh, it's Spanish Fork Parkway.
Zoom out, right Shane?
Yeah, can you zoom out?
Yeah, it's the brand new railroad, uh, it's the one we built through Spanish Fork Parkway.
It's Chad, it's Councilman Argyle's road. It's Spanish Fork Parkway that takes you from the, the Lowe's area, the hospital area, and takes you directly up to the east side of town, past Maple Mountain High School, uh, and, and connects you into Highway six and the Small Mart and beyond. It really is the, uh, the belt route, if you will, the modern day belt route of Spanish Fork City gets you directly down to, to, uh, what eventually is, uh, you know, places to get on the freeway, but does get you directly to shopping. And it was a big deal to cross the tracks there with Spanish Fork Parkway. We sat there, how many yards away from the, from the, the railroad for a while, right? And.
Probably about six months we had it waiting for the road, but the crossing, yeah.
Yeah.
So this whole summer.
But years worth of work to.
Five years.
To, uh, five years to get the approval to cross that railroad, which, uh, you know, it might seem like, oh, this just serves Chad Argyle and, and his neighborhood. It, 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 pretty close, uh, but it doesn't. Uh, this, this, this takes so much traffic off 400 North in town that gets down, uh, to, to other people's area of town and, and crosses, uh, crosses over to Costco and stuff. This is the east side, not only the east side of Spanish Fork, all of Mapleton that's taking this parkway and getting down to our areas of commerce and the hospital in a lot easier way. But the no horn, the quiet zone is certainly a benefit to Councilman Argyle and his neighborhood directly too.
I'd like to add, I live on the east side, but on the southeast side, so I go right up to the neighborhood Walmart and, and go down that way. It just opened in October, but with all of the construction on Highway six, this is a great alternate route to be taking for the next six months. Stay off Highway six, go down Spanish Fork Parkway. It's very quick.
Is thirty, is it 35 mile an hour?
Yes. Not, not too quick.
Or is Stacy going?
Medium quick.
Yeah, yeah. Chief, get up there when Stacy.
It's as fast as you want it to be till you get caught.
Till you get caught. Pay the ticket, that's right.
So 35.
That's right.
So one, one thing to note with this, uh, crossing being a quiet crossing, this is great for this one location. It doesn't, uh, extend to the other crossings up or down the track. This is one step in, uh, the work that we're trying to do to, uh, adjust everything about this railroad track. So it doesn't eliminate the horn on all the traffic crossings, so you'll still hear it in the area. But, but in this particular one, that's one less and, and you took one here and one there, and pretty soon you get them all. So we're pretty excited.
We'll be working on the rest of them, but really Spanish Fork Parkway connecting to Canyon Creek Parkway. Uh, Councilwoman Beck, great, great reminder that we'll be under construction on Highway six this summer. It's not going to be fun. Um, this, this is going to be a great alternate route. There's not many stop signs. There's a roundabout because everybody loves the roundabouts. And, uh, and, and it'll get you up to that east side a lot quicker than maybe waiting through the traffic that is going to be under construction and sometimes down to one lane going both ways. It's going to be tough when people are, the rest of the state and the rest of the country is wanting to go see the arches in Moab. They have to come through your city to see that. So, uh, be prepared, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of out of towners that we already know are coming through there. So great alternate route, and it's going to be a little bit quieter now. So thank you, Jared. Appreciate your good work.
From.
Okay. Okay, that takes us to item number eight on, is consent items. We have items A through I under consent items. Is there any questions from the council about those consent items or concerns? Um, if there's not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
I move to approve the consent items.
Second, motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilman Took to approve of the consent items. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Consent items are approved. Uh, it takes us to item, uh, number nine, public hearings. We have four public hearings tonight, A, B, C, and D. The first one, uh, item A is Seth, are you presenting us with this? Uh, this is the public hearing to receive input from the public with respect to the issuance of approximately 65 million of sales tax revenue bonds and the potential economic impact with that the improvements facilities or properties to be financed in whole or in part with proceeds of said bonds will have on the private sector. Mr. Seth Parons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, tonight is, uh, the opportunity to receive public input on, on specifically on the bonds that we, uh, that you just mentioned. These, the process to issue bonds is, uh, quite lengthy and can be kind of confusing. So the purpose of my, my presentation right now is to hopefully answer an handful of questions, many of which we've heard from different sources and, and places, um, emails, text messages that we received through the city's texting system, phone calls, and then of course, uh, also some from social media and other places. So as I present this, and if you've heard anything, and I'm maybe not addressing the question quite how you've heard it, Mayor and council will stop me and, and we'll, we can answer them better. And then when we're done, we can move into the public hearing. So first of all, we're going to be talking about the rec center. This is an image of, of what it would look like when it's done. Purpose of tonight's agenda, as the mayor said, is to receive input regarding this bond issuance. Uh, provides one more forum of, of public input on the subject and provides an opportunity to learn of and consider additional points of view that may not have been considered or known before. Uh, public hearings for this type of bond are required by law, and they're required before bonds can be issued. Uh, unfortunately, the process, as I mentioned, is, is kind of elongated and, and can be confusing. And so, uh, several weeks ago, we, we approved, you approved a, a resolution. Uh, we call it a parameters resolution that sets the table for what could be considered. And this is then a next step in that process. It's not another, it's just the next step in, in that process. Um, after the public hearing tonight, uh, we'll, you'll take public comment, close the public hearing. And then there is an item, uh, to be considered later on the agenda in the new business section. Um, that is a new debt resolution. That is the final administrative step that we have, uh, before the, the process can then continue on. One question that we've heard a few times in a few different places is, is this another tax increase tonight? And I want to be really clear that this is not. Uh, this process is about the bonds, not, not, uh, the actions you're taking are not going to increase a property tax rate. Again, I think it's important to note, we had a truth and taxation hearing, and you adjusted the property tax rate in August of 2022. The, the current budget that we're in, uh, did not have a property tax increase. And what we're, we're considering for the next year also does not. This action tonight is simply about the bonds. You've put the framework in place for, uh, the structure to pay back those bonds already. Now we're ready to issue those bonds. So this is simply about, uh, that debt issuance. Another question, and candidly had never considered, was with this being a sales tax bond, and I'll try to touch on what that means here in a moment, uh, are you raising the sales tax rate in Spanish Fork? And the answer to that is no. Um, it's just simply a bond that is backed by the sales tax. We did a lot of questions about the rec center, so I'll show a few images and, and talk, uh, through with these images. Uh, try to answer some questions. First of all is where is it going to be? Uh, it's on the corner of Volunteer Drive and Main Street. This is a shot from the south, looking kind of north, northwest, uh, of the area. And, uh, we've acquired the properties there. You can see in this image, this was probably in the fall, um, late fall. And, uh, it looks a lot different now, we'll see in a couple of pictures. So that's the location. The, the rec center will have a couple of different swimming and aquatic components. Um, first will be, uh, we'll talk about the outdoor. You can see in the top right image, the, it'll have kind of a fun lazy river and, and zero depth component with some slides, and then it will have a secondary, uh, outside pool that we can use for different programming and opportunities there. A lot of deck space with access to the outdoor pool from, uh, outside of the rec center. So people can just come to the outdoor swimming pool if they want to. I believe that's how you're setting that up, right Dale, for your operations? We'll also have a couple of indoor elements on the top right. I said top right before, I meant top left, uh, for the outdoor stuff. Top right is, uh, the indoor stuff, uh, for the kids, uh, with some play elements of zero depth, as well as kind of in the back, you can see that little, uh, log cabin-y thing. Uh, that'll be a cliff you can jump off of. I think it's going to be 30 or 40 feet. I didn't get any eyes, nobody looked up. I think I felt a few from the back here, but no, it won't be that high. But it'll be fun for the kids to jump off of and, and some neat elements there. And then we have some flat water or, or swimming pools. You can see in the bottom left that, uh, there will be lanes for, uh, swim teams. We anticipate, uh, school district swim teams being able to swim here, practice here. And then you can see the bleachers kind of in the back there where we'll be able, able to have a lot of great meets, uh, region meets, even some state tournaments. And we anticipate some other competitions that will probably want to rent this for their competitions too, outside of the, just the high school, uh, swimming. So that gives you a brief look at, at some of the aquatic elements of the rec center. There will also be a lot of, uh, space for different fitness opportunities, a track. You can see in that top image, that gray and red, uh, material, that's actually, those are lanes uh, that circumnavigate the, the second floor. Uh, there's a really cool element to the track. At some point you'll be able to go up and down, so you'll get some incline and some decline if you want. You can also skip that and just stay level, but it'll provide some variation for you to walk, which is especially helpful, I think, uh, as we're coming out of winter, you know, it's great now, but a couple of months ago, it was pretty tough for people to be able to walk outside. to be able to walk outside. So this will give our residents the ability to walk indoors. You can see images of different workout apparatus, basketball court in the bottom right. You can see some indoor pickleball courts. That indoor pickleball court is actually a multi-use surface that will serve a lot of purposes, but one of which we can put down some nets and play some indoor pickleball. The rec center will also have a senior and senior center, community center amenities, most of which you already have, you know about if you go to the rec center today. And here are some images of the entry on the top right, and then of kind of that great space where we have meals, we'll have meals and different activities with a stage there. There will be other activities not shown in these images, but it'll be a great element for the seniors. I think probably most special for them is quick access to the rec center itself. There will be a separate entrance for the senior center, but they'll be able to just walk right from the senior center into the rec center and go and use those elements. And I think pretty quickly in the development and use of this facility, those seniors will find that there are wonderful times where they will have access to the facility much to themselves. Other times where they probably won't want to go, because there will be a lot of people, but there will be times that will be wonderful and ideal for them, and we really are excited about the multi-use function of the facility. This image, these images rather are some fairly recent images of the construction. You can see in the big image at the center that walls are starting to go vertical. Those are elements of the pumps and the systems for the swimming pools. Those go pretty deep, and that was the first element to be constructed. We have footings and foundations that have also been dug, and we'll start to see some vertical work happen more and more as we continue on the next even few weeks. All right, enough of those images, timeline. We'll start to see that vertical element now. Footings and foundations will be completed here in the next few weeks, and then in May we'll see structural steel start. And by September, the masonry and steel will be completed, and they'll start to roof it. And then, once the roof is on, then they'll start the indoor elements of this. And then a lot of work will happen that few people will see, because it will all be behind those walls. And then, if everything works right, and we've constructed a couple of things in COVID, so we know that strange things can still happen, boy, we sure hope that strange things stop happening. But if everything continues on as it is, we expect to have the pools completed by late summer and the structure completed by September. Even though the pools are completed by August, we probably won't open them, but we will be using them, testing them, getting them ready, and then look for an opening in the latter part of September or October. For now, why don't we just call it fall of two thousand twenty-five? All right, one question we often get, maybe the loudest question that we do hear is, why wasn't this on the ballot? I think we talked about this a good deal with the truth and taxation hearing in August, and I think it's a great question to ask, great question to answer. And this is one of those questions that sometimes can be frustrating for people as they hear it and don't necessarily understand the nature of questions that are asked on ballots. But probably the simplest way to answer this question is, the ballot question in two thousand fifteen was about a funding mechanism. And in fact, the language from that ballot was something like this, shall the city council be authorized to issue general obligation bonds for the purpose of paying all of the costs of constructing a new life center? And so the ballot question really was only about a general obligation bond and not necessarily on the project itself. And that can be, as I mentioned, maybe something that's frustrating people, and I totally understand that. But the question was about the general obligation bond. And the reason that we have to put a general obligation, we have to put a general obligation bond on the ballot, that is required by law, because a general obligation bond leverages property tax as the collateral for the bond. When you and I buy a house, the home is the collateral. When you and I buy a car, the car is the collateral. When we bond for something and we use a general obligation bond, actually, property taxes are the collateral. And so the residents are giving the permission for that to be put up as the collateral, not the building. And most of the times, we think, well, the building is the collateral, because that's the world that we live in, we understand the most, right, with our homes. But with a GO bond, a general obligation bond, that is all about property tax. So GO bonds, general obligation bonds must be voted on by the public. Cities can do general obligation bonds, school districts, and so you see those potentially on ballots for cities and schools. A sales tax bond is not collateralized by property tax. It is collateralized by sales tax. What that means is that if we fail to make the bond, they, the creditors, have the ability to come in and grab our sales tax. Of course, we don't plan on defaulting on a general obligation bond or on a sales tax bond, but that's the collateral for this bond, is the sales tax. And because the sales tax is, it does not require a vote, then that's why it's not on the ballot. As we mentioned in the truth and taxation hearing in two thousand twenty-two, in August of twenty-two, we estimated that there would be about forty percent of the debt that would be paid for with property taxes. At that time, you, as a council, voted to adjust property taxes, and that happened a year and a half ago in the property tax amounts from two thousand and twenty-two. Enough on that one. This is a look at what we presented in that presentation. That generally shows where the funds would come from to pay for the bond of the rec center. About forty percent coming from RAP tax, that's sales tax, about forty percent coming from property tax, and then about ten percent coming from the sales tax specifically that we receive. So RAP tax is a sales tax, but it's a separate fund that must be used for recreation arts or parks interests. A small portion of it will come from impact fees. We would love to use more impact fees for this, but we can only use impact fees for things that currently exist and are growing. Let me explain. We don't have a rec center today. We've never had a rec center today, so we cannot use impact fees to build a rec center for the first time. If we were going to build a second rec center, which we're not proposing to do, but if we were to build a second rec center, we could use impact fees to pay for that. But we cannot use impact fees to pay for the first thing that we have. Case in point, we didn't have pickleball courts in two thousand eighteen, so we couldn't use impact fees to build the first eight pickleball courts. But we knew that we were going to grow, and we took advantage of building and economies, so we built eight pickleball courts without impact fees, and then we built eight more with growth. And I think we needed those right away. But with this, we had a pool. We're comfortable and confident that we can use, we had a pool, and we're going to have more pools. So there is an element of impact fees that we can use, because we're now having more pools, and so that's why it's there in a small amount, not in the large amount. And some people might think, well, I would rather you use more impact fees. We will use as much impact fee as we can, but are confident that we cannot use as much as some may like. Another question that we hear is, the project's already started, why are you waiting until now to bond? And I think this is a great question, and the timing certainly can cause people to scratch their heads. In order to meet project deadlines, we have moved as quickly as we can, but through the process, there were a few things that needed to happen. First of all, we needed to finalize the design, and that design was finalized in the fall. We needed to secure the location and make sure that all of the properties were acquired. Then, and I'll show a slide in a second about interest savings, so I'll hold comments about that. And then lastly, we needed to finalize construction costs. And we had that final GMP, that final guaranteed maximum price that you awarded in December just a few months ago. So timing was an issue and making sure that we could do everything. But probably for me, one of the greatest reasons why we've waited, this is a chart of interest rates, and as we've watched interest rates go up and down, you know, if we could have nailed the right time, it would have been to bond for anything and everything in two thousand twenty-one. That's slightly off the chart here, but it's the stuff that's way low. As interest rates have gone up for everybody, they've gone up for us as well. And so we've been watching the interest rates go up and down, and we know that they have plateaued right now, and we're watching, and as they start to dip downward, we'll be poised to issue this debt. All right. Projected terms of the bond. Although we have a parameters resolution that says sixty-five million, and that was a number you mentioned today, the parameters resolution gives interest rates and all of that stuff. It's meant to be a guide that allows for the bonding market to do what we need it to do. But in maybe layman's terms, in language that you and I, we use every day in how we buy our houses or buy our cars, let's maybe speak that way. The true interest cost, or you and I might describe that simply as the interest rate. It's not quite, but what you and I would call the interest rate will be somewhere between three and a half to four percent. Construction proceeds, what we will receive from the bond will be about sixty-one million five hundred thousand. And we would expect to close somewhere in the middle to late April, but with the authority that you've given us, we'll work with our financial advisors to watch that interest rate, and if we see that interest rates are falling and there's reason to wait, every basis point that it comes down is savings. So we would continue to watch that be and pull the trigger at the best time that we can. Certainly, if we see interest rates are going up, we'll pull the trigger faster, because we don't want to have that rate go up. So those are the terms of what we're really talking about doing with this bond. Any questions that you've heard that maybe I can answer possibly before we go to the public hearing?
I'll ask one real quick. Why, will you just explain why we're asking for sixty-five million then, if the construction cost is sixty-one five?
So we're only asking for sixty-one five.
Oh, okay.
But the resolution that you approved said sixty-five. Yeah, it gives us windows, and you always want to give yourself, you know, a little bit of room as you're going through things, but even though the resolution says sixty-five, we're going to, yeah, the bond will be sixty-one point five.
Okay, and I think the other things I see on social media a lot, if you can address this, Seth, is the things that we had to do, like purchase homes and land prior to this, does this cover any of that, or did we use savings prior to that? Will you go over that?
Yeah, we used other project funds that we had saved and whatnot to do all of that. So this is all construction cost. We've actually been spending budgeted funds that we have budgeted as well up until about this time already anyway. So those lands, those properties were purchased through negotiations with the homeowners. I've heard at a time or two, people talking about it being taken, that nothing was taken, they were negotiated sales. And, yeah, we used funds that the city had put aside and set for that purpose, maybe over the last previous two fiscal years, FY twenty-two and three, as well as some, I guess, in twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
Go ahead. So the project's underway, saw the pictures, footings in the ground. We've used some money on construction. Is the sixty-one five, does that pay back the funds that we've used on the construction?
Not really. There might be, you know, depending on when the money gets here and how that, it'll just go into the construction fund. Right now, we're just spending money in the construction fund. There are not any money taken from this place or that place. It's what we've put into the construction fund, and so it'll just go right into that construction fund.
Okay, so I guess an easier question then is, let's say we spent ten million, which I don't know that we have, on construction. We put sixty-one million in there, it's not seventy-one million dollars for the construction, it's still sixty-one million dollars.
Yeah, the construction.
It just stays in the construction fund, and we use it for another project in the future?
No, the GMP.
Yeah, maybe that was a better question. What was the GMP?
Yeah, the GMP for the construction, I think, was around seventy-one, seventy-two. And so, yeah, this is just the amount that we're bonding for, very similar to a down payment, right? When you buy your house, you buy it for four hundred thousand, but you only get a loan for three hundred and fifty.
Okay. I think one of the biggest questions I get is, so much has changed from when we started this process today, and some of that is the total construction cost, right? I think when in, I think, Mike, you announced in two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, March.
That we were going to start moving forward with this, and we progressed all the way, and it was sixty-five million dollars was the sort of the top end. We're at seventy-one now, and that's been two years, so I can see just inflation grew that number. So that's something that's changed, and that's why this is a little bit, while it's still within the parameters that we talked about in twenty-two in terms of a bond, the total cost of the project is slightly higher.
Yes, and I really appreciated from the UDOT presentation, something that they had on that slide, they showed the costs of different interchanges, and you might remember, you saw one one sixty-five, one ninety-five, and one, I think, two twenty. But up in the heading, it said in today's dollars. And that is a real factor as you look at something that spans a couple of years. If you could lock in the prices and everything right now, it would be better, but you can't. And so, yeah, I think you look at that in two thousand twenty-two, and you say, in two thousand twenty-two dollars, that's what it was, and apply construction inflation, which I think last year was fifteen percent, which is, it's a crazy number, it's an unusual number, but it's the real number that we dealt with. So, yeah.
So back in two thousand twenty-two, when we made the decision to raise property tax, to fund some of this, not all of this, the percentages you showed were the percentages we talked about then, they have not changed. The funding sources are still the same, the percentages are still the same. So this isn't, again, we're not using full property tax to fund this.
Yeah, and when we issued, when we set up the payment structure back in two thousand twenty-two, we used some generous estimates, we used some generous interest rates. We're coming in a little bit higher on the interest rate and a little bit lower on the bond amount. We used a sixty to sixty-five, so being conservative, we targeted that sixty-five amount, and we went, we thought we were crazy, and we were using interest rates from three to three and a half. And so we're going to be a little bit above that. So we were a little bit low in how we estimate our interest rates, but we were a little bit high on the dollar amount. So it comes out still within our target.
And at that time, were we talking a twenty-five-year note? I can't remember. We were. Okay, so that's consistent as well.
Yeah, there is a provision, and we fully intend to exercise the provision that by year ten, we can, in layman's terms, we can refinance that bond, and we would look to shorten it to a ten-year note at that point. We would be looking in ten years for interest rates to be lower and be able to take that savings and lower the overall cost and perhaps shorten the timeline.
Thanks.
Cool, a couple of questions I have written down is, in August two thousand twenty-two, right, when they did the truth and taxation, we had a public hearing, or the council at the time had a public hearing. Why do we have to do a public hearing now?
So that was a public hearing about the tax increase, and that was when the council kind of set everything in motion, we're doing this. And we started the design in earnest and hired the contractors. This is a public hearing about the debt issuance and only about that.
I just had to receive that question once. And then the other question that I have, and I know Jordan has talked about this recently, so I don't know if it's him or you that would best answer this, is, as we talk about bonds, why do we use bonds or debt to pay for the infrastructure and not save the money for those?
Oh, I love that question. Do you want to take it, though, Jordan? He's got a bright green shirt on, so we'll let him. We'll let the spotlight hit Jordan.
It is March. The reason to issue debt rather than saving, using cash on hand, when you use cash on hand, you have to save up. In order to save up for sixty-five million dollars, you'd be saving up for years. She'd be punishing the past generation for a project that's going to benefit the future generation, where when you issue debt, you're able to have those that benefit from the project over the next three decades pay for the project.
So as we just mentioned a moment ago, construction costs last year went up fifteen percent. So if, two years ago, the project, we estimated it would be between fifty-five, or let's say around fifty-five to sixty million dollars, but we save, you know, a couple of million dollars every year, it would probably take us twenty years to save that. We would need to save a hundred million dollars. And if you live in town today and your money's going towards that savings, you're not using it. But twenty years later, when you build it, the people that move in the twenty-first year, they're not paying anything for it, and they're the ones taking advantage of it. And so this allows us to do something and let us that are using it be the ones that pay for it.
Can I follow? Sorry.
Okay.
Just to follow up, oh, go.
No, 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 it's follow-up, go ahead.
Just to follow up on that, though, Jesse, I mean, you, not only do you get to use the 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 thing sooner, and the generation that's paying for it gets to use it, it's far more cost effective, right? I mean, you're, how do you, you would still need to pass the property tax increase so that you could collect the additional money to pay for it in some future date. But now you're collecting it for thirty-plus years. It goes from sixty, seventy million to a hundred and forty million, and you're never, well, how do you catch up? Right? It's just.
Target you've never had.
Yeah. Sorry.
Oh, that's great. One question that I imagine residents will have about this is, in regards to my property taxes increasing, when, when does that start? And then when does it end? And I know I've kind of touched indirectly about this a little bit tonight, but is is it twenty-five years? I just think that's something that maybe you could talk about as far as how that affects them and when. Yeah, that that went into effect with the property tax year twenty twenty-two. So with what residents would have paid that tax year with, let's say, their November tax bill, that's when that rate started. This debt will be retired at, at the moment, right? That twenty-five years from to, from now. And so you could conceivably pull that off in twenty-five years. If you, if we were able to refinance or refund that debt inside that ten-year window, then that might change. That is something that that council will be able to do twenty-five years from now. Or I guess if if the circumstances change and they want to adjust it later, or sooner they could, but that would be a function of the finances of the city, you know, at some future date.
I have another thought, if you can share it or articulate it better than me. We raised property taxes approximately four dollars and ninety cents on average per home. Let's say right now, there's twelve thousand residents in Spanish Fork, and let's say in two years, there's thirteen thousand residents. Will everyone still be paying the four dollars and ninety cents? Or will you explain how that actually would take your monthly property tax down?
Yeah, that's a tricky.
Homes, not residents.
Did I say residents?
Well, you probably meant residency.
I meant homes. Well, homes to pay your property tax on.
The property tax bill won't probably go down because new homes move in. The rate will be what the rate is, and that new home will pay it. But the way we've structured this, we're, we're going to use some future property tax from those residents to pay some future portions of this. So it allows for them to buy in a little bit more. And these, the the residents that are here now won't, won't be paying the four ninety today. And those guys, when they move in ten years from now, the the rate might look like it's three dollars and eighty cents inside of that blended rate. That's really confusing. I'm not helping answer the question at all.
Okay.
The rate probably won't be going down with what they pay.
It'll stay the same.
It will probably stay the same, yeah, for everybody. Let me rephrase. The rate probably will go down. The amount they're paying will probably stay the same. That's the way that truth and taxation and property tax laws work.
Okay.
That was a terrible answer. Sorry.
I just.
I wish property taxes was a lot less confusing, but it's really.
You might have the chance to redeem yourself after the public hearing.
We'll let Jordan.
Yeah, Jordan can redeem you. A couple of questions before I entertain the motion to go into public hearing that I appreciate those good questions that we've all been asked by by residents from the city. GMP, speak more to that. That's a scary figure that that we talk about, UDOT and all those big numbers. And this is a big number because nobody builds a seventy million dollar house in Spanish Fork. It's hard for us to contemplate when we compare it to a home. We're just, we're trying to finance hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of home debt, not seventy million. But the guaranteed maximum price of a builder that has built large structures all over the world and everything else that's on this project gives us a guaranteed maximum price that says, this is what we can get materials for, labor for. That's why we're willing to give you that price. Is that correct?
You did a great job. Yeah.
You don't want to add to that at all?
I, the only thing I'll add is, that does include two million of contingencies. So the likelihood of it being that amount probably, probably won't be. There'll be somebody that does come down because we won't, we usually don't spend all of the contingency, but we have it there in case we need it. But yeah, that that is, the guaranteed maximum price is a good thing. It it provides for flexibility. The contractor can do what they want, or they can exercise the control that they need. Our contractor spent a lot of time making sure that they reviewed everything, looked under every cushion and every every bid amount. They spent, I want to say it was two or three months, making sure that they had interacted with every contractor subcontractor that they were looking at to get it right. And we had done a lot of value engineering through the architectural process. When we got the first set of bids, it revealed other areas that we thought we could do some value engineering still. And so that two or three-month window that, from when we got original bids to when we finalized that guaranteed maximum price, that GMP, we were able to do some good work with that, the contractor as well. So that's a good, it's a good number, and and it's somewhat inflation-proof during the eighteen to twenty-two months or so of the of the construction.
Acronyms are tough to always pick up on the GMP side of it. I guess the other acronym.
UI.
Yeah, whatever that, that's an acronym?
Single Point Urban Interface.
Oh.
Interchange, not interface, interchange.
There you go. I thought you were making it up.
We did.
The other acronym that you've talked about tonight, we've talked about for years in Spanish Fork, is the RAP tax. The, the, the All Abilities Park has been discussed tonight. Other facilities that you see around town, the RAP tax that was on the ballot two thousand.
I want to say eighteen-ish?
Eighteen, something like that is maybe what we're going into. So it's on the ballot for residents to vote on. It was voted and 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 voted in favor of to have the additional sales tax revenue of one penny on every ten dollars on your sales tax bill, on not all items, but certain items, that that is revenue that comes into Spanish Fork, stands for recreation, arts, and parks. So that tax you can only spend on recreation, arts, and parks. And so I appreciate, Seth, the detail of, well, this, you know, this bond isn't on the ballot. No, revenue bonds aren't typically on the ballot. General obligation bonds are, revenue bonds aren't. But the engagement with the public of asking about RAP tax, and hey, this can only go to recreation, arts, and parks, is a tax that you've already been paying for now, eight, so, so, it's going on, what, seven, six, seven years? The visitors to Spanish Fork have been paying for it, too. When you talk to the businesses in town that generate sales tax, Kathleen can speak to this. She works with them in the Chamber of Commerce. But when we get those figures, it's about a sixty, forty split.
Seventy, thirty.
We're going up?
See, at least sixty-five now. Yeah. Yeah.
So so seventy percent of your sales tax revenue we collect in Spanish Fork is from people that don't live in eight, four, six, six, zero. So think about all the discussion we've had of traffic tonight, of, hey, it's tough. Yeah, it is. It's a lot of people visiting your restaurants, your car dealerships, your Costcos, everywhere else that are facilitating some of the things you can do. I I told, I've told people this before, but I, I don't think I was quite elected when we used to celebrate a million dollars a year in sales tax revenue in Spanish Fork. The difference from now of what you collect
Yeah.
is over a million dollars a month in sales tax revenue.
Yeah, and I think it's, that's a great point, Mayor. If you look at this rough outline of of funding sources, property tax, of course, comes from us as residents. RAP tax is a sales tax, so seventy-ish, seventy-ish percent of that forty percent will come from nonresidents. And then sales tax, that same thing is, that same split exists, right? So seventy percent. So adding those two, roughly seventy percent of fifty percent will be paid for by nonresidents, which is a significantly different proposal than what we were looking back at in twenty fifteen, where it was all on the the property tax then. And that was something that we talked about. We got a lot of feedback after that election. We, we listened everywhere we could to great, great notes and had wonderful conversations with residents about how they voted, why they voted. And having diversified structures for paying for it was one of them. But can you use sales tax? And is there any way to have those from outside help? And this is a, this is a great way that we've been able to structure it now with with that RAP tax. And probably just as important is that this isn't using all of the RAP tax money. You've already set a standard of what you're using RAP tax for, replacing playgrounds. You, you have a number of grants. You spend about a hundred thousand dollars a year doing internal art grants, as well as some external grants to groups that qualify. And that will continue, and and it has the ability to grow inside of that fund as well. So this doesn't take away from any of those things that you've already been doing and have set a precedence that you want to keep doing.
Two more questions, and maybe they'll be asked, too. But but they can be re-asked if they need to be. The ONM has always been a, a discussion about this, too. No, that's probably what has given Dale gray hair. I think he had dark hair before this. But ONM on all the facilities in, in, inside the city, ONM on this facility is something, right? ONM on a, on a recreation center is certainly a big number. I guess, and this was talked about again when we were talking about originally proposing to raise taxes for this purpose a couple of years ago, the ONM of just roughly, let's take the senior center and the pool together. The pool, if you were to just classify it as how much we collect in pool fees to go to our old pool, and Jordan maybe has these more exact figures, but I remember the round numbers being, hey, every year that you open that and collect fees for people to come in, and they can swim for four months, because that's the summer months, still, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars at least shy after the repairs you have to do, after the lifeguards you have to pay, after everything you got to do, the chlorine, whatever, to make that pool function. The same, if you're looking at the senior center. Senior Center is not a, a, a financial venture for a community. It's not for ours. Kevin, you're not even here to speak to it. I hope you're watching this. That's his, that's his place as assignment of, as a councilman. But the the senior center is not, we don't charge enough money for the lunches, the dinners, the, 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 the get-togethers and everything else that's done with the senior center is about a hundred and fifty thousand shy. No, I'm low there. So more. Okay, a couple hundred?
Three hundred.
Three hundred. So three hundred shy of covering itself there. So when people start talking about deficit with, with what the rec center is going to be, whatnot, you know, those numbers are still being fleshed out and everything. You don't know until it's open and and running and going. But those projections that we've obviously run, just realize, you, you have been for years, for as long as you had a pool, twenty-something years, and as long as you've had a senior center, that's a hundred years. I don't know how long.
Not that long.
It's a long time. You've been paying.
Yep.
Those, those, those don't make enough money to pay for their services. It's our taxpayers covering it. We project that same subsidy, if you will. That's not the right word. But we project that same thing to kind of facilitate going forward in the recreation center.
Yeah, that, I, we do, but we also don't. Our plan includes it paying for itself.
Sure.
And and the rate structures that we're looking at, and the operation, and frankly, growing into some of the operations. So you don't do everything all at once, but you kind of grow into some, some of the elements. So when you can afford to do it, you do it. But yeah, the senior center today has a budget of about three hundred and twenty, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Last year, they spent about three hundred and twenty. And they bring in about twenty thousand dollars in revenue. It's not a profit center. And it's not why we do it, and we're happy that we do it. So this is by no means a conversation about, about, you know, the money that we're spending there. But yeah, it's a, it brings in about two hundred, or twenty thousand dollars in revenue and has a budget of about three hundred and fifty. So.
I appreciate those numbers in a little bit of detail. The last question, taking on this amount of debt, we have, we have other debt that we've spoken of here, of sewer treatment plant, the transfer station portion of, of what our expenses are, not necessarily the same kind of debt or whatever we share in with, with cities and that stuff. But we've got a lot of city projects going on. We've, we've covered this before, but adding this amount of bond proceeds to the city, does that put us in financial peril? Does that downgrade our rating? Are we putting ourselves at risk of a city?
No. Taking on debt is a serious issue and is something you always do carefully and and with with excellent care, consideration, and due process. Most of the debt that we have is associated with different utilities, and each of those has their own bank account. They have their own revenue source. The sewer bond is in the sewer fund, and the sewer rate covers that. This is general fund debt, and it will be in the general fund. We only have, we only have one other bond out, a large bond out with the, the Justice Center that'll come off in twenty twenty-seven. We have a couple of interfund loans that we've used some money that the general fund is paying back to some of those enterprise funds on a shorter term, but, and those are pretty small. But, but this, this general fund debt, you've got the structure in place. You've set aside the revenue for it, and you have a good rating. Our, we actually just got our rating today. The city's got a double-A rating. As a small city of forty-five thousand people, double-A is a great rating. The state of Utah has a triple-A rating. Their budget's, you know, twenty billion, different, different category than us. So we're really happy with the rating that we got. A rating is very much like a credit score for a city. And Jonathan Ward from Zions Bank is here somewhere. You want him to speak on the rating, he could certainly do that. But yeah, we got that today. And we're pleased that we got a double-A. Candidly, we were hoping for a double-A plus. But we'll probably get upgraded to a double-A plus sometime in the, the tenure of this bond.
We'll blame Jordan for not being double-A plus.
No, we're, double-A is great, and we've been double-A, and we're still double-A.
Okay. Perfect. Any more questions for Seth before we entertain a motion to go into public hearing for this item? Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing for item A. I move. Motion made by Councilwoman Beck.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Carden to go into public hearing. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Perfect. We're in a public hearing. Thank you, Nick. If, if we can try to keep to that clock so we can be respectful of time, that would be great. I'll try to give you a notice. Again, it won't, it won't beep at us. But please, come up and speak to, to this item on the agenda of, of the issuance of sales tax revenue bonds. When you do, make sure to state your name for Tara so she gets, gets you in the minutes. It's a race.
My name's Roger Wood, and I, I'm here speaking on behalf of many of the citizens in my neighborhood. They ask questions. And first, I want to say I'm not against this project. As a senior citizen, I appreciate the, what's going to go into the senior center. And I, I plan to enjoy the facilities of the, of the new rec center. So I appreciate that it's being done. But I have people that talk to me, and they ask me in my neighborhood. We voted on this already. We voted it down, and they did it anyway. You know what? We've all talked about that. We know that's not exactly the case, but that's what I keep hearing. We voted it down. They did it anyway. They're going to do it again. And I have no doubt this bond's going to go through. But I, I want people to understand the meaning of the word bond. Take out the word bond and substitute the word debt, as, as was just explained to us. We have a good credit score, if you will, or a credit rating in Spanish Fork. I want to be sure that my children and grandchildren enjoy that same good rating. We have a term in automobile ownership called total cost of ownership. And when a family's thinking about taking on a debt to buy an automobile, or a, or a toy, or a boat, or what have you, they have to consider the total cost of ownership. And boat owners can tell you that a boat is the worst liability that a family can incur because of the cost of owning the boat. Well, we're going to be, Mayor, you're asking all the right questions. I hear you asking pointed, good questions. And so I would ask you and the council, Councilwoman Beck, I've heard the same concerns from you. What's this boat going to cost in future dollars? And somebody with their laptops here probably has, can calculate the future value of a dollar for me. But I can, I know it's big. I, I can't stop progress. And I like to say, I often like to stick up my foot and trip it, though, because I, I think we should take time to think. And so I hope during this public hearing that we will seriously consider the cost of incurring this kind of debt as a city. And no, it's not going to, it's not going to break anybody in the city. But these things have effects. I always call them unintended consequences. And there will be. I hope the project works well. And I appreciate your service, Mayor, City Council, and, and, and you planners and, and financial experts. I appreciate you. And our city appreciates you. And we look to you for sound guidance in this matter. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, Roger.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Rice Camp. Two quick side notes. Number one, I recommend next time you send a paper saying there's a public hearing at six o'clock, that you do the public hearing part at six o'clock and not seven forty-five to start the, the part that you're all invited for, because there's a lot of people here. And I didn't expect a two-hour city council meeting first, or else I wouldn't have come at six o'clock when it said I was supposed to be here. Second, a quick note on the person who, maybe it was Dave, maybe not, who, who did a little survey. There was this thing presented that people feel like that the prices are too high for property in Spanish Fork, and somehow that attributes to people wanting to build high density because they're trying to solve that problem. I, you know, high density has to be discussed, but everybody feels like everywhere. You know, high density has to be discussed, but everybody feels like everywhere prices have gone up for housing in, in Utah. And I don't feel like you can say, oh, just because people feel like the, the prices have gone up, that that's the case. Now specifically about the, the rec center. Understanding what you've said, that, that we didn't vote whether or not it was a rec center a number of years ago, I thought at the time we did. All of my neighbors thought at the time we did. I, we were, you know, I adamantly talked with all of my neighbors. We had really strong opinions. My neighbors had strong opinions. There was a lot of good debate and discussion and it lost. And, and most everybody thought, oh, we're not gonna build a rec center. When you announced and I heard that we were building a rec center still, because I don't follow city politics probably as close as I should, I was really surprised. I had to ask a member of the city council, how are we building a rec center? We voted against that. And they said, oh, no, it's, it's about a bond for a rec center. So now that there's another bond for the rec center and it's like, oh, well, it's not property taxes that this bond is, but we have already raised our property taxes. It's a bond against property taxes, but we still have property taxes paying for it. I, I just have to tell you, as a citizen of, of Spanish Fork, there's a bit of bait and switch going on. When everybody feels like they voted on something and it didn't pass and then you guys continue to do it, it makes it feel like there's a bait and switch. And I know that because you're here in and out, day, day in, day out, you may not feel that way, but I would have preferred and still prefer that you like stopped the project and ask the citizens if they want this, because I don't know the feedback we're getting that says, yes, we wanna, we wanna spend our money here. I'm not totally opposed to the idea. I have people in family, you know, and neighbors who are totally opposed to it. I have some who are 100% for it. I just don't know if the city's appetite is there and I, I do feel like there's been a bit of a bait and switch here, that you may not feel because you feel like you know what the vote was about, whereas most people don't. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's my turn. My name is Fay Nottingham and I just recently moved back here to Utah after being away for 35 years. I grew up in Orem and left at a very young age. And I have been living in Texas for 35 years. To come back home to Utah, to these insane prices, cost of living, property taxes and everything that goes with that. I have family members that like to go ski out at some pretty nice resorts, Wyoming, Colorado, all of that. And you hear about the cost of living in those areas that have outmatched those residents. They can no longer afford to live where they grew up. I'm in the same sandwich generation now. I have elderly parents that are staying at home or caring for them. I have one son that has moved back home with me. I also have the privilege of having my grandson with, with me on weekends, which is a great thing. It surely is. He's in his 30s and he's making some good money. He can't get out on his own. And this is part of, you know, the survey that, you know, we were looking at. That's a big concern. And I like the former gentleman. I feel like it's a bait and switch. I thought I was coming to a, a public hearing that was going to be more like the one that was held several years ago. Everybody that I have spoken to about this hearing is under the same understanding. So when I hear words and an explanation that we are not gonna be paying for this through our property taxes or our sales tax, and then we have a slide that explains that we really are, this is all coming out. There's always unintended consequences in my experience, but I feel like there could be a little more transparency with some of these hearings. Cause I feel like this is, and again, you know, here we are, it's 8:30. We're barely getting down to business for what I thought was gonna be at six o'clock. So many areas of concern. I do have to say, it's great being back in Utah County. There's just so many, so many people in my neighborhood that have stopped by to say hello and thank you for working on your yard. And just, you know, it's like, it's great, great to have new neighbors. So, you know, it's like, I think it's a credit to y'all. And so anyway, I, I have said my piece and I thank you for your time. And, you know, it's great to be back. It really is. There are some current concerns there and I truly am gonna be much more involved from here on out. Thank you.
Welcome back. Thank you.
Thank you, Fay.
My name is Amber Dawn Mock. First and foremost, I want to get it out there, like I did the referendum and everything. I do support a rec center. My family's gonna use it. I love it. I just feel like it needs to be done responsibly. I feel like it's kind of more of a want in a time where inflation, it's hard for people to afford really the necessities. I, I just kind of want to bring up some, a couple of questions that I have. So 10% is funded by sales tax. In your, the fiscal 2024 budget, you guys mentioned that sales tax is trending downward. Last five months, like let's see, in 2021, it was 20%. 2022 is 15%. So far, it's only, it's down to 8%. Is there a safeguard in place for that downturn for funding wise? And the same, obviously rap tax also comes from sales tax and that's 40% funded, you know, for the rec center. That's a big chunk. Like, so if sales tax goes down, if rap tax goes down, is there safeguards in place to cover that money, that spending? I also have a question. So rap tax is also up for vote again in 2028. What if by chance it doesn't pass again? Are there safeguards in place to cover that additional 40% if that doesn't pass in 2028? That guaranteed maximum price of just shy of $71 million or whatever you guys released in December. Is that a contracted price? Like that's all said and done, that's even if it costs more, like that's just what we're contracted to pay? Or is it just a blank check? And maybe it was better just to like email all these questions. You guys can answer them later, but just kind of wanted to get it out there. But I appreciate your time and all the efforts you guys do. It's, I'm sure it's not an easy job to run our city, but I appreciate you guys for doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber Dawn.
My name is Paul Snyder, owner of Snyder Masonry. I have found in 50 years of contracting that when it's a cost plus job, you always pay more than if it's a hard bid. Now you got prices for one, from one general contractor. Is that correct? Westland Construction.
We can speak to more of that, but yeah, they're, they're subcontractors. They do, they do the work, but.
Yes, but it's all a team. How come I wasn't invited to bid on this job even though I am retired? Why wasn't I or IMS Masonry? Why is it that the majority of jobs in Spanish Fork is built under a cost plus by Westland Construction? They're a good company. I did work with Houghtons when they were plasterers. But I think it's inappropriate not to invite other general contractors. It's the same way with the high schools. Spanish Fork, Payson and Springville. They get a team and they like that because it works well for them financially, everyone. When I had an opportunity to get in on a cost plus, it was because I was a reputable contractor and they knew the work that I did. And so yes, you can get it done for that, from that team. But I don't think it's fair for others that could work on that and participate in billing. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Thank you.
Good evening. Jonathan Baird for the record. Five points. First of all, I take umbrage with the notion that the citizens didn't know what they were voting on. We knew exactly what we were voting on and we knew what the real speak was behind the language. My vote, my neighborhood clearly voted against a rec center and they clearly voted against debt. Point number two. Currently in the fiscal year budget, you list 2.2 roughly million dollars in debt and interest. You list approximately $38 million in revenue. That represents about 6% of the budget. In fiscal year 2020, it was listed 1.69 plus million dollars in debt against a revenue of 28.5 million dollars in revenue. Again, about 6%. If we take today's, if you look at the total amount of debt in terms of numbers, we went, we increased about 33% in that same time period. Now, if you look at our current budget, if we say we're just gonna keep that steady, and I know that those things will change, but add on top of this what we are currently proposing, and I include with this the money that is being committed toward the, the water treatment plant. We can put it in all the fancy columns you want, but the money still comes from us. So with that being said then, if you look at a simple amortization schedule, we're looking potentially at $3.9 million a year in debt and interest for the rec center, give or take. We're looking at $3.2 million in debt and interest for the water treatment plant, which puts us somewhere north of $7 million on top of the 2.2 million dollars we are currently budgeted for. And again, those things change, but we're looking at, at something that goes from 6% of total revenues to 24%, unless we've got a magic, you know, increase in, in revenue that I don't know about, other than the potential for tax. Because when we say bonded, we're saying it's us. Come hell or high water, we will repay you. So all due respect, a bond rating is great. It means we can get a loan, but what it means to investors, they lick their chops and say, I'm gonna get money from them. That's what it means to me as a citizen, which is great if we want it. Point number four. Last year, I estimate our, our household budget went about $2,000 towards sales taxes. This is where we do our shopping. So this absolutely is a tax increase for my family at the worst possible time. Last point. This has been a divisive issue. It has drawn, driven a wedge between the community online and in other conversations in the neighborhood. Your actions on this have pushed that wedge deeper. I offer what could be an olive branch and a solution to the community. The bumper sticker, if you want it, because this is also politics, flush the toilets before you fill the pool. Pay for the water treatment plant first. Then.
Let me stop you real quick.
Then go ahead and do the rec center.
We'll pause you real quick. I, I should have, I should have mentioned this before the public hearing, but in Spanish Fork, there could be differences of opinions up here. And so we respect everyone's opinions on a side of, on a side of an issue, on not side of an issue. And so applauding makes somebody think, who's all against me in this room? Who's all for me in this room? So maybe I won't get up and speak my mind. And the last thing we want is somebody to sit here all night and spend this night with us, which I can agree with what's been said. You've put in considerable time here and now maybe somebody thinks, I won't get up because too many people clapped. We don't do it in Spanish, so sit on your hands if you need to. But you can nod your head. We can say yes, everything else, but we won't be clapping. We want to hear from everybody in Spanish Fork and in this room. Thank you.
May I reiterate my point? You spoke over me.
Please, John. Yes.
Just do things sequentially, not concurrently. We need toilet flushing more than we need a pool, so that goes first. Let's make sure that that's taken care of and then let's do the rec center. I'm personally against it, but I'm fine if we do it that way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Sorry, you have to hear from me again. Emily Peterson. So I'm just seeking to understand and if I have a question, then maybe other people have a question. But maybe some people are confused, but the bond has already been decided. That was decided in 2022, right? We already decided on that. Tonight is just you guys approving that it's gonna be the collateral and the sales, the collateral will be the sales tax. We already decided the bond. And we, I was one of the sponsors of the referendum to stop the rec center. So we gave you a chance to sign it and have your voice be heard, but people chose not to. So we have it. Maybe, maybe I'm not understanding the process correctly, but tonight, it's already been decided. Tonight is just the way you're approving the sales tax, if I'm understanding that correctly. Also, one pet peeve, I don't think it should be called the senior center because it's a multipurpose place. The seniors don't get to have all their decorations out, all their pictures, some of the things that are very meaningful to them. It's just a place for them to go eat and probably do some ceramics. So that's just a point of pet peeve. So thanks.
Thanks, Emily.
Hi, my name's Shar Soper. I just have a question. I don't know if you can, I don't know how this all works, so this is my first time. So I'm wondering, you said with the pool that will be in the recreation center, that it will be used by the swim team and things like that and have meets there. Will the Nibleau School District be putting any funding into the recreation center to help pay for that? I haven't heard anything about that.
We'll get you some specifics, yeah, after the public hearing's over.
Okay.
It's a great, great question.
Thank you.
My name's David Bradford. I'm a longtime resident of Spanish Fork. My great, great grandfather, Zebedee Coltrane, was one of the first 15 families that settled Spanish Fork. My great grand, great, great grandfather, Pleasant Freg Bradford and his brother Sylvester Bradford, built with, along with their father-in-law, Archibald Gardner, built the gem mill and the, what do they call it now? The co-op mill, the both burned down. And my, and Pleasant built the Leland Mill, which is still standing. So I'm a Johnny come lately to Spanish Fork. My other great grandfather, David Williams, who I'm named after, was on the city council for 30 years. And one of his first things that they did when he was in there was put the cement sidewalks in Spanish Fork, which we all just love today, don't we? So I'm not against what's going on here, but I'm here to shed, shed a little light on the shenanigans that have been going on. Everybody says, oh, this started with the vote in 2015. No, it started years before that. They've started pressuring, pressuring my uncle George Bradford to sell his property along with the Fullers, which was my grandfather, great grand, great, great grandfather, Pleasant Freg's home and the whole, the house that just barely got tore down that belonged to Paul and Anita Bradford and Joel Bradford. So that was my great, great grand uncle. So all of that, they called it Bradford Lane for, for a purpose, because that's where they were. When, when Spanish Fork's fathers decided that Spanish Fork is an up and coming farming community, they decided they needed a, a mill. And so they got called on the mill maker that is known throughout the West, Archibald Gardner. And he brought his two stepsons along with him, Pleasant and Sylvester Bradford. Sylvester and Pleasant, while Archibald was building a mill, they dug the mill race from the mouth of the canyon all the way down. The city didn't. dug the mill race from the mouth of the canyon all the way down. The city didn't have any money to pay them to do this. So they did what they called a mayor's deed. They deeded them all the property from the mill race to Spanish Fork River and up to the hill. So if you look at all, all this, the ballpark and everything was all once Bradford and the Gardner properties. So everybody's saying, well, this started back in 2015 with this vote that we voted down. Well, no, it actually started a couple of years before when the city started pressuring my uncle George and the Fullers and, and Paul and Anita to sell that property to them. So that's been 10 years ago or more. And so this, this, you know, I don't, the, the, the thing that's going on is the citizens of Spanish Fork were never actually told that that's what we were going to do. It was made up by this, by the city council and the mayor that we were going to build this rec center. No ifs, ands, or buts, no vote from the city, no vote from the citizens that end up getting paid for this. And I, I was just trying to add up how much money, how much debt Spanish Fork City is in, under right now. You know, they say, well, the, the SFCN building is being funded by the SFCN. Well, no, it's not. They keep jacking up the price. This, this last month, the price went from, for basic cable, went from $45 to $55, you know. The, my good friend, Ned and Sorensen, was the, was the manager of the sewer plant. And I was talking to him about it. He says, oh, yeah, we've been at capacity for years. And I says, well, why don't they kick Mapleton off our, our sewer line and then we'd be under capacity? He says, oh, I'll never do that. We charge Mapleton too much. We get a lot of revenue from Mapleton for letting them use our sewer plant, you know. And so how much debt do we have on this building we're standing in right now? How much debt do we have on the, the Justice Center? How much debt do we have on the library? How much debt do we have on the sewer plant? How much debt do we have on the SFCN building? It seems like Spanish Fork City is just trying to run it like Biden and, and the United States where we can just crank up those, put some high-speed grease on the, on the printing presses and go into debt. I heard that we go a trillion dollars in debt every 100 days. And we're all over $35 trillion. So how much debt are we going to keep piling on the citizens of Spanish Fork?
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Eddis Hill. Just a couple of quick questions. One, we keep talking about the bond and for few, for the, we're bonding it now, we're taking this debt now for the individuals so they can utilize the, whatever it may be, whether it's the water treatment plant or the rec center. However, what my biggest concern is, I need, I absolutely need that water sewer plant. I need it. I want it. Let's bond for it. I'm not sure if I'm going to use the rec center. So for all the individuals in this room and all the individuals listening, there are going to be people that will be paying for it that won't be using it. And then if you have to use it, or if you want to use, I shouldn't have to use it. If you want to use it, then you have to pay an additional fee to make sure that you get to use it for the upkeep of it. So that's my biggest concern. And first of all, I'm, I'm pro for the rec center. I, I actually think the rec center should be here because I think it's going to offer a lot of individuals, a lot of opportunity to, to stay out of trouble for our kids and all that fun stuff. When I was a kid, I was at the rec center. So absolutely, I am for it. But I'm more concerned about the individuals that won't use it, that are going to be paying for it. And then I hope sincerely that this rec center kicks butt. But my question is, is if we generate more revenues than what is needed to keep the rec center running on an annual basis, will those revenues go back to paying the bond? Because I think that should happen instead of going into some other general fund to, to actually fund other things. I think it should pay itself off first. So I'm hoping that we are generating, you know, six, seven million dollars from this every year from everybody who wants to come to it, right? Obviously. And then we're paying for it, paying for that bond quicker, just like we would in our general households, holds to, you know, get out of debt as soon as we possibly can.
I'm going to continue the same comment. Seth, one question I got for, for you or for Mike, doesn't matter.
Tell, tell.
Oh, we can go down the line.
Tell Terry your name, John.
What? Oh, John Terrell.
Thank you.
Yeah, everybody knows who I am. Hey, the Nabel School District, once they, once we're up and running, are they going to be paying for the access to the pool and to the, the rec center for the areas that they need to use? Are they donating money into the, into that fund now in order to produce the rec center? You know?
Short answer is yes. We can get to the specifics after the public hearing, you know, when we have discussion more back up here. But the short answer is yes, they're considerable.
Okay. One more question, too. When you put this together, when you were putting all this together, did you reach out to like Springville and Provo and find out what kind of, of income they're getting from their recreation areas? Were they making money?
Provo? Yeah, Provo. Short answer, Provo is. I don't know, I don't think Springville is. There, we have more specific numbers, but Provo is.
Now, Jesse knows that I hit the gym a lot. I'm down at Vossa all the time, too. So a question I, one thing I did notice down there, they are super packed. I mean, they are, they can't expand anymore. And I was just wondering whether or not by chance, are we going to increase the, the fitness areas in the rec center? Well, then I guess, I guess the thing I'm, I'm saying is, as a senior citizen, I think the senior citizens in this area are more apt to use the rec center than they are even Vossa. I think that's with the recreation, the senior center is active down that way, you're probably going to find that they're going to hit that area, too. And I think it's going to be a great opportunity for the families to finally get a pool back into the city. Because I know I, I'm sure getting tired of seeing the kids run down to the squirt pads down next to Costco all the time in the summertime. It'd be nice to get that pool up and running again. So I really don't have any complaints. I think the city council overall has done a good job. I may have some folks behind me that don't agree with me, but I think you are doing a good job. And those are the questions that I had, just to see where we're. And I think we can make money with that. And like the gentleman before me said, I think we can help pay that off without getting into more tax trouble. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Okay, pause for just a second. Councilman Argyle, will, I don't know that we, do we need to kick you on your way out to Councilman Marshall? But he's got to go.
Might give him a police escort.
Yeah, catch a, catch a flight. So, thank you.
You left last time I got up to Spinks.
He's making, he's got a boarding, he's making a point of it, Councilman Argyle.
Chad Argyle, Spanish Fork resident. So first of all, Mayor, Lake Shore, seven and a half miles, less than an hour. I always came uptown and I always went back. I never had a problem with it.
I know, but that's when you guys were tough back then. You didn't care about miles on bikes.
Uphill both ways, right?
That's right.
Ride us back over buried thing.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time. I, I just want to comment. You know, I haven't seen the picture, some of the stuff that the rec center looked like. I think about some of the questions when they said, you know, the life center was voted down. The life center had some things in it that obviously we had to redo. It didn't end the ability that we had to still do this. We built this wonderful building. And one of the wonderful things that was said by Scott Ayla was, you should see the seniors or the high school students that are coming to this building and spending time in there that are normally not spending time somewhere else. This building needed to be built. Our library was outdated. And I was the first one. When you're telling me 225,000 people are coming to that building, in a day and age that we're in, because your phones and everything else, I'm so grateful for this building. I'm going to be grateful for that rec center because I think it's going to provide those same things. Especially when we talk about, and Shane and you guys have been talking about, the ability that we, we fail if we don't make that rec center available to everybody in this city who's paying for it. And I know there's some talk around that. There was some talk when I was there. And I'm grateful. I'm excited to see this. I know that we've built things controversial. They come around and even grocery stores where we've had comments and things about them. But I'm excited about the rec center in this community. The demographics has changed since 2015. The way we can fund it has changed. I'm, I hate debt. You guys all know that. I've said that more every time. And the city has gone from a little debt to a lot of debt. But we've had to do some things that are necessary. Chance talked about the toilet. Yeah, it was necessary, the water center, the water treatment center. And it's going to be done. The landfill, our transfer station, had to be done. Thing was outdated for a long, long time. And, and now we're going to have a new transfer station. We're improving the city. We're making the quality of life better in this community. And I think this rec center will do that. And thank you for, for your vote for that. I'm, I'm excited to see it. I'm watching it day and day by day. And thanks for your times and effort.
Thanks, Chad.
Russell Jackson. This is my first time doing this, so I'm a little nervous. I'm more nervous coming up here than a testimony meeting. To this gentleman's point back here about the, the fitness area, I think that was a good point he brought up. I worry about things like that. That competes with private businesses like Vossa, even though they're busy. Good for them. This private subsidized government building will be competing directly with private business. I think that's an issue. I, I'll just say, I'm, I'm not in favor of more debt. I'm not in favor for myself or for my family. I'm not in favor for the community that I live in. If I want to use a rec center, I'll go 10 minutes to the north. I'll go 10 minutes to the south to the pool. I'll go 15 minutes more north to Provo. There's, there's plenty around here that I don't have to pay for unless I use them. So I, I would, my only suggestion would be, and I don't even know if this is possible, maybe even though it's not the norm, to do a revenue bond and put that up for a vote. Maybe we do and, and see what happens. Thanks.
Thank you, Russell. Anyone else?
Well, since you said everyone was invited to speak their mind if they wanted to be here. I just have one, oh, first Janice Harris. And my first thing is just a general thing. And I love the beautiful chamber room, but I was wondering, is there any way, when people are up here speaking, because I've been here and I've just seen the backs of their heads. And I mean, I, I just feel like it would be nice if it could be like talking there or something so people could see behind you. Just a thought. But I was really grateful for the notification in our bill because I'm one that does not follow a lot on Facebook. And so I was grateful for the questions that people had asked and that you directed on a lot of my questions. I did look up and study a little bit on my own. I just looked on Google and I, I found a study where they said how well rec centers do, because we grew up with using one with our family in Orem, and I loved it. So I love the blessing and ability of a rec center. But I was concerned where they said only one of several that I looked at more closely was making ends meet and not having a shortfall. And since I'm, I really do think in small numbers, because I just work with my family budget. But to me, a big debt is a little scary in today's economy. And so, but I realize, talking to others that have opened my mind and hearing more here, too, that there is the needs for things. And so I think I really appreciate how you've tried to study all the things out. And I'm grateful we're going to do the sanitation, rebuild and do what we need to do there. But I guess I'm just, and it's probably too late for this, too, because I've seen the, you know, the verticals or whatever going in the ground. But to me, as a citizen, it would be nice if we didn't have to do too much on top of each other just because of the climate of the economy. But I just appreciate all that you're doing. And I appreciate being here with so many good citizens that I really honor and respect. So thank you.
Hello. My name is Shawna Warnick. And I first want to say thank you to all of you. I am a citizen that asks a lot of questions. And sometimes I may be badger and ask and ask and ask. And I am so grateful for how wonderfully and how well informed you are as you answer my questions. So thank you. Thank you for your thorough presentation and answers and your transparency. Thank you to the professionals that run this city and give your expert knowledge and skills to our community. Thank you for your citizen surveys and reporting the results and responding to them. Thank you for your public outreach and giving ample time and availability and response to that. Thank you for not raising our sales tax. Thank you for your careful, measured, time-intensive consideration of this issue. Thank you for being fiscally responsible, my opinion, and asking the hard questions in the process. Thank you for your investment in, to our community with this rec center. Thank you to everyone who has invested time, energy, and heart into this project and to taking care of our city in so many ways that we don't even think about because we go along and live our life and do our thing and flush our toilets and walk along the river trail and attend fiesta days and all the things. Thank you for this wonderful quality community that is Spanish Fork. The return on this investment is high in so many ways. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, this is totally worse than sacrament meeting, but I have the same pit in my stomach.
Tell Terry your name, please.
Oh, Jamie Jackson. And I've never like been to a thing like this. I've never done anything like this. My dad's very involved in local politics and was on the state legislature. So, you know, I've talked to him a lot. But I guess I finally got angry enough to come and to involve myself. I feel very much like it was a bait and switch. You know, we're told by our local leaders that they want to hear us. They want to hear our opinion. We as citizens want to be heard and we count on you guys hearing us as our public servants, our public representatives. And I just, I feel very unheard. I feel very baited and switched. I'm angry. I also, you know, we deal in, we just came to Spanish Fork with a, with a business and we deal in family entertainment. And this will directly affect our business. You know, we took out millions and millions of dollars of our own money to make what we felt would be beneficial. We've tried to keep costs low. But you know, you guys can undercut us because you're subsidized. So we get to pay for the bond, for the bond, and we ultimately get to pay for all the costs. And then we get to pay to subsidize it. And it's just the more and more buildings that come, the more and more debt that comes, the more we have to subsidize things. I don't get to be subsidized. If it doesn't work out, I lose my house and we shut our doors. But you guys can come in and do it for really cheap because you do get subsidized. And it's really frustrating as family entertainment to deal with that. I think it's a conflict of interest for government to be I think it's a conflict of interest for government to be direct competition with the private sector on these matters. It's frustrating as somebody who started a business. I'm like, well, crap, we shouldn't have started a business then because I feel like you guys are taking it away from us. And so I'm, I am angry. I am frustrated. I think that Spanish Fork has a lot of good things to offer, but, um, you know, we talk about pride and progress and the vision for the city. And I feel like a lot of people's vision for this city is not what your vision is. But you've taken over our vision and you're pushing your vision on us and on our city. This is, we like the small city feel. All these buildings, all these huge structures, they're not a small feeling. They're not a small community feel. And that's one of the things that people like most about this community. Um, that's all I got.
Thanks, Jamie. Thank you, Jamie. Anyone else? Yeah, 20 seconds. Yeah, go ahead. Uh huh.
Tomorrow, the Federal Reserve meets tomorrow about 2:00 PM. They'll announce whether.
You move to the microphone.
Sorry, he can't, he can't hear you on TV.
Oh, sorry.
There you go, Paul.
The FOMC, the Federal Reserve meets tomorrow about 2:00 PM and they'll make their rate statement, their quarterly rate statement, where they're going to raise or lower interest rates. I wonder if that will impact our decision. And, uh, also my wife made a good point. This will cost more to do later than it will now. Um, it's, you know, if we're going to do it, I think the timing is right and the interest rate, uh, can change. So, that's my 20 seconds.
Thank you, Roger. Appreciate it.
Just a quick question in addition to everything everybody else has said.
Oh, sorry, your name?
Oh, Liz Ricekamp. Um, what is the cost of use? Like, how much does it cost for a family of seven to actually use it once we've already paid all the, the taxes and the bonding for it? Like, we don't even get to use it until we pay more. What's the cost?
We can give you some rough figures as well. We have some rough figures. They're, they're not dialed in, set in stone yet because it's not open, but we have rough figures.
Okay, is it like 500? Is it like?
Whatever. If you went to, people have already said, I'll just tell you the, the, kind of the summary of it. People have said they enjoy going to Springville Rec Center. They enjoy going to Pace and Pool. They enjoy recreating at those places. Uh, it's comparable to what it costs to get into a rec center today. So, if you go over to Provo and it costs that to get in there a day, it's going to be pretty much that at Spanish Fork or Springville.
Yeah, but I've already paid for it in my taxes. I don't have to pay for Provo Rec.
Provo, Provo people did too, same thing.
Well, they did. I understand, but I don't have to. I'm still allowed to use their, but not the same cost for residents.
Yep. Understood.
Thanks, Liz.
Thank you, Liz. Liz, I didn't mean to cut you off. Any other questions? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any other questions? Or, excuse me, not, it doesn't have to be questions. Public, public hearing we're in. Okay. Oh, here we go. Yes. You've put in the time. Let's go. Come on, you gotta get, you, you got it. You gotta get up if you've committed.
Okay, Justin Murray. Um, just a couple of questions. This is my first time too, being here in a city council meeting, other than many, many years ago with scouts. Um, what I'm hearing over and over, I feel like is transparency. That's the word that's ringing in my ears right now as I sit in the, in, in the crowd. My question is, I don't know what we can do now, but going forward in the future with transparency, are the bids that were received from the general contractors and the architects, is that a matter of public record? Is that stuff that we can see and see that due diligence was done? Right? I do that for a living. So, a couple of thoughts there. When we talk about the impact fees and hoping that we could have used impact fees more than we are able to with this rec center, did we think about maybe, I don't know how impact fees are attributed, but did we look at doing this in phases and taking occupancy of different phases of this project so that we could utilize those impact fees a little bit more? And then my biggest question is, because I work with attorneys all day long, is what happens if we default on this bond? What guarantees have we put in place to not default? And what does that mean for the residents? I don't expect answers now, but I hope these are thoughts and these are things that we're doing as part of a due diligence and that we're being incredibly transparent, um, with the public. Because I haven't seen the bids. I don't know where to ask to see those, but if they are a matter of public record, I would love to see it so that maybe I can help if there was some things that were missed because I do global real estate, uh, for large corporations. So, anyway, just some thoughts and that's it.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, an entertaining motion go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Took to go out of public hearing. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're out of public hearing, uh, and discussion back up here. We have a good, good list of, uh, of, of some questions here. I think some, some good statements as well. I first want to just thank all, everybody for, for hanging with us and, and doing your, your civic duty. It certainly is your civic duty to, to be here and, and make your voice heard, ask good questions like, like you all did and, and be respectful as, as you all were as well. Um, I will take it upon myself as the, the director of a, of a meeting. The city council meetings are the mayor's meetings, so I do empathize with, uh, with some of you saying, hey, we got the notice, it was 6:00 PM. We came down here, we found sitters or we left our kids with cat food out the back door and we don't know how they're going to be when we get home. I, I completely, uh, empathize with that. I think maybe we, I can do a better job in the future of maybe that. The catch 22 of that is sometimes when we do put things at the first of the meeting, people sometimes assume, I know from past meetings that I've been in, that I don't need to show up at 6:00. They're, they're talking about a lot of stuff and doing the pledge and the prayer. I got time to be there for the public hearing. And so sometimes people show up and they're, they've said, I was here for the public hearing when it happened. So, but, uh, we can communicate that. I can communicate that a little bit better of maybe updating you on when we feel the time is that you can, you don't quite have to be here and, and sit through, uh, sit through some of the other stuff, but get here for the public hearing. Any questions, uh, that you guys have offhand before, uh, before we go through, through any of this, uh, that, that was written down? I know we're all taking notes.
Mayor, will we, um, take some of the questions or all the questions and do our best to answer them on, in some sort of platform or some sort of way, address those?
Yeah, yeah. I think that's, uh, we, we've got a frequently asked question, um, website that's been up of the rec center for a long time now. Some of the questions that were asked here, uh, are, are on there. Uh, I know because I helped author those, uh, but some, hey, if, if we can add to those, that's, um, that's a digital, uh, add to it. So, I think, I think that's the place where if you don't feel like maybe it was, uh, fully answered or discussed here, check the website. It'll be updated periodically with, uh, with answers to your questions as well.
And, and I think we can run through a number of these questions and, and I think take some of them and add them to that FAQ. So, I mean, we, we can answer questions right now, Mayor, if you want, if you want to do that.
Yeah, I think some, some of the questions answered. Again, it's not going to, it's not going to, we're not looking to, uh, be the end off for these questions. Um, uh, so, so don't, uh, maybe don't necessarily count on that, but we'll try to answer your questions the best, the best we know how up here and, and run through them. Um, I guess, I, I, I mean, I can, I can start on some of them if none of you are trying to arm wrestle me for it, but.
And if you want to just pose them, Dale and Jordan and I, we can answer them as well.
Um, let's, uh, let's start with, let's see, um, started with, with, uh, with Roger. Um, uh, so I'm looking through some notes here. I guess the, uh, the, the question of, um, I heard bait and switch a couple of times by some, some different residents. Um, again, empathizing with, with, told it was not sales tax or property tax. I want it to be completely clear to all the residents of Spanish Fork. You, there, there was public hearings. Uh, we had these public hearings. Now it's been a couple of years of having these public hearings. It was, uh, you, you are being taxed. I am being taxed for this. There's, there's no magic. Uh, I've used language maybe that I shouldn't have of, of, uh, rainbows and unicorn things that if you could build it with that, it'd be fantastic. It takes money. Uh, so, uh, that, that money does come from us. It is shared with visitors to, to Spanish Fork that, that we have them like never before that's, that's sharing in this. But yes, if you shop in Spanish Fork, your sales tax revenue is going towards this. Your property tax revenue is going towards this. Big difference from years previous where it was 100% of your property tax. It's not that case anymore. Um, safeguards, I think a question was posed well about the safeguards in place.
You want me to take that one?
I think that's a good one to, to start on. What if sales tax revenues trending downward a little bit, economic circumstances? So, it's a great question to ask your city, hey, you're being conservative enough that you can still pay the bond if sales tax revenues can, can go up and down.
Yeah, I love that.
All I questioned to that was the rap tax, if it gets voted down. I think that's a good time.
Yep.
Yeah, great questions. And, and we do have safeguards. We would, would not be wise. So, I appreciate the question and the way that we budget, we know that sales tax goes up and down and, and the way that we budget, we, we take the top 20% of our sales tax and we reserve that for one-time projects. Um, and so if the economy goes down, we can pull from one-time projects, stop those if we need to and put those towards operations. So, right now the sales tax that is generated in the community that we receive is about 13 and a half million, so we'll round out 14 million. So, that means that we're taking about $2.8 million and reserving that in what we call a capital projects fund on an annual basis. And those go for projects that we build. The budget this year has a couple of those projects. Candidly, those projects are not glitzy and glamorous. They're things you'd be like, I don't want you to build that, but we still have to build it anyways because we have people that need shops and whatever. So, um, that, that goes towards those things, but that's a, that's a great tool that we have that we, we use to, uh, preserve those safeguards. Uh, so, we do that and, and we're looking towards the future. Sales tax is absolutely flat right now and, uh, we anticipate that it will start to go up, uh, in FY '25, so this next fiscal, fiscal year that we'll start. Historically, sales tax in Spanish Fork grows about 7% to 9%. Uh, and so what that means is this year it's flat. Last year it was 20% and the average, of course, between those two years is 10, right? So, we know that there are ebb and flows, but, but historically speaking, we can count on about 7% growth in sales tax. Uh, and so that's, that is some of the metrics. We've counted on an average of 5%. And so we're, we're trying to be conservative, but again, knowing some years are going to be low, some years are going to be high. Um, and then the GMP, following up, I think there was a secondary question also on the GMP. That is a contract price. That's a hard number. And so it won't, it won't go up from there. It could go up only if we said we want to add something else, which sometimes you run into a, a hole that you got to fill or a new pipe that has to be done. Those are terrible examples. But that, the project as it was bid and done, the GMP is set and, and won't change.
Maybe to touch on that and answer a different, uh, another one of those questions, is it public? We, we had a public, uh, meeting that was the GMP price where it was up here. It still is a public document. You can find that meeting and.
Yeah, yeah. Digging in, uh, there was a question about prices coming from one general contractor. We, we did this process in two steps. One, we interviewed general contractors and chose the best qualified, least expensive. Is that the best way to describe it? And so Westland Construction was chosen and their, their bid price to be the general was the least, uh, by a significant amount. And we, we vetted that because sometimes when you have gaps between the next bids, right, you think, did they undercut it? No, they're solid on their price, but they were, they were more than a million dollars less than the construction price, uh, from the next, uh, contractors. But when they bid out, so they, we hired them as a general, then they have the plans and they bid those out, they put that out on the public market. And, and so I don't know, I think the gentleman left that asked that question. I don't know why he didn't. It might have to do with the fact that I think he said he was retired, so that, that might be why he didn't get to bid on it. Um, but they put it out there and they received bids from, from many different entities, uh, probably a handful for every, uh, every trade that we, that we bid on or that we had.
Is that, I think the question that came from that is the, are those bids public? Or are they not?
I don't think so in, in their nature because Westland is a private company, so we'd just have to ask them if they'd be willing to do that. I, I don't know that they will be.
Okay.
But just the industry that it works, but we can certainly ask them.
There was two questions on that.
Those aren't our bids, so we, we can't necessarily tell them what to do, but we can ask them and see. Um, but then there was.
I guess that was what I was alluding to, is the public document that old, that, that adds up to a GMP price.
Oh, yeah.
That is a public.
Yeah, that's on our.
That's a public document. It says, here's how much for this service that adds up to it.
But, but we have hired Westland for a couple of projects because as we competitively bid them out, they've been the cheapest. Uh, they are not the contractor for the SFCN building. We have a different contractor there, but they weren't the cheapest there. So, we, we do bid that out. I think those are kind of along those lines.
Perfect. Uh, any other questions that you're?
Next question that I have written down as I'm kind of going down the list is, and there were several of these, um, let's talk about Nebo School District's contribution. I think that's probably an important factor.
Yeah, we haven't finalized the arrangements, but we have pretty close to the finalized. So, I probably will keep some of those details not public yet, just simply because they haven't been finalized. But Nebo's been a great partner and they contributed a decent amount in Springville. They're going to contribute a decent and more amount for this project. Uh, this facility is bigger than Springville. It's almost twice, right, Dale? 75,000 to 130,000 square feet, right? And so it's a significantly, significantly larger, uh, facility. They were involved in the development of the swimming spaces. So, Shar, I think you asked about those swimming spaces. They were involved in that. They were very pleased to have the spectator spaces that, that they don't have in Springville. So, they will pay a significant amount of money upfront, which will give them access to the swimming facilities for 10 years. And there will be some, some elements where they would have to pay to use, but for the swim teams and other things, they won't. And then after those 10 years, we'll talk again, you know, about what would happen the next 10 years. Those details haven't been finalized and they will be soon, but we've got most of them. Uh, but that'll be at a public meeting here soon where we, we flesh that out and, and talk more openly about those details.
And I'll just say this to it, it's not lost on us. Don't think that we think that that's free money either. I, I pay property tax and my property tax statement says Nebo School District. It's a decent portion of that property tax. I don't think that, we don't know where that comes from as well. That comes from the taxpayer. But, uh, a significant portion of this building, when you see those pictures and see how big the, the lap lanes are, uh, that's not because the guy that was complaining about riding his bike can swim a bunch of laps. That's because, uh, the, the kids at the school are in competitive swimming. And right now, if you ask them, any family that has it, I, I'm not in the swim space with my kids, but if you ask any parents that are, they start at 4:00 something AM at Springville, uh, to, to try to get pool time with their kids. That's in between the seniors needing to be in there for aerobics. That's in between, you got every school south of Provo that's sharing that water. That's the only indoor water, uh, without going to Provo Rec. So, it's a big, big part of Nebo's reason of saying, boy, we want to be a partner in the beginning of this, which they certainly have been. They've, they've been helping us design it from the beginning.
Next one I have is, uh, well, it's not a question about the rec center, but Mr. Bradford talked about his basic cable bill going up. I think it's probably just a good point to roll that out. That, that fee was increased, was that last council meeting?
Yeah.
Was it two of them ago?
Maybe two.
But those rates are set by the distributor of the cable. We don't make very little money on that. I don't I don't even remember what Brian said. It was like $2 or something like that per account. So that that price is passed on from those TV carriers who put their channels on that basic cable. We have to pay the price that they are saying and that's what that that's from. I just wanted to make sure that that was answered for you.
And I want to say to Davey, cool history lesson. I didn't know that the Bradford's dug the mill race and the trade was for some of that ground. That's pretty cool. That's how you do it, old school back in the day. And and that's pretty cool. And we miss you down at the airport. Come down to the airport again sometime and say hello. My gosh, we, your truck was there forever, so.
Mayor, I I do want to address, however, some of the comments about the city pressuring the land sales. I I just have to be very clear, there were no pressure. I was here for all of those transactions and all of those were negotiated, good faith purchases. And so we bought one home, I think going back to probably 2014, we bought one home and then another family approached us about buying the next home. It wasn't us going to them. We did buy one and then another home. And all of the other properties were negotiated, no pressure, no eminent domain, not for these projects. And so I I don't know all of the history there and I certainly don't know what what maybe family conversations have been. I know simply from our side, that's not, that's not how we operated those those sales. So I I want to reassure Davey and and anybody else who who's wondering if there was that undue pressure, that that's not how I observed it.
I appreciate that. And for the transparency aspect of it, and I didn't know this before being elected to public office either, is those transactions, when the when the city does spend money to purchase real property, that is a public meeting that that's voted on and and done. The negotiations, however, aren't done in a in a in a public meeting. The reason is it would cost you more in tax dollars if somebody thinks that, hey, the government wants this, they're going to go outbid, you know, try to try to get that property before the government buys it. So obviously, those discussions are held in in private, but the actual public, when we pay fair market value for somebody's property because they approach us, we approach them, whatever the case may be, it is a public record of your tax dollars, what they're being spent, the address that they're being spent for. So that's always in a public, public setting. What's that?
I can go again if you want me to.
I got one that I I do appreciate, I think we touched on it a little bit of of it was mentioned two times about some of the sponsors of the referendum that have spent time, they spent time here tonight, they spent a lot more time on on, I know, gathering signatures over a over a summer in that effort. That's certainly an effort that they are entitled to, a public and a and a legal effort that that, man, if if you think tonight's a long night, I bet you could talk to them and and see how fun that was. I know, I know they put a lot into it and and did it the the right way of 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 classifying it the right way and and trying to get signatures. So just again, transparency, the public process of of, hey, we're trying to, that that was a referendum on the the tax increase that was for this. We were saying, hey, we're increasing taxes for this project. And so signatures were attempted to be gathered and and there's a state law that governs that. It's not our law, but it's state law that says this is how long you have to do that. And then those signatures were submitted and and insufficient is what they call it. So not for lack of effort, I know, from them and and their families too. So I appreciate him making that point. Before, maybe Jesse, your next one. I do want to, the, appreciate the, again, the comments with, we're talking about a sewer bond in the same time as a as a rec center bond. It's tough because they're both pretty big, pretty large figures. If there was a way that I could tell the federal government, the EPA, to, hey, we're not building a sewer treatment plant. We think what we send to the sewer is just fine and it doesn't smell, or it doesn't need to be treated like you think it needs to be treated, I'd love to do it. It's not possible. When we're told that you're building a new sewer treatment plant, it's because, again, the particulates that come out of the other side of the sewer treatment plant are measured at parts per million. And if you've been in these meetings at any time when we've talked about that cost, that parts per million has changed from a 0.1 factor to, I believe, two zeros after it, 0.001. So the affluent that comes out of a sewer treatment plant, that's why Payson has built one, that's why Salem has built rebuilt one, that's why Provo has rebuilt one, and that's why Spanish Fork and Mapleton are rebuilding one. Not because we we think it's fun or that we want to pay higher sewer rates. It is a product of where that water ends up is now, when your sewer treatment plant is built, is now reusable as secondary irrigation if it needs to be. So you're solving a couple of problems, a water problem that we kind of deal with in the West, but you're also solving a problem that the EPA says you have to solve. And so that is a revenue side. I think Jonathan, and I'll get you the numbers of 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 the revenue side of it that's been discussed many times over in this meeting as with, not this meeting, but meetings that we've discussed the sewer bond is there certainly is a revenue aspect that your sewer rates are going up, Mapleton's rates, sewer rates are going up, that do offset that bond, that bond payment that's going in. Of course, it's it's it doesn't.
Okay.
Gotcha, 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 we got that. Trying to clarify the revenue side of it more 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 than anything. Perfect. I will, maybe the last part I'll touch on here is a picture that was sent to me a week ago, well, a couple of weeks ago now. And it's, again, just the history aspect of it. Again, Councilman Euler is not here, but he's geeking out pretty good on the new, well, not the new, but the resurgent historical committee that that residents are helping on. I got a dedication program sent to me from August 13, 1955, from the Veterans Building down on Main Street. You guys recognize that building? It looks about the same as it as it did in 1955 on Fourth North and Main Street. The DUP is in there now and and it still does facilitate the the VFW and and things like that. But that newly completed Veterans Memorial Building that was dedicated, Davey, we could probably invite you up and have you give us a history lesson on this too, that, but we were a population of about anywhere between 5,000 and 6,000 back in 1955. Few more people this today, we're we're bumping up against 46,000, 47,000 today, but it was 5,000 to 6,000 people back in that day. If you read the the second page of of that, talks about how that was purchased. I think it's pretty cool that you read how, back in 1955, William Jex and Lucy Tuttle and 50 bucks and five bucks and $100. And then the property was purchased by the American Legion in '45 for 3,139. Boy, I wish we were purchasing property like that today. And then in '51, it was deeded to the city with a leaseback for 99 years. The financing of the building has been used, a a portion of the county memorial fund, the city memorial fund, American Legion funds, donations by every club in our community and by so many individuals that space here does not permit listing them. Any fundraising efforts have added to the building fund. The cost of it today is 140,000, which I don't doubt in '55, there were 5,000 people thinking, holy cow, 140,000? I paid $12,000 for my house or whatever, you know, I don't know what those costs, of which there is outstanding debt in the form of bonds issued by the city of 35,000. We feel we have a very wonderful building for this amount of money. Wish to thank all the suppliers, materials, and have in most cases. It spoke to me when this was sent to me of maybe the the Veterans Memorial Building. Don't get me wrong, we're honoring veterans all the time. You wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily call it a necessity. There isn't a VFW and a DUP and an American Legion in every city. It's sometimes not even in every county that you're in. So not necessarily, not necessary in a city. But '55, they they were having discussions of bonding for facilities, public facilities that brought people together, that made their community probably feel smaller than they thought it was getting way too big at 5,000 and 6,000 people. And so, again, the context that it showed me is, these are bigger zeros, there's more zeros, we're in the in in a different modern age here, but it's not a new concept for Spanish Fork to bond for for buildings that bring the community together. Next question, if you have something, I I've got a couple more.
There's kind of three that kind of play in with each other, so I'll just ask them all and Seth or whomever. There was a question about if the rec center does well, where does that money go? Did we reach out to other rec centers? And we kind of answered that. And then how, what the other question was, will it make money? So that was the three questions. They're kind of together, in my opinion.
Thanks, we got, we got it. We we got it, Jonathan, we'll get to it, okay?
Yeah, you you need to know, we've been doing this for many, many years, research on this building. So we also, one thing I want to point out is, if rec centers did make money, the private industry would be building them everywhere. And they do not. Now, Provo did in their last, they've been, they've been operating for 10 years now and and they made money their first several years. So they're an anomaly. These these centers are built for public use to benefit the citizens for a lot of different reasons, which we don't need to go into. But we've done all the research on all of those facilities across the country. It isn't just here in in Utah Valley. But there's a reason that cities build these centers and it's because they don't. We fully, even if this center is subsidized a bit, the mayor already pointed out, we were subsidizing the pool and the senior center anyway. Now, that's not our intent. We hope this center does well. We plan to do just what one of, I can't remember who suggested it, but yeah, we plan to, if this center does happen to make money, we're we're planning to put it in a a capital improvement project account as well, which can be used for improvements on the center to keep it vibrant or if we choose, we can pay off debt. So that's our intent there. What was your other question, Jesse?
If there, if does make money or what, you answered that one. We need to be able to pay for it. And then will it make money? You kind of answered that at first, so you answered them all.
I guess, follow up on that, the statement that I kind of made off the cuff, but not not really, because we've looked at these numbers as well. These are going to be comparable use facilities to the facilities you go to now. It's, it is, you know, if you go to Springville, it is awesome that you don't have to pay the taxes for that. Springville's residents and businesses are paying the tax for that. And they're still paying a fee to go in. That's that's not new. But our fee to get in there, again, it's been brought up too, if somebody comes to the center, there are programs, just like there's programs right now that's already been in place, that if they want to play baseball, T-ball, and that family can't afford T-ball, we want that young woman or young man to play T-ball and their fee is covered. And it's not covered by the city. I'm telling you, you have generous people here that make sure that's a priority in our city. The same fund has already has already started for for this, that a a child won't be turned away because he doesn't have five bucks to 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 get into the rec center. But there will be parameters of it, of, you got to have some good grades, you got to, you know, this has already been discussed up here, but but the comparable pricing structure for families to get in here, obviously, you have to make it affordable for people who want to come.
Yeah, for sure. I think it's important to note, because somebody else brought this up, that our taxes are paying for the construction of this building. It still has to operate. And so that that's where you'll find all the fees that are used for operation. And again, we've studied all of the rec centers up throughout the state and and our fees will be comparable to whatever the market is at the time. But those fees are used to help for operations and maintenance. What our tax dollars are going for is to construct the facility.
And this might help at least with a thought or two, that a non-resident will pay a different rate and it will probably look something like what the monthly rate is or the annual rate is that you're paying for the building. That's the direction that the council's given already as we study different rate structures. So there will be a non-resident component where they'll have the opportunity to contribute in a similar way that residents are.
Similar way they already do to this facility. If you're a non-resident, you pay a little bit to get into the library here. This was touched on, we mentioned we were at the Parks and Rec Conference. I will tell you, there is collaboration with other places, other cities that operate rec centers, some of the biggest successes. I do appreciate, you're talking to four people here, five that left and and Kevin's in the private industry too. This isn't our full-time job. We are not full-time legislators. We are not full-time lawmakers. We got to wake up and go to a job tomorrow, just like y'all got to go to a job. And it's it's a job that we pay taxes and do our thing. We we don't, we don't have meetings that go here. So the 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 private industry, the aspect of of this and and private industry operating separate from this, the the successful recreation centers that that we've talked to and I even talked to last week, part of the problem that they're running into in some of our market and and where these other places are, is the the space to be able to have more classes, right? So for instance, a yoga studio here in town, the yoga instructor said, I can't wait until you have the rec center, I want to be a yoga instructor. And I responded with, well, I didn't want to be in this yoga class, but I'm here because I was told I have to. But just know that, yes, the the partnerships of 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 working with what you have already in 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 the area is, we're not reinventing the wheel on that. That's done successfully in places of of, hey, I can't afford to build a whole, much bigger building to to hold more classes, but boy, I could come down to the rec center and teach a class there. We might not need to train Tyler up on being a yoga instructor. We have yoga instructors and they can be paid to come in and and teach the yoga classes at the rec center. That's not new, that that's done in in other rec centers as well. Councilwoman Beck?
I think you guys are covering it. I think I just want to say tonight that I hear you and I see you. I understand your frustration. I understand that just having this public hearing alone seems deceptive, like maybe tonight we're going to suddenly change our minds and not vote on this bond. We already know it's going up. We're just setting the parameters around this like we said earlier. So I understand that. And if you want to know why we voted, I'm Jesse and Landon, we're not even on the council at the time, so you would need to go back to the August 2022 public hearing. And that is on SF17 on YouTube. And you can see why. You can see why Emily and Amber Dawn didn't feel comfortable supporting it. And they stood up and they said, we're going to file a referendum, so everyone out there who does not want this, please track us down. Here's our contact information. It was sent out, so it, you know, people could find it. So we do understand your frustration and this, it it wasn't an easy decision. We didn't think, let's just turn around and build a rec center when it was not voted in 2015. We were hoping we really wouldn't have to do it, but when Nebo School District turned around and said Spanish Fork High School is going to be the first high school rebuilt, it was about seven to eight years earlier than what we were thinking. We thought we were going to get a lot more life out of our our outdoor pool. So this surprised us and we had, we had to kind of get the ball rolling on what we felt was the best move. And again, if you want to hear our votes, why, I would encourage you to go back to that public hearing in August 22 on YouTube.
Thank you, I appreciate referencing that again. That's, you can, it's pretty easy on the website to find that stuff. Any other comments or questions?
More question on here, sorry that we didn't cover.
No, that's all right.
There was a, there was a comment about impact fees and if we could have built this in portions and if we could have done impacts. I know we talked about the pool, but was that an option? Was it not an option? I wasn't on the council at that point, so I think it's a.
Yeah, absolutely. And Jared, I'm going to give you a kind of a heads up, fill in some of the blanks here. Jared manages a lot of our construction projects in the engineering division. We absolutely looked at phasing and I, is it Ryder or Roger? I heard Roger, I heard Ryder. I don't, thank you, Roger. Roger made a comment and and I think that is very appropriate, that this was in his second, 22nd city took, that the cost, you know, it's probably cheaper today versus, you know, tomorrow to build it. And and as we looked at phasing, the cost of mobilization, the cost of building this structure and then tearing out that wall so you can connect to it, you look, you looked at that and you say, it's actually not economical. If you can do it this way, that way adds costs. And I don't know what the percent is, Jared, maybe you've got an idea, but but it's not zero. And and the increase when you mobilize multiple times and then you have inflation costs through the years. We absolutely looked at phasing and that was one of the things that we studied with our architect and with our contractor. And and in the end decided it wasn't in the best interest to phase it.
And maybe just for those numbers, before we get to those numbers, this, the 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 impact fee number is not a number that we, as a city, can just say.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Now it's this. We just got done with a legislative session that happens every year, where we are brought in front of of the lawmakers at the state level and said, you're charging too much in impact fees. And so we have to prove every year, every. And so we have to prove every year, every city does, that your impact fees are actual real impact to the community. And so I'll be frank with you, some lawmakers want it to go to zero. They say, don't charge impact fees anymore. That'll help lower the cost of, of homes and maybe help affordability. As a local representative, I'm debating up there every year and Seth and Stacy and everybody is at the same time, because that's not reality. The real, the real number is every new resident, every new business has an impact on the city's system. Sewer, water, public safety, recreation, everything. It's why you pay that impact fee. And, and so it would be a tough day for us to come back and say, hey, residents, we know your number one concern is traffic, your second is growth, and we wish it would be solved, both of them overnight and nobody had come here anymore because you found the cool place and you don't want them to find it. The, the, the worst thing would be, oh, guess what? They're moving in and you got to pay for their impact to the system. And so that's why we charge that impact fee. But there are strict laws around it of what, what it can be used for. So we couldn't just say, hey, the next thousand residents in Spanish Fork that move here, welcome, you get to pay $30 million in impact fees. We can't do it. Jared, impact, pha-, oh, the phasing, sorry. Phasing of mobilization and stuff, the cost of that?
Yeah, we looked at it and we spent a little time on it, but I can't remember the exact number, but it was just, it was too much to even think about phasing it. It would cost us too much to come back. It would be too much interruption with the, the pools themselves. It just, it just wouldn't work with the system we were trying to build. So especially with the pools.
I think I remember that discussion from Dale of saying.
Thing was, let's do the indoor pools and not the outdoor pools. And that was, it just looked at it and it was like you're going to have to tear up the whole site again and it just wouldn't work. So.
Thank you.
It's more on the wouldn't work than the number.
So I just wanted to make a quick comment to something that Stacy just said. As I sat in the meeting in 2022 with folks that we've talked about, that spoke at that meeting, right? Like, I thought that was the public meeting for this, for this decision for the rec center because it was told to us that that was what the truth and taxation was. And so when I was running for council, right, this last year, the biggest things that we talked about were transportation, housing, so two of the things we've talked about tonight, very in-depth, and then the rec center. And, and one of the things that I would comment is it's hard to, or it's easy to armchair quarterback decisions, right? Like the, hey, this is what I would have done in that situation if I was on the council at that time, so on and so forth. But one of the things I was very clear on is that I, I would do everything in my power to make sure that the rec center is the best it can be as it's gone forward. Because that vote happened, that tax increase, I've been paying that tax increase, we've all been paying that tax increase for the last two years, or this will, this be the second year, third year? Second year of it this fall when we pay it. But it doesn't do anybody good, whether that's anybody who was for or against, or wherever you felt on those things. In 2015, when it was all on the back of taxpayers, I voted with the majority of Spanish Fork folks. I was in that realm. And I think it's, it's important that, for me, that we do what's right to make sure the rec center is, is good for the citizens of Spanish Fork and it goes well. Because if not, it doesn't do any of us as Spanish Fork residents any good. And I just wanted to make sure I said that. And then the other thing is, I know that there were some comments, they weren't necessarily questions, maybe some feelings, some different things. My phone number is out there. Please reach out. I would love to talk through some of those things, you know, whether that's how we can get the chamber involved, or if it's a question about transparency or different things like that. Like I said, my phone number is out there. It's, it's pretty easy to get. Please reach out. Let's have conversations about like whatever it is, whether it's rec center or anything else.
Thank you. This, the public hearing on item A is, is closed, but in effort to, 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 to help people get where they, where they want to be other than here, there is item A in new business. And so item A in new business is the consideration for adoption of an administrative resolution for Spanish Fork City affirming the adoption of a resolution of the council authorizing the issuance and sale of not more than the 65 million aggregate principal amount of sales tax revenue bonds, series 24 and related matter, sales tax recreation center bond new debt resolution. I'm going to move that resolution portion up. There's no action item on A of the public hearing. We've satisfied that. But there is the action item that we need to vote on for 10A. And, and so rather than wait for B, C, and D public hearings, we're going to move that up so, so, so that can be here if people want to get to, get to where else they need to be. So I would move to item A of new business. B, C, and D, we're coming back to in, in the public hearing sector. But if there's any questions, we have Jonathan here. Jonathan Ward, our public finance director, do you have anything to add to, to this section of what's been discussed before we take a vote on it? Sure.
I know it's the last thing you want to do is make this longer, but I'll just add one comment about general obligation bonds and the vote that's required. It's the only financing tool authorized by our state laws and constitution that raises taxes to an unlimited level, which is why it requires a vote. Every other revenue bond, every other tax-backed bond, sales tax, excise tax for road taxes or otherwise, is capped. And as we live in a country with a democratic republic form of government, you are our voice. Basically, we vote for you to act in our behalf, with the exception of that general obligation bond tool, which gives you as a city unlimited taxing power on our property. That's why we have to vote for that. Where on other tools, we do not. So I think that's an important comment to make. And when we do vote for the school district general obligation bonds, for a city, for county or other general obligation bonds, that's what we're voting for. We're authorizing the government entity, excuse me, to raise our taxes to an unlimited level to repay the debt. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Vaughn's not here, but Seth, maybe you can answer. So as I read this, this is an administrative action, not a legislative action, correct?
Correct. Yeah, this is, this is you finalizing that step candidly, like was mentioned, that started back in August of 22.
Okay. And the, and again, the reason why it's coming up now and not back in August 2022 is you can see, we're trying to be strategic and saving money on, on, on the bond interest rate here. And, and that's why we have professionals that are, that are doing that for us. And, and so now's come the time to, to, to execute on those bond funds. If there's no other questions for staff or, or comments up here, I'd entertain a motion on item 10A.
I move to approve the adoption of the resolution of the tax council authorizing the issuance of sales of not more than 65 million aggregate principal amount of sales tax revenue bonds, series 2024 and related matters.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Took. This is a roll call vote. Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Carden and Councilman Took.
Yes.
Okay. That passes. Item A on, on the new business has been complete. It takes us to our other public hearings. I'm going to switch these around as, as well, just a little bit, because I don't think we have maybe people waiting for item B. So we'll move B below C and D, if that's all right, unless there's somebody here for item B that needs to get people, oh, excuse me. Yeah, item B is, what item B is, a zoning text amendment for event centers and entertainment use ordinance, changing the city's requirement for entertainment uses.
There are some people here for that one.
Oh, you are, there are people here. We just thought nobody cared about that one. So yes, we need to keep it in order. That was my suggestion. Yeah, you're, it's 10 o'clock. You, we need to take you.
Thank you for being here. We'll, we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep the order that you got. We'll, we'll, we'll go, we'll go B, C, and D. No, that's all right. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Mr. David Anderson will talk to us about item B, and then we'll go into public hearing to hear from the public on this item.
Sorry, Mayor.
That's all right.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This proposal has two parts. One, the city initiated, and we spoke to the council about that a couple of months ago. Another one, I'll try to separate out, discuss distinctly, it's applicant initiated and covers a different issue. We've simply combined them tonight to try to make it a little bit more succinct and quick. Nick, can you go to the second page? The item that we've previously discussed has to do with a specific land use event centers and a change that was made a couple of years ago to allow those as a use subject to conditions in our commercial downtown zone. In short, we made a change to allow that use, provided that a certain amount of parking is provided to, excuse me, is provided for an event center if it's located downtown. And we have had a bad experience with that. So the proposal tonight would simply remove that as an allowed use in our commercial downtown zone. There, there are other zoning districts where it would still be allowed, but simply not there. Do you have any questions about that?
I just would like to add, I think this is a really great example illustrating when maybe the council messed up and a couple of years later, we realized maybe we made a bad call and we're going back to fix it. I'll admit to that. Is that, Dave's giving me a look. Never admit that.
I think we brought forth as staff a pretty strong recommendation. So this one, I really feel like is on.
We were sold on it. We thought it would work, so.
Well, in, in, in defense of, of what we're trying to do with our main street in Spanish Fork, it's a pretty important place. And so the commerce of main street is, is pretty important. And we've seen the data, we've seen the proof that if your main street isn't improving, it's declining. It doesn't stay the same. And so I think the attempt of changing that and saying, hey, maybe we'll deal with some parking issues down there, relied on some, some people maybe getting along, didn't get along and, and, and parking fights. But we like that people like main street too, and that we, we, it'd be worse if it was a desert down there and nobody wanted to come down to main street. So we like that, that it's active as well.
Absolutely. In, in defense, I really think it certainly was best practice to try, you know, for some of the reasons that I think the mayor was just describing, simply have as much activity in an environment like that as you can get.
Yeah.
Hoping that, you know, parking demands kind of offset by way of typical operating hours and things. I learned. So here we are. Now, you could act on that distinct from what I'll describe next, unless you guys have any other questions or comments on, on that change. Okay. The other change, and I'm really trying to, to be quick tonight, and I realize that sometimes that's a problem, but we were approached within the last few months by a group that would like to put, we're calling it an indoor playground, a very sophisticated indoor playground facility in an industrial building that's being finished just north of, well, in close proximity to the hospital, to the north of the hospital. They'd occupy a portion of that building. It certainly is common for gymnasiums, this type of use, trampoline parks, different things like that, to be located in these environments where there's a lot of square footage available, big spaces with large clear span types of setups, tall ceilings, things that I think are fairly important to them being able to do what they want to do in those buildings. So not out of the norm there. We do believe that it's a use that can make sense in that environment.
Said industrial one?
In the industrial one zone. Yep. So that's really the essence of the proposal, is to allow indoor playgrounds in the industrial one zone as a part of that, talking about parking. And you might note with the proposal on the parking chart that we're proposing that for sites that are in the industrial one zone, one parking space would be required for every 300 square feet of building space. Elsewhere in Spanish Fork, the parking requirement would be a little bit higher. One space would be required for every 250 square feet of building space. I don't necessarily feel like those numbers should make a lot of sense to you guys. I will note that we've done our homework and have looked at a number of different facilities along the Wasatch Front. We've looked at parking requirements that cities have typically imposed for facilities of this nature. And in short, we're right in the average with what we're proposing, which is where generally we like to be, when we don't have a lot of experience with a use like this. The Hive is probably the closest thing that we have and what was previously the ShopCo building. They have quite a bit of parking there. We've never seen that there's deficient parking. I'm happy to go in as much detail as you'd like.
I have a couple of questions real quick. So I see that it's an approved zone in the downtown commerce as well, or CD. So that would not be the same parking requirements as an industrial or commercial too, right? Or shopping, shopping center?
It would be higher.
It would be higher for them to have to have that requirement downtown?
By, by a small margin, it would be higher, yes.
Okay. So it's not like the event center where they didn't have to meet the parking requirements to do the event center downtown?
Actually.
Just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly.
I'm, I'm under, I'm reading it different, that it's, that in, that the entertainment event center, the entertainment center would not be allowed in the commercial downtown zone?
Right, that's there, but then we're adding in the indoor commercial recreation facility into that same zone. So I'm just trying to make sure that the parking requirement there would suffice for that type of facility in our downtown?
The indoor commercial recreation facility definition is intended to replace the entertainment use definition. So you're exactly right, Commissioner, or sorry, Councilman Carden. That, that that as proposed would be allowed. And honestly, I think that warrants some additional thought on our part. I think that's an excellent question. We don't inherently require off-street parking in the commercial downtown zone. That's.
Right, because we required one.
To that zone.
For feet for event centers. That we're striking from the language.
Yeah. My, my recommendation for purposes of what we're talking about tonight would be to not add indoor commercial recreation facilities as a permitted use in the commercial downtown zone. I think that's an oversight on our part, and if we need to revisit that in the future, we could.
Okay.
Perhaps with a specific parking requirement that would come into play there, kind of like we're talking about with the industrial one zone.
An applicant that you're talking about, they're wanting to do it in industrial, that was kind of the reason why you led with that, I'm assuming?
Yes, and at the same time, we want to restructure some things just so that it functions better citywide.
That was my question.
Thank you. So I, in fact, if I may, make that part of staff's recommendation, which incidentally, both the Development Review Committee and Planning Commission have recommended that these changes be approved as proposed. Once again, I appreciate that catch. I would not, certainly for now, include indoor commercial recreation facilities in the commercial downtown zone.
Before we go into public hearing for this item, the applicant is here, and we didn't bump you down. So thanks for being here, if you'd like to speak before we go into, to public hearing.
I am actually the, one of the landowners of this industrial park and the.
Sorry, Terry, tell Terry your name. I apologize.
Sorry, Mike Robinson.
Thank you, thank you, Mike.
Sure. And not related to Dale, but he left. I'm one of the landowners and built the buildings. There's three buildings there now, you know, north of the hospital. I look at this, if this is a bad decision, I'm going to be the brunt of it because I'm going to have other tenants that don't like these people here, and then I'm going to have to deal with it. You guys, we, we have so much parking there. Overall, it doesn't matter. And this tenant, and, and I, we've done this study there in Bluffdale right now, and there's some other areas. This tenant, the kids show up around 5:00, 5:30 and play, and then they go home. They're there on Saturdays, stuff like that. They're not, in the summer, it's slow for them because the kids are out, hopefully your new pools, you know, they're on vacations. And so we've looked at it as when they start showing up, all my people are leaving, yet we have still sectioned off one per 300 so they would have it. So I feel this is an easy use there. And I, before we decided even, say, we'll entertain the idea, we went to the facility in Bluffdale, an industrial park so similar to ours, talked to some of the people around them, know, everybody's happy, nobody's unhappy. I know my own grandkids use the one in Bluffdale all the time, and they're all excited to see a bigger, better one. So we will see. one. So, we will see. And so, that's what we're after. And I can have the applicant speak also if you would like, but I look at this as pretty simple myself, but maybe I'm oversimplifying it. But, yeah, we've been here four hours.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for sticking with us. Yeah, I don't want to belabor a meeting either, but I'm a little selfish and intrigued in what the indoor playground is. So, I mean, just tell us what sounds pretty cool. I bet I couldn't, I bet I couldn't do a third of the things in there. I'm still aching from golf the other day, so I probably won't come jump around, but I got kids that would do it.
Okay. So, my name is Yang Yang and I know it's too late and I think I have a long story about my background, but I won't. And just want to mention, and I originally from China and I was here for the 2002 Winter Olympic and I got bronze and silver medals.
You did?
So, yeah, yes.
And what?
And this is my background and the life is amazing. And because my indoor playground is called Kids Topia, Bring Me Back Here. And we have two locations, one is in the Bluffdale and one is in the Roy. Bluffdale is exactly like what we are looking for in the Spanish Fork. It's in the warehouse. Why we use the warehouse? Because the high ceiling and we can build three or four stories for the kids. They can get lost. Yeah, you can see, that is the bird is from the top. Maybe this is not good view, but this is for the Roy location. And we have a lot of slides, we have a lot of fun things. And the original idea, I want to do this because I was athletic. And I want my kids doing, to do that too. And I don't want them to watch too many iPad, easy. And they still can running and jumping and during the winter time. And I like to see the people sweaty. And my older son is playing golf.
Oh, really?
This weekend will be here for the first US Kids Tournament in the Oak. The guy just got the reward. Yes. I was, oh, what's going on here?
Playing in that tournament, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. You can see from here, it's the warehouse. And, okay, come back to our topic and about parking. And in the Bluffdale, we have 9,000 square feet and they request, the city requests us 26 parking space. And right now, and we use the most of the time is after the business, after all the business hours, after school time, of course, during the daytime, only the toddler. And after school and we have a party and the weekend is our most popular time. So, you guys know that. And I think why we choose here, because we can share all the parking, to be honest, with another business. And for them, it's maybe only Monday to, only the workday. And for us to use is only for the weekend, not only for the weekend. And sometimes it's super slow from the workday morning until afternoon at four. So, this is my main point. If I can be here, I'm so happy.
Bronze and silver medalists, in what event?
Short track speed skating.
Wow.
That's awesome. Very cool.
That is cool.
Yes.
Is that a first? Have we ever had a-
No, we probably need a picture. Yeah, we probably need a picture with her afterwards. That is an amazing sport.
Let's go, come on. Yes.
An amazing sport. You're awesome.
Yeah, that's what, we have Olympic over here. I visit here every single year and some of my teammates are working here and still doing, I'm still doing the referee for the short track speed skating. So.
Very cool.
That's cool.
Go Google, search me. My name is Yang Yang.
Do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. Okay. I'd entertain-
She'd take you out. Like, you go skate around the track, I bet she takes you out.
That's no, that's no joke.
Well, he can barely get up on the skates, so let's start there.
I'm going to be up there and watch your boy play golf. That's going to be fun, see him up there at the Oaks. That's good. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing and see about the, any public comment on this issue. Anybody have a motion to go to public hearing?
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Cardon to go into public hearing. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item B here tonight. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to this item? Seeing not entertain a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon, seconded by Councilman Took. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Discussion back up here. Any questions for staff or the applicant about adjusting the industrial zone to include a facility like this that would promote what looks like a pretty fun business?
No concerns for me.
Okay.
I can take this. How about it if you want?
Seth, anything? I've read the Planning Commission and the DRC discussion on this. Again, it goes without saying, Dave called Jesse, Commissioner Cardon before Councilman Cardon. He was a commissioner. Shane was a commissioner. Kevin was a commissioner. These are the non-commissioners, me, you and Landon before. But, it goes without saying, we appreciate the work of the Planning Commission. This isn't the first meeting you guys have been to, any of the applicants that have been to, but the Planning Commission and the DRC for going through these and having a nice report. We've read the report, read the concerns, read the response to concerns and things like that as well. So, appreciate that good work. Sorry.
You're good. You ready for a-
I'm ready for a motion.
Okay. I move to approve the changes to Title 15 for entertainment uses and event center, but striking indoor commercial recreation facilities from downtown commercial.
Yeah. Okay. Motion made by Councilman Cardon, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. A roll call vote here. Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Okay. Item B is approved with that adjustment. Yeah, thank you for sticking with this.
Go home and go to bed.
Appreciate it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Takes us to item C on our public hearing, the River Run Town Homes Expanded Master Plan Development Zone Change.
Once again, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Of course, we don't hate any of the applicants that are on the agenda tonight. Heard that, to be clear. It's just how the schedule works sometimes, right?
This is brutal. We should be offering coffee or caffeine or something.
Maybe something.
Does anybody next?
I stole it. It's right here.
We're okay?
I wondered why it was over here. It's because I took it. I have some Werther's and some Mints. That's all I got.
We have a couple stress balls left as well. If anybody would like those. Raise your hands.
We should end that during the public hearing.
Annie's Acres, River Run Town Homes. You guys familiar with the general area we're talking about? North of South Lane. Marshall's gone. We're going to move quick. The subject property is actually everything that we have in orange here plus this area here. So, the proposed zone change involves what's outlined in black here and it would change it from rural residential to R3, which is consistent with the general plan. This is what is currently approved. It's kind of hard maybe to make sense of it because of how it's oriented. North is to our left here. And with what's proposed, a large portion of this property here, that's where the zoning would be changed, right over here. And the project, as we see it there, would be redesigned on about the northern two fifths or so to look more like this. So, what we were just looking at was a portion of the subject property that included what we have outlined there with the yellow dashes and kind of a stem that goes down to the south. When the applicants first approached us a number of months ago, they did not necessarily want to redesign what had previously been approved. I really appreciate their willingness to do that. Don't want to disparage at all the design that we can see here. It's a function of having a really long, narrow piece of property, but frankly, that does not give you much of an opportunity to create an interesting neighborhood, interesting streetscape, at least visually. And the applicant's willingness to make some changes and to incorporate some different housing styles, I believe really is a very significant improvement. I'm going to turn things over to the applicant in just a second, maybe again to try to keep things moving along quickly. But, for the reasons that are outlined in the staff report, both the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission have recommended that the project be approved. So, the zone change with that has two components. One is to change the zoning from rural residential to R3. The other part is to approve the master plan development overlay. One thing that I want to note, which is the first exhibit with the staff report, there are specific findings that need to be met in order to approve overlays to allow for this type of design to happen. And without going through those in detail, those four different findings in staff's view have been met with this proposal, which incidentally contains a total of 188 dwelling units in a couple of different building types like we'll see here in more detail in a moment. Parking has been the subject of quite a bit of discussion. The applicants with this layout have been able to design it to where it meets the city's parking requirements. And the applicants have a fairly detailed presentation that I'm sure they can get through in a relatively quick way. So, do you mind if I just let them describe the project in more detail?
Please. Yes.
There. Thanks.
Sorry, I don't know what my buttons are here. Dave? How do I go backwards?
The bottom, the bottom one.
Thank you. Matt Loveland and I represent Keystone Homes.
Thank you, Matt.
I will be very quick. We're excited to be here tonight, continue building in Spanish Fork City. Talking about community, we love being a part of it. So, what we have tonight, as mentioned, 188 units and a redesign of a preliminary plot. There's 74 of those units that are currently approved in that design. And Dave very strongly convinced us, no, I'm kidding. Through a lot of really good collaboration between staff and in our group, we've come up with this plan. And that's been through the works of about six-plus months with, I mean, going all the way back to acquiring Volunteer right of way. So, it's been a very involved project. But, this newer design eliminates that kind of barrack-style alley load and this fronts units onto public roads or interior common area. And one of the two really important things when we looked at this redesign was we wanted a better programmable space for the pool. The previous layout for the pool was just north of, or just to the top of Phase Two. I mean, it's like a sixth of the area that we have in the new planning area. So, much better programmable space, still central to the community. And then, the other component is we wanted to introduce condominiums here, for sale condominiums. So, we will have both the townhomes and the condos with the addition of the Peterson property. As Dave mentioned, it is in line with the general plan. We're coming in at 10.6 roughly units per acre with R3s up to 12 and have met all other requirements with that. And then, these are our products. We've talked at great length with staff about enhancing site elevation, which we've provided some materials for that. And that's part of the consideration tonight. These are the for sale condominiums. All of them have designated one-car garages in addition to the above parking requirement. And then, these are the townhomes that the council actually previously saw last year before we acquired the property that we are currently building in the existing River Run portion. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't want to take all night either because I'm sensitive to where we're at in the evening. So, happy to answer any questions both during council deliberation as well as following public comment if I can have that opportunity if needed. So.
Your townhome product is for sale as well?
Yes.
Owner?
Yep. That is correct.
Any other questions for Matt before we go into public hearing?
Not yet.
Thank you, Matt. We might have more for you. Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to go to public hearing for item C.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman, I didn't-
Who's me?
Okay. Councilman Cardon to go into public hearing. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We're in public hearing for item C. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to River Run Town Homes?
Diane Garcia. So, I just had three things that I brought up in Planning Commission that I just wanted to get on the record. And I have spoken with the developer and so, they're going to try to see, you know, meet those. First is there's a lot of water that drains through that area, a lot of natural springs, and the drainage ditches that are there drain water off of my property. So, if they do not drain properly, we will have a big lake out there. So, something to think about and to manage. The second one was the traffic. And I have set out doing work out on my farm on many occasions during Fiesta days and watched a big rig from Texas drive down River Bottoms Road and hit the fork in the road and sat there and wondered, do I go left? Do I go right? They're both tiny little roads that I can barely fit on. And they have nowhere to turn around and they don't know where, what road gets them out of there. So, I feel like this will add to that confusion. So, whatever can be done to help correct that. And I know that now that there's more activities and more equestrian events and rodeos that go on there, so it's not just during Fiesta Days. And those guys driving those big Texas rigs, they know how to drive. I've seen them do a 32-point turn out there and get back to where they need to. But, we don't want to do that. We don't want to direct them down a tiny little road that they don't know where they're going. And then, the third thing that I addressed was the light pollution and of course, for the fireflies that are out there in the River Bottoms, especially on my property. And they did say that they were all in favor of dark sky compliant lighting for these, for this development. So, that's all I got.
Thank you, Diane.
Thanks, Diane.
My name is Jackie Larson. I have a couple, I have a lot of questions, but I asked some of them at Planning Commission and some weren't fully addressed. So, a couple do kind of piggyback on Diane's. But, with River Bottoms Road, I'm curious of what the impact is going to be and are there any changes that are going to be made to the road and what are those changes? And is this portion of the River Bottoms Road along this property, is it going to be widened? And is that county? And how does it work if the property boundary doesn't reach the River Bottoms Road? Then, water. So, I don't know if you can pull up the map of the plans, but it shows that the storm pond number one, that's on the top end of it, it's beyond their property boundary and it's on the city's boundary. And I know that there was some sort of weird swap with it. But, are the two going to connect and where is the storm pond going to drain to? So, I guess overall, what's the plan for the water and what actually has been approved? Because I may have made some phone calls and this has not been delineated or permitted. So, can you possibly pull up aerial view of the map or a map of the stuff? Because this probably might not make much sense, Nick?
The map, their townhome subdivision?
Yeah.
It's clicked, I'm sure, a couple pictures back or something of where this is at. This is their product.
So, there is a ditch. So, if you look north from the property, the Fairgrounds parking lot along the River Bottoms Road, it doesn't have a section filled in and which you can see the ditch also isn't filled in if you were looking at it. But, the same ditch that runs through the center of this property in question, so it's not a secondary ditch. The surface water and drains, like Diane mentioned, it comes down from off the hill and does go into the ditch. You can go down the right and out there is water in the ditch. It's not just irrigation water that comes down there. So, I mean, with the ditch that hasn't been delineated, still another issue with water, but the ground's wet. Historically, you couldn't cultivate the outside boundaries of it. So, are they going to be required to get it delineated first? And, I mean, I guess so, for what it's worth, my opinion, it's, this is changing the historical flow of the water and shouldn't there be those permits done first? And before you per the development, otherwise, like, how do you know what the available acreage is and if the density requested is within the zone type requested if that isn't completed first? That's all I got. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just real quick, Etta's Hill. Just curious on, we've seen a lot of high density in this, in this area. And my curiosity is, is how is our zoning for our schools? Because as the price of housing goes up, our families are getting older as they live- Because as the price of housing goes up, our families are getting older as they live in townhomes and condominiums. So we'll see a lot more elementary school-aged kids in these condominiums, in these townhomes. Do we have enough, what's the school zoning look like? And do we have enough room in our schools that are in these areas for the high-density housing that's coming in, in particular, this area? That's the only question.
Thank you, Eddis. Anyone else? I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing?
Sound moved.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took to go out of public hearing. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're out of public hearing for item C. Discussion back up here. A couple of questions maybe the applicant wants to address. Yeah, a question about the drainage, the traffic and the light pollution? Sounds like you've worked with some relatively close neighbors to work on some of those issues?
Yes, great neighbors, by the way. So the, let's start with traffic, rodeo fairgrounds. We are going to add additional points of connection with our development. So let me go back to the overall. Let's go with this one. So to the north, right here, this road is going to be improved. That's the southern boundary of the rodeo grounds. That'll connect to, have an additional connection to River Bottoms Road. Long-term, there's plan for the, or talk of the city to make this connection out to Main Street as well, which will help. Secondly, we've also improved Volunteer Drive, which will obviously accommodate additional traffic as well. So my hope is during those high-traffic periods, i.e. Fiesta Days, this is actually going to help be an improvement to what the current situation is. On the
Your folks would let you, oops, sorry.
Please.
I moved that. Your folks would let you know. I did something.
I don't know how to do it either. You're okay.
They'd let you know if a big rig started turning in their subdivision. You're probably apt as much as anybody to make sure a sign's on that corner, especially during the times of Fiesta Days that pull in here. Don't go after, it's not going to be easy because you're from Texas and don't know how to drive.
Yes, and we, connection to the fairgrounds, there's a lot, I mean, eight or nine different concepts that kind of address different things with it. Where we landed on this is we actually necked down the intersection, create traffic calming. We're going to make it inconvenient where it's due, right? Because this is residential use, so that's something we are sensitive to. However, it's there if needed at the same time, so.
Will you be doing anything to River Bottoms Road?
So yes, we are widening our half-width of that road and putting in the required infrastructure underground as well.
And does that cover the ditches that Jackie was talking about or are those somewhere else?
The ditches up through the middle of the property will actually be grabbed on Volunteer further south. So Annie's Acres also has to relocate this same ditch. The overall plan is to, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, Jared, but the overall plan is to divert that water through the actual rec center property down Volunteer. And so that ditch will be diverted from its current trajectory. Out of, one, out of the mill race, which solves some issues. And we've already sized that storm drain to accommodate that. I believe we have a five-foot diameter pipe.
He's correct. When we started the storm drain, one of the first things we did was put the regional storm drain system in. And so we've taken it out and across Main Street. And then Matt and his team have taken it down Volunteer Drive. So the storm drain's intact to take out the tailwater and the drainage in this area.
Yep.
The side of the road that you will be improving is the side of the mill race that you'll be expanding on? Is that right? And the mill race on the, on your side?
I think it's on the other side.
The mill race is in the mill race.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the mill race is one ditch. This is just a secondary irrigation ditch that runs further west.
The mill race to the further south is open?
Correct. Yes.
Light pollution, sounds like you want to be neighbors with the people in the area that are other?
I've never seen a firefly. So if we can do whatever we can to promote that, we are
Diane, can you take care of that?
We already have a date.
Oh, good.
So yes, like, we are going to do everything we can to promote the dark sky requirements, so. Schools was the other item. So with every project, I talk with the different zoning officials, specific to Nebo, obviously, for this community. And it is on their radar. Obviously, with schools, very similar with bond discussion tonight. Need has to surpass demand, right? At some point in time, and additional schools will be built. So it is on their radar. However, we aren't going to be likely a tipping point for a decision, is the way that it was communicated back. So, but at least part of the plan.
Any other questions for the applicant here? There's a, I wrote down a pond that's off your property.
Yeah.
You speak to that at all?
Yes, so a lot of nuances with River Run and surrounding properties. That property was actually part of this project. The city acquired it from River Run for the rodeo grounds. And part of that arrangement was that storm water detention would be located in a small corner of that. So city owns the property, it was part of the project at one point in time. So yeah, we've been working obviously very closely with city staff on making sure that's to plan and as usable as can be.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate you acknowledging the sensitivity of the area. As far as public facilities go, there's not a city I would venture in the state that has invested more of the public's money in fairgrounds. That is our heritage. And it's super important, not just for the PRCA rodeo that's held there every year, but all the other events that are draws for our community, draws for the people that live out, that still have an eight-four-six-six-zero zip code that live out in the fields and the events that happen here. So we hope it's been impressed, it sounds like it's been impressed, but maybe just re-impression from the mayor and the council here. You're in a super important part of Spanish Fork. Everywhere's important, don't get me wrong.
Yes.
But it's a super important part that we welcome the world to, literally not just from Texas, but all over the world. So we want to make sure it's something that is long-lasting, that's proud of. And I'm sure you want that in an economic sense as well. I'm not, I don't want to mitigate that by any means or overlook that. But from a city standpoint, super important place where we've spent a lot of tax dollars. The county has as well.
One comment that you made actually, Mayor, previously. One of the things that I kind of envisioned, because sometimes I go down the what-if lane. But talking about the opportunities that the future families are going to have here with that type of proximity to the rodeo grounds. I mean, there's going to be a lot of bikes running north to go recreate at those events. And so for us, on behalf of Keystone, I mean, we fully acknowledge this is a sensitive area because there is great investment in this area. We're tickled pink to be a part of it, so we love it.
They'll understand the smells all the time won't be the, you know.
It's not that smelly.
I'm just saying, some people, it's the smell of money. But other people that might come from somewhere else
We'll take them to the sewer treatment.
Might ask the city, what can you do about that smell? And the answer's nothing, enjoy the view of the fairgrounds.
Enjoy the views.
No, I'm wondering if you, when you sell these, if you can just give them a little card that says, "Don't call the city when there's fireworks and demolition derbies and noise, because we're not going to take your call."
Absolutely.
Let them know what they're in for.
I mean, we
They'll sell parking in their driveway.
We're telling them there's the potential of a very awesome amenity across the street on the other side of Main Street. But that also means you have the byproduct of this other awesome amenity as well. So we definitely will communicate that.
Well, thank you for making the work to make it look better from your original plan.
Yeah.
I know that's a big expense, but this I'm really impressed with. And you also didn't push us coming in saying, "Hey, I'm just asking for a little more density." You're actually under what you could have done and I appreciated seeing that as well.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments.
Any other questions for the applicant here?
No, thank you for working with the neighbors too.
I just have a couple of comments.
Very helpful.
Do you have a comment, Jared?
I was just going to add, when they were talking about the storm drainage, to the north of this subdivision will be picked up and ran through the rec center storm drainage once we develop the fairgrounds, the state shed sites. So it has all been planned to actually run to the river and not into the mill race. Even this area to the north. This is all just temporary.
Which is good in the area, I mean, to correct me if I'm wrong, but it's good in an area to get that water diverted, not in open places where it's, you know, I know we've tried to take some measures along the fairgrounds property with open canals and kids thinking it's time to fish.
The mill race is an open canal through the fairgrounds.
Right.
So for the, I mean, there is one part of it that is piped, but the majority of the mill race is open.
Yeah.
But we won't be dumping any of this storm water in the, for the time being, it will dump through a ditch and go into the mill race. But in the long term, it will take through the storm drain system and head south to the river.
Okay. So one thing, you know, this project has enabled, starting back from the beginning, before even Keystone was there, but this project has enabled us to achieve some of those things that the mayor's mentioned in terms of being able to acquire that property, which on this images on the west side, or on the left side, that Lot A, being able to acquire that, what is it, about six acres or so, Dale, from from the original property, kind of severing that away from the project and giving the fairgrounds some buffer as well as opportunities for growth. And really grateful, one, for the previous project and this group continuing forward with that agreement, the county for their participation as well. And I hope that some of the comments of previous concerns of fairground traffic leaving and going and getting kind of tangled up in those narrower roads, that with the improvements that come, that road immediately to the south of the fairgrounds that will be a part of this project and then connected to Main Street, as well as Volunteer Drive, that will give them access to Main Street at a light. Those two amenities should significantly improve how traffic flows east-west here. And that is one of those, one of those elements that where development can improve challenges that happen. So appreciate that continued effort. And that buffer between the development and the fairgrounds with the road, we felt, looking through the development of it, was as good a way as any to at least create the separation between those two projects.
Thank you.
For clarification on the, because the millions of people that are still watching, your, your, your sales office that you have out front by Main Street now, right?
Yes.
We had a couple of people ask us, so you're doing tiny homes in, you know, it's just your sales office, right, that says you're a company on it? But you're not, you're not building, I mean, you're building it similar materials, but you're not building?
Not tiny homes, that is our mobile sales unit, if you will. And so we have a model that's open, it's fantastic. Highly encourage you to come check it out. So we are not building tiny homes, so I will clear that up.
Thank you.
And you're welcome to use it if you ever want. You know, we can haul it across the street to the fairgrounds and
The tiny home?
Yes, please.
Let us check it out.
Whatever, whatever it can do for the cost.
We'll have a tiny party in your tiny home. Any other questions or comments for the applicant here?
I have one real fast. We were saying that it's been planned for the water in those questions. My question was, has it been permitted by the appropriate people? Thanks.
Thank you. Sure.
So these are not wetlands, they're man-made ditches. The 2023 federal ruling of the Supreme Court, maybe it was 24, dictated that man-made ditches are not wetlands of the waters of the United States. Nor, well, the water within it is, however, the ground that it passes on is not. And so there, no permitting is required. We're working very closely with Hollis Janks on other projects that do require permitting. And this one did not warrant it, so.
We require a Phase One environmental with all our reviews. So a Phase One environmental's been done. Phase One environmental will direct us to a Phase Two if needed, and it's not needed. So we are not delineating wetlands.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I think I said it earlier and kind of quipped it, but I'd say again, in the West, whiskey's for drinking, water's for fighting. Make sure, you should be on as much of the side of anybody as making sure water needs to be delivered where it needs to go to and through your property. Or else it's not us you got to worry about, it's, you know, it's
We own farmland and we know water's king here. So we fully acknowledge that there's pre-existing rights and we definitely will not infringe on those.
Thank you. Thank you. Did we go out of public hearing?
Yeah.
It could have been twenty-five minutes, but we did, okay. If there's no other questions from the council or from staff here, I'd entertain a motion on item C.
I will move to approve that the proposed zone change with the associated preliminary plat be approved based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions. Do you want me to read those, Tara? Finding number one, that the proposal conforms to the city's general plan designation. Number two, that the proposal's zone change the findings of the master plan development overlay. And the conditions are, number one, that the applicant meets the city's development and construction standards, zoning requirements, and other applicable city ordinances. Two, that the applicant addresses any red lines. Three, that the highly visible sides of the condominium building elevations be enhanced. And for the preliminary plat approval is contingent upon approval of the zone change.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck with those finding and conditions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Took. This is a roll call vote here, Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Took.
Yes.
Good. Item C is approved. Thank you for sticking out and appreciate the detail. Mr. David G. Anderson, yes. Item D is what we're to.
Super, thank you. Subject property in this case is on South Main, just north of the River Bridge Event Center. I want to try to make the conversation more simple than what we had with the Planning Commission. It was a great conversation. The applicants are requesting a five-foot reduction in the required setback along the northern property line here and a fifteen-foot setback reduction along this property line. So again, fifteen feet there, five feet there. That's not trivial. We take that seriously, the code says. Certain amount of space is required as a setback. We expect people to follow that. Right now, you can see the subject property is owned commercial. The property in the north is not, it's owned residential office, which is partly why we're having this conversation. If the zoning of the north were commercial and the use were commercial, we wouldn't be having the conversation. But to zero in on why this is easy for staff to support, which incidentally, the proposal is to change the zoning and to use a unique zoning tool that the city council has to approve a project that doesn't meet all of the strict zoning requirements, like having a full twenty-foot setback along the north property line and a full twenty-five-foot setback along the east property line. It gives you the latitude, provided that specific findings can be met, similar to what I just mentioned with the master plan development overlay, which incidentally, our description to staff of how the findings have been met with the design that's been provided by the applicants here, that's our first exhibit attached to the staff report. That's the request, is to allow the applicants to move forward with a lesser setback, not meeting that full required amount of space. And the idea is that it's kind of quid pro quo, there's something given then when an applicant does that. And in this case, we as staff think that there are two primary things that have been done with the applicant's design to warrant the setback reduction. First of all, and I'm just going to skip way ahead, the applicants have designed a building with four-sided architecture, which otherwise would not be required. They're proposing to build the buildings such that along the north-facing side, it's not just a blank masonry facade, which is, you look around town, if you ever chose to do it, you'd see a lot of that on the backside of buildings. So they're proposing to enhance the elevation of the north side. Same with on all of the other sides, frankly, but, and they're also proposing to do more to do more landscaping than what our code would require. So enhanced landscaping, better building design, and for that, again, requesting a reduction in the required setbacks. One of the things that I appreciate about the proposal, and I'm going to use this to just describe really quickly, try to make it quick. Today, if the applicants met the required setbacks, they had five more feet of setback space here between that side of the building and the property line. They could build a building 35 feet tall and it could be a solid masonry face. It could be built out of anything. It could look however they would care to make it look, because we don't have architectural requirements that come into play when people meet our typical zoning requirements. In this case, the majority of the height of the building doesn't exceed 20 feet, the way they've proposed it. And they've proposed again to enhance that building elevation. In my mind, that does a lot to limit how the building's location impacts anything that ever were to happen across the property line to the north. Property line to the east is a little bit unique. It's, it's a dwelling, essentially being used as a commercial property, rental unit owned by an adjacent business owner. And we tend to look at that a little bit differently. But again, for what's being asked of the city by way of a nominal, in my view nominal, setback reduction, I really feel like the applicants have put a lot on the table that would make the project a very attractive addition to this part of the community. And incidentally, among the, the options that they have, conceivably, they could build, they could shift the building and build it on the subject property with less parking than what's provided. And given what we've observed about the parking that event centers require, even the one here, where we understand that there is a cross-parking easement and things like that that would come into play with this development, again, hoping that there's some complementary parking demand kind of hours between the uses that would be on this site and the event center to the south. I really like the idea of them being able to keep every parking space that they can get designed on the site. So that's also something that we've considered by way of working with them on the setback to get that potentially reduced and to be able to have the site developed this way. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So both the Development Review Committee and now Planning Commission have recommended that this be approved. The, the planning commission's vote wasn't unanimous, but it was close.
David, any questions for David before?
Before public hearing.
Good. Might have more for you. We'll invite the applicant up before we go to a public hearing. If you want to talk about this development, make sure Tara gets your.
Should we also publicly recognize them? It's 11 o'clock.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Do you want to Werther's Mint?
Shay Nelson. Shay Nelson.
Good evening.
Building, building. Yes, anything you wanted, you don't have to, but anything you wanted to add to what Dave said about your project?
Well, I mean, of the multitude of conversations we've had since November, he's, he's got it. He was pretty thorough. So yeah, is there any questions for us?
So if you didn't get the setbacks, because that, that's the reason why for the overlay, right? What would that do to your project?
So it changes the project only by moving the building more to the south, five feet, obviously.
Less parking.
Less parking. So, you know, we'll just lose a row.
And then we would change the entire back of the project.
Then the whole backside of that building with the four-sided architecture, it will become cinder block. We won't do any of the extra added because it's not required. It's just more money out of our pocket. The foliage, the trees, that'll all go away. The park strip, you know, it'll just be what's minimally required. So.
No questions for me.
Thank you. We, we might have more questions for you after public hearing.
Perfect.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I'd entertain a, if there's no other questions from here yet, I'd entertain a motion to go to public hearing.
I move to go into public hearing.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took to go into public hearing for item D. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item D. Anybody that would like to come speak? Name, rank and serial number if you've been here this long, sir.
Gil Rand. I'm the architect on the project.
Hi, Gil.
Can we go back to the color slide that we have or just the, the small area? Not that one.
Forward the other way.
There, there we go. Okay, what we've, this, this wanted to try to do is on the north side of the building, make it more than just a bunch of plants that oftentimes don't get taken care of. And so we have areas there, there's a bistro or a little cafe up at the front, and there are seating areas and nice landscaping along that north wall where people can go out and eat. And then we have a similar area. There's a, the area where it looks like we have it all designed already, this floor plan, needs an ex, a secondary exit going out to the back. So we have to provide a walkway for it, but we've developed a little seating area for the people that are there in that facility also. So we've just done a lot of extra nice things along that north property line, in that 15 feet, to make it easier for you to say yes to the project. Any questions on that? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Gil? Anyone else?
Edis Hill. I'm going to chime in because I'm here, I'm here at 11 o'clock.
Yes.
I'm excited about this. I would love for the council to take this idea and make it for a lot of our other projects and look forward, because this is the type of small-town look that we're looking for, where we can meet and gather, and I'm not sure exactly what the whole business portion of it is, but I'd love to see this in a lot of our other businesses, so we can have, enjoy a lot of outdoor amenities in our summertime. So awesome. This is great.
Thanks, Edis. Anyone else?
How are you guys doing?
Good, good. My name is Chandler Godfrey. I am the neighbor to the north. I, I appreciate this presentation better. I was at the planning committee, and I wanted to appreciate to them that they are developing that side. For whatever reason, through translation of what's going on, that wasn't described to me at all. Okay, so that makes me a lot happier, the way Mr. Anderson explained to the quid pro quo that, hey, if we reduce this five feet, then we're going to make them do these things. Either, that wasn't discussed in a way that was communicated to me or whatnot, so I, I do appreciate that. I, I was bothered quite a bit before, prior, just of the fact that I, I was approached and asked, hey, could we move this closer? I looked into it. It didn't seem like it benefited my family or my property very much, so I was against it. When I came to the planning committee where it kind of bothered me the most is the way it was described to me is the whole purpose of the variance program is when you have two property owners that are in agreeance and they come together and they're like, hey, this works. And then the city looks at that and evaluates to see, what are we missing? What, 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 how does this affect not only these property owners, but the city, fire truck access, whatever, right? And so at that point, I was like, hey, this isn't, I don't want, I mean, personally, when I bought the property, it was a farm. And I honestly, if I'm being frank, I don't really want a, a strip mall, commercial building right all the way down the side of my property. I can tell it's a high-end property and they're putting a lot of money into it, and I appreciate it. I am huge on property rights and it is owned commercial and they do own it, and I support that 100% that they build it. I hope they're very successful, right? I don't know where I stand now, now that I see that if they do move the offset back to the standard, that it is more of just a brick wall and it's less attractive and nobody wants an unattractive building around here, right?
Yeah.
So, so I'm a little confused. I guess part of that is on me, that I was unaware or uneducated on some of it. So I guess that's what you got. Generally speaking, I'm always nervous though when we do make variations, especially when it impacts other people around, because when we stray from the rules that are set, they no longer become ruled very often when we make it here. And to me, one of the purposes of having these rules prior to these situations coming up is it keeps the city from showing prejudice of one, for one person versus another person, right? But I, I, I don't feel as strongly as I did prior to this meeting, although I really wish we had this at 5:00 or 6:00 instead of 11, because I'm, I'm on vacation from work right now, so I got to go back, but I don't have anything else to say. I don't, I don't really feel, if they're going to put that much money into it, I don't have nearly the objection I had prior. I wish I'd been communicated better. That's what I got. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks for sending the email that we received.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing. Oh, sorry. Yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chandler. Appreciate it.
I move to go out of public hearing.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Beck. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're out of public hearing. The discussion is back up here for item D.
I just have a quick question. So the north side, because they're CO-zoned.
RO.
RO, sorry. Thank you. So will we have to put a masonry wall there? Six foot, eight foot?
Six, on the property line.
Okay, and then what about on the right-hand side? Because that's all commercial too.
On the east side?
Yeah, my right hand on the paper.
Yeah, sorry. Same, six-foot wall on that property.
So even though it's C2, they will still have to put a right, a, a wall there.
It's being used as a dwelling currently, so yes.
Okay. Yeah, so I think that from, the watching, Planning Commission and conversations, both through emails and just different conversations with folks that are in this project area, I think that the four-sided acro, wow, design, I'll just speak some type of language. It looks good. It's going to be a, a good look to it. I love the fact that we're trying to find solutions to parking, because parking situations, as we talked about the project before this, are, are, are situations that we deal with all the time. We in Spanish Fork like our trucks and, you know, two and a half parking spots per, like, house or different things, it, it becomes burdensome, but like to come and have a solution that we're coming with parking, we're coming with options, I love it. And I think that, you know, Mr. Godfrey, you know, seeing that different view has a different opinion and it kind of helps shape this conversation. So thank you. Thank you for the work that's been put in, both from the architect and the, and the team, so.
I'll let go a little bit of what Jesse said. Thank you to the applicants, all the hard work and making it such a beautiful thing with River Bridge Event Center right there. It's such a stunning building. And then with the Recreation Center going in across the street, it's going to be a great area. Parking is crucial, so I, I appreciate that and I'm glad that the neighbor kind of came around and I think will be a good neighbor. And I just want to give a shout out to our planning commissioners. I watched that last night and they just are on point, asking good questions. As I'm watching, they're, they're asking a lot of things that I would have asked tonight, and so it's making this process tonight go speedy for this little tiny section. Thanks for being here, everyone. It's, it's late, so thank you. No way.
I'll give you, I'll give you a long list of what Park City does wrong, okay? And that's one of them, right there. No, just kidding.
Thank you.
Yeah, echo what's been, what's been said here. It's been discussed how important Main Street is to Spanish Fork. This is an important piece of Main Street that's getting, that's getting, uh, south end of Main Street is building up and it's building up nice. So thanks for everybody and the time put in and working with neighbors and everything else, so.
Mayor, may I make a comment? I just want to, I think Chandler left, but I really appreciate his straightforward honesty about the circumstance and not understanding all the detail. I wish that, I think we as staff wish we had the ability to communicate perfectly every circumstance and situation as, as we're communicating with somebody, and, and of course, we can't do that, we don't do that. But I really appreciate his honesty in saying, you know, I didn't have all those facts and now, you know, I, I, he said, I'm, I'm confused. I don't know, you know, if I like it or don't like it, but, but I just really appreciated his, his straightforwardness there and, and wanted to recognize his, his brutal honesty, right? Just saying, hey, I didn't know this before. And it's good to know that, that the concerns that he had were at least addressed, you know, whether he likes him or not, you know, he, that's for him to say, but, but that it, the, the real concerns that he had, being that property owner to the, to the north, were really answered well, so I appreciated his honesty.
That is a great thing to point out, because, and, and I think he doesn't give himself enough credit when he says, I was uneducated. Listen, this stuff, this stuff is Dave's world. He lives in it, but nobody else has Title 15 tattooed on them like he does.
Who would want to? Right? I mean, come on.
So, so, so it's in the, in the vein of, of, you're not uneducated, is the public. We're, we're getting there together. And, and so we're going to try to do better. I think Councilwoman Beck said it good earlier. Hey, we make mistakes. We've made some mistakes on Main Street that we're trying to correct now. And, and so, so we're uneducated too, and we all try to get educated together. So good thing pointing, pointing that out. That's, that's great for Mr. Godfrey to, to point that out.
I got it.
Okay. I would entertain a motion on the final public hearing item for tonight, item D.
I move to approve the proposed zone change to be approved based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions, that the proposed modifications improvement, the proposal will conform to the intent of the development-enhanced overlay, that the proposed zone change meets the findings of development enhancement overlay conditions, the applicant meets the city's development and construction standards, zoning requirements and other applicable city ordinances, the, that the applicant addresses any red lines, that the applicant applies for any, or for an obtained site approval, a site plan approval, the site, that the site be limited to those uses that are permitted in the C2 zoning district, that the design plan as presented with the enhanced elevations be substantially conformed to, to, with the site plan application. Anything else?
I think you got it. Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. This is a roll call vote. Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
Okay. Item D is approved. Thank you for sticking with this. Thank you, everybody, for sticking with this. Thanks for your comments.
It's a true marathon tonight, not a sprint.
Yes. Thanks. Okay. It takes us to.
B.
You're so scary when it's so late.
Let's skip B, let's skip A, right?
Yeah.
Wait for just a second here. Yeah, well, we're on B.
It's going to be a reunion out there.
Okay. Item B under new business is the resolution approving Addendum I to the inter-local cooperation agreement between Spanish Fork City and the Utah Inland Port Authority. Mr. David G. Anderson.
It would be really easy to make this really complicated. Let me start with my understanding that Vaughn Pikel believes that the language that is being added here is just to clarify what already exists. And the clarification would make it that much more clear that instead of starting the process to use property tax from this project for all of the properties in the area at the same time, we can incrementally start to do that on a parcel-by-parcel basis in such a way that that would happen once a year, where the word "trigger" is part of this language. So once a year, that process to start to collect new property tax revenue from the area so that that can be used to build public infrastructure, it wouldn't happen all at once. Again, it'd happen incrementally. For example, we anticipate in the next few weeks giving a list of parcels, a list of tax ID-numbered parcels to the Utah County Assessor's Office for what we'd like to start collecting that revenue, the new property tax revenue on in 2024. I'd anticipate we would do something similar in '25, '26, '27, and et cetera. So again, not all at once. We'll do it.
Parcel by parcel.
Parcel by parcel over time. That's all that this is clarifying.
And it won't be like one parcel at a time. It'll be chunks, large, large swaths where development is happening. And the county's been a great partner. We've had a couple of good conversations with them, phone, emails as well, making sure that, that they, they understand what we're doing and how we're doing this. And, and they've been excellent, really excellent, actually, in terms of how to, how we're going to proceed and the process that we need to follow and the timeline that, that we need to follow. So this is, this is great. This makes the project a lot better, these multiple. This makes the project a lot better, these multiple trigger dates. And I think it's, sorry, I think it's always worth saying, when we talk about this project area, any increment generated is only coming from the project area and is staying in the project area. It's not coming from outside in, it's increment created within.
And then in the terms that, that, that I can understand that is that as a property goes from paying maybe a hundred dollars a year in property tax, it's now paying half a million dollars in property tax, or whatever, it's getting assessed for the improvements going in there. The agreement is that some of that increment, some of that increase, we're willing to give back to the area as the taxpayer for the infrastructure that goes in the ground. I think I want to reiterate, every time that we need, and I know this isn't gonna be the last time we're gonna talk about, uh, cooperation and interlocal and, and discussion of the inland port authority, uh, it's simply the financing tool of this area that has been zoned and planned industrial for over 20 years. Uh, there can get a lot of different pictures shared, there can get a lot of different versions of what this turns into. Uh, this is area around the airport of Spanish Fork. You drive north on Main Street, you'll find a large concrete building that is the transfer station in this area, where we take our waste, uh, and, and, and other heavy industrial users in the area. There will be more industrial users in this area, uh, but we need to make sure that, again, in all transparency and public discussion, we're not, uh, we're not misleading anybody on where this is located and that you're going to see the Long Beach Port all of a sudden in Spanish Fork City. We've done this in, in this area already, we've done it in other areas of the city. We call it a redevelopment agency, a commercial redevelopment agency. The only reason why this isn't an RDA is because the port came in and said, "We can help take some of this tax increment off you, frankly, and have them, have these, be, people be able to go directly to the quasi-public market and put your infrastructure in." So, to favor us, we're not giving up authority, we're not giving up the ability to zone things, we're not giving up the ability to work in partnership with these players, big players that are coming to our area. It's simply speeding it up a little bit from maybe what could take 10 and 20 years to get used facilities out there to maybe 10 years and under, right?
Yeah, and I think it's adding that, that moment of inertia. So far, we've had projects just not able to happen because of all of those infrastructure needs, and it's, this is giving it what it needs to get over the start hump and then cruise downhill, and it's gonna be generated from within. And anybody that looks at an image because of that word "port" and says, it's gonna look like, you know, you were saying, whatever that facility is in California or whatever, um, they just need to drive by down Main Street, look at Nature Sunshine, look at Young Living, look at Mountain Country Foods, look at the printing press, North Star, I think it is, printing press, look at the, the, what's happening at the airport, and just close your eyes and imagine that happening again, right? That's what we're talking about. And, uh, as we've met with a number of developers, uh, in and about the area, what they're thinking about, what they're talking about is exactly that. And, uh, every time these buildings go up, I mean, that Coleman project, so that's, you can really see it from the freeway, freeway, right? It's east of the Armory, east of the county complex, those buildings that have gone up, they've been leased immediately. Yeah, I think Young Living moved right into one and expanded their operations, you know, just significantly, and it's a good company, that's somebody that's already here providing excellent jobs and, and bringing in international money to our economy, which is really a good thing. It's not just, you know, a lot of times, commercial circulates the same dollar as Stacy goes to the store and that employee works there, they get paid, and then they go to another store, and it circulates that same dollar. This is, industrial businesses bring in new money to the economy, that local economy, so it's excellent for Spanish Fork, it's excellent for, for Utah, and, uh, this is a great place for it. It's been planned for 20-plus years, zoned 20-plus years in most instances, ever since probably your grandpa sold the ground for the jail.
Correct.
Since today's a history day.
At least that long, yep, at least that long. Um, it's not lost on me the aspect of how many humans, you like to call them belly buttons, sometimes, are working in these places as well, and, 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 um, believe me, I'm, I'm proud of our, our blue-collar roots here in Spanish Fork and, and blue-collar jobs, don't, don't get me wrong. So anybody that says, "Well, these are blue-collar," fantastic, uh, blue-collar jobs are some of the people that, uh, that I have, uh, the, the, the pleasure of encountering with, but really, the, the, the economy, the global economy, the, the national economy has changed too, to where some of the people that are coming in here and talking to Dave's office and sometimes say, "Would you like to sit in on a meeting like this?" Super impressed about what could be some of those, the, those, those places. Yes, the, the blue-collar job, but yes, some very, some very neat, uh, jobs too, that your children and, and maybe my children soon would say, "Well, we gotta drive to Lehigh or Salt Lake," and, and, and to have that job, well, they're pretty dang close to having it just right here in Spanish Fork if they want to find a place to live here and, and not travel that far on the freeway, if they don't want. We talk about the shopping aspect all the time.
Yep.
Perfect, I don't have to go to Costco in Orem and then get stuck in traffic in Orem and then have 30 minutes drive. Yes, I get stuck in a little traffic at Costco here, but then I'm five minutes away from my home. It's the same kind of thing with the job force. This is going to create an area where your kids might be not have to get on, on the freeway and, and, and go to work.
Yeah, and if I might just assess point, taking what already exists in Spanish Fork today and considering what, you know, we'll have in the future, I think the composition of the businesses that will be located in the area that we're talking about, in some ways probably will mirror what we already have today, and I think your typical Spanish Fork resident would be amazed if they knew just how sophisticated the manufacturing is in a number of different companies in Spanish Fork right now. We are not talking about minimum wage jobs. In fact, we are talking about six-figure manufacturing jobs where people are dealing with, you know, multi...
That will say, that will say, "Come, come here right out of high school, and we'll teach you, we'll put you through school to be an engineer, you gotta work for us for this long, and we're gonna train you how to be our engineer, but we're gonna teach, you know, we're gonna get your certifications of engineer."
Yeah, we're talking to high-end radar and, and airplane parts, wings and missile parts. I mean, this is, yeah.
It's amazing.
That's not, it's not shipping, you know?
Right.
This is, this is amazing stuff that, that's happening, and, and they don't really want anybody to know it, it's just happening.
So there's my plea, I guess, in, in, when we're discussing this, we're trying to, to do our best to be open and transparent and, and, and speak to the facts on this stuff as it comes to us. We're gonna try to communicate that clearly with the public, communicate that between yourselves to, we, the, the, take pictures of the real area and show pictures of the real area, uh, of what it, what it is currently, what it's going to become, and, and just make sure we're not overly hyping people up of, of, of maybe what, what the port means or something. Um, but this interlocal agreement, as I read through it, yeah, that, that I appreciate, I didn't make the connection of why it was what it was, but that trigger aspect makes a lot of sense. Thank you. Anybody else want to talk? We could set a record if we...
I think we need to see if the windows, the lights shut off at midnight.
Fair enough.
They didn't last time we were here.
Any questions for David, uh, or anybody on item B?
Negative.
I would entertain a motion for item B.
I move to approve this resolution approving the Addendum Number 1 to interlocal cooperation agreement between Utah Inland Port Authority and Spanish Fork City, based upon the findings contained in the resolution.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilman Took.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Beck. A roll call vote here, Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Item B is approved. Takes us to item C. This is gonna be a real quick one, unless, she's not here, but, uh, is she? Nope, I don't see her here.
She's been in requirement.
Somebody call her up, get her down here, we'll wait. Oh, she did? Megan Johnson, uh, is the new director of, uh, of Intermountain Healthcare Hospital, uh, here in Spanish Fork, took over for Frances Gibson, who moved on to a different, uh, area. She's worked with the chamber, she's worked, uh, on our RAP committee already. Dale, if there's anything you want to add besides Megan being awesome and, uh, and willing to serve on our Parks and Rec Committee right now, um, what would you add?
No, she just has a real passion for health and wellness, so she, she loves this area and wants to be involved, so.
Cool.
She'd be a great, a great addition to our committee.
Great.
We got great volunteers, some of them here tonight and stuck with us all night, thank you, Emily. Uh, and, uh, this is another one adding to the great volunteers of Spanish Fork. So this is my motion, uh, somebody needs to, needs to make the motion, but, uh, I'd suggest you approve my choice for this volunteer.
I move to accept Megan Johnson to the Parks and Recreation Committee.
My second. Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilman Took. Roll call vote, Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
And Councilman Took.
Yes.
Okay. Welcome to the team, Megan, thank you for volunteering. If there's no other items that need to come before the council, we've run out of the agenda[1749.38]